It's 10 o'clock, 10:01, and I'd like to call the May 11th, 2021 meeting of the Harris County Commissioners Court to order. Commissioner Kegel.
Good morning, Your Honor. This morning, our introduction is going to be done by Commissioner Precinct Two because our invoker, I guess that's the appropriate term, is out of Precinct Two. But we're going to ask that the Imam stay on because we have a resolution that I think he wants to receive immediately after that. With that, I'll pass the duties on over to Commissioner Garcia for making the proper introduction.
Thank you, Commissioner Kegel, and it is an honor and pleasure to introduce Imam Dr. Basim Ahmed. He's going to be giving our invocation this morning. He is a board member of the countywide organization Minaret Foundation in recognition of the end of Ramadan. And just as a quick point, Imam, you know, when I was on City Council and I was curious about the experience of Ramadan, I followed in the example of my brothers and sisters and fasted for a day. And now, as a horrendous coffee drinker, I was very, very proud of myself that I did not eat or drink all day. And so, I got a great experience from celebrating Ramadan along with my brothers and sisters. So, Dr. Ahmed has graduated from Sierra's Damascus University School of Medicine and a master's in Islamic Studies. He is a practicing neurologist at Memorial Hermann Hospital specializing in opioid abuse. Serves as the Imam at Berlin's Shadow Creek Muslim Community Center. He is also a board member for the Minaret Foundation, which seeks to build relationships with Muslim faith organizations and local governments. Dr. Ahmed founded the Wassa Institute, which is dedicated to exploring the intersectionality of health and spirituality. Imam Ahmed has previously given the invocation for Houston City Council and for Bend County Commissioners Court. More certified in pain medicine and urology, Dr. Ahmed has been practiced since 1995, and he speaks French and Arabic. Dr. Ahmed has received multiple Patients' Choice and Compassionate Doctor Awards and was named one of Houston's top doctors in 2014. He's married and has four beautiful children. So with that, Assalamualaikum, Dr. Ahmed, please.
Waalaikum salam, rahmatullah. Thanks, Commissioner, for this beautiful introduction. Good morning, everyone. Honorable Judge Hidalgo and County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to start off today's session with a prayer. Let's pray. I begin with the name of God, most just, most merciful, the exposor of all affairs. As we begin to close out the month of Ramadan and begin with the summer with a sense of hope and purpose for a brighter future ahead, please bless our county's leadership and their staff and grant them wisdom and clarity. Enlighten them so that they may know how you want them to accomplish their tasks. They desire your blessings in all that they do. Direct their thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path and help us stay on track. Oh Lord, even if they have different opinions, give them the unity of the Spirit. Help them to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help them to work as a whole. Let them meet the challenges with strength, opposition with kindness, anger with compassion, and sadness with an outstretched hand. Help them to lift the underprivileged and the oppressed. Help them to lift those who are unable to lift themselves and those who are not able to speak for themselves. In the Quran, you say, "Wahahsinu, innalaha yuhibbul muhsinin," and "Do good; truly Allah loves the doers of good." Help them this day and throughout the rest of the year to do good, to uplift our county, to uplift our state, and to be a shining example of what our country can be. Ahmed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ahmed.
Thank you, Doctor. Judge, do you want us to move straight into the resolution?
Yes, and it's really been wonderful to you from Dr. Ahmed. And Dr. Commissioner Kegel has a resolution. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a resolution today concerning the Uyghur people. It is spelled U-Y-G-H-U-R, but it is pronounced Uyghur. Or at least, that's how I butchered the pronunciation. I may have the emphasis on the wrong syllable there. But in terms of the resolution, I'm going to read it. And we have three speakers who are here to assist and to talk on the matter. One is Hazred Wushur, whose family is in a concentration camp. That's Yasin Ahat, whose family is also in a concentration camp. And Samara Hafiz, who is part of the Minaret Foundation, who is here with regard to dealing with this. And Judge, I think that we also have several other groups that are tapping in today with regard to this resolution because this is an important matter internationally. And with that, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the largest mass detention of people since the Holocaust is taking place in northwest corner of the People's Republic of China, with roughly 3 million from the Uyghur Muslim minority community forced into camps. Whereas the Uyghurs are used as slave labor, raped and sterilized, reeducated to Chinese government standards, barred from practicing their Muslim faith, and their culture systematically erased. Whereas the United States of America, through the Trump and Biden administrations, both have led the world into clearing these actions by the People's Republic of China's genocide and imposed sanctions. Whereas the nations of Canada, the Netherlands, the United Kingdom have followed the lead of the United States of America in recognizing the oppression and genocide of the Uyghur people. Whereas Harris County proudly boasts the most diverse community in the nation, including a large Muslim community which has been rising up in protest at this grave injustice. Now therefore be it resolved that Harris County Commissioners Court hereby stands in solidarity with the Uyghur people against this genocide, and therefore be it further resolved that the Harris County Commissioners Court urges our elected representatives in the legislature and in the Congress to encourage a change in course by the Chinese government that will end the eradication of the Uyghur people. And, Your Honor, with that, I think that we have both the good doctor to receive it, who may want to make comments, and three speakers.
Go ahead, Doctor.
I will pass to the three speakers, and I will make a conclusion remarks afterwards.
Okay, go ahead, Lucinda.
Yes, ma'am, we'll keep him on the line.
Could you please call up the speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Hazred Wushur, go ahead, please.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Yes, hi, good morning again. My name is Ali Wushur. I was born in the western part of China, as we like to call it, East Turkestan, even though the Chinese likes to use the name of Xinjiang as it translates to new frontier or a new addition to the mainland China. So, I wanted to speak to you guys on behalf of my sister, particularly, and my mother, that currently back home, not able to contact them for the past two years, to my own mother and my sister. And my sister's husband happens to be a doctor, has been in those so-called reeducation camps for more than two years now. And he is a doctor, and he doesn't need to be reeducated. And we have not given any sort of explanation as to why was he taken in those internment camps. Again, we have no form of contact for my sister's husband. Again, we're living in the age of technology and freedom. You know, we take things for granted here in the States. But you know, the simple phone call nowadays, it's tremendously difficult to get through with the Chinese government. So again, for my own personal story, I have not been able to speak to my own mother for over two years. Again, so I mean, you know, I'm not exaggerating this. I'm not the only person that's, you know, going through this exact situation. There are thousands and thousands of Uyghurs and Basparas, whether it be in the United States or in Europe or elsewhere, are facing similar situations, that they were being systematically forced to give up our cultures, our religions, to be essentially assimilated with the Han Chinese. Our very basic human rights have been sort of taken away by the Chinese Communist Party. And again, and I want to really thank for the organizers and the commissioners to, you know, recognizing the atrocities that are taking place in the northwestern part of China. And again, I really want to extend my thanks and gratitude for the powers that be to take action against what's really going on. And again, as we said, in the western part of the country, the democracy, you know, never shall this happen again, what happened to the Jews by the Nazis. And again, this is the same thing that's happening right now, not by the Nazis, by the CCP, the Chinese Communist Party. And again, you know, we have thousands of cases, and I just wanted to bring my own personal case to the commissioners, to the elected officials, so they can hear my voice on behalf of the Houston Uyghur community. So I represent, I am the president of the Houston Uyghur community. And I just wanted to let you guys know that, thank you very much. I know I'm out of time, but thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that story. My heart's really go out to your family, and we hope that this can help add to the attention that this issue deserves.
Thank you.
Yasin Ahat, go ahead, please.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Honorable Judge, Commissioner, Imam, and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for providing me with this special opportunity to speak up and testify for my brother, who is currently held in China's concentration camp. So let me briefly introduce myself first. I was born in the northwestern part of China. I came to Texas in the year of 2000 as a graduate student. And since then, I have been living in Texas, currently living in St. Peter's, in northeast Texas. Today, here, I would like to speak up and testify for my brother, whose name is Alim Ahat, and he is a well-established college professor of math and computer science and also a successful businessman. I lost contact with my family and with my brother almost four years ago in early 2017. Ever since, I have been unable to contact with anyone, within with my family, with my parents, with my brother, any of my extended family members, relative, anyone. So I lost, technically, I lost contact with anyone inside the northwestern part of China for almost four years. And I hadn't known the background of my family's situation, anything yet. But only up to recently, I was able to know by that overseas Uyghur human rights organizations claim that my brother, Alim Ahat, is in China's concentration camp. I believe that he is innocent. He's not even a political scientist or whatever. He just teaches math and computer science at a top-level university in that region. And he's innocent, and he was just a college professor. And another reason is that in the past several years, in the early 2010, my brother and I collaborated with some of the American tech companies like Microsoft, Google, and Apple to collaborate with them to help them to do business in our region. And we also successfully translated, localized their technology product in our region to help our people to use the IT infrastructure or any computer or cellphone like this in our own language. And this way, we helped our own people, and we also helped the American tech company to do business in our region. And I still, he was held in China's concentration camp, and I still believe he is innocent. The China's government never produced any claim, any proof that his mistake or any wrongdoing. And he was just taken to the concentration camp without any judicial process or anything. So here, I would like to take this opportunity to testify and protest against the inhuman actions the Chinese government done to my brother and my family and the millions of Uyghur people in that region.
Thank you so much.
And I read the contents of this resolution, and I believe that-
So I'll have to stop you. I'm sorry, your time is up. But thank you. Is there, are there any other speakers, Lucinda?
Yes, ma'am, there are.
Okay.
Hello?
Your time is up.
Samra Hafiz, go ahead, please.
All right, thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Samra Hafiz, and I am a policy analyst for the Minaret Foundation. I have been working on issues related to the Uyghur genocide for almost a good part of a year now. Currently, in China, Uyghurs are subjected to horrific human rights conditions in which they have no freedom of movement, privacy, expression, or religion. Simple acts such as growing out a beard, wearing a hijab, or even traveling abroad to a select country can land them in internment camps in which they're subjected to psychological, sexual, physical, and mental torture, as well as brainwashing to believe that their religion is wrong and that being a Uyghur in itself is a crime. If they do manage to leave those internment camps, they're then subjected to forced labor in which they're forced to toil away, I'm sorry, in which they're forced to toil away to work and produce different types of products to benefit the Chinese government and to just boost the economy in which they're basically exploited and have no payment. The passage of this resolution would mean a lot, both to the Uyghur community and to the international community as a whole. Uyghurs across the country would know that we see them and that we acknowledge their struggle. And also, the passage of this resolution would also display our support for Harris County's diverse communities, specifically our refugee and immigrant community. The passage of this resolution would also mean that we could potentially increase awareness and subsequently increase pressure in getting more people to know about this horrific ongoing genocide, as well as potentially putting a stop, a final stop to it. Thank you all so much for your time, and thank you so much for taking time out of your day to hear me out.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the side, or Lucinda?
I can go back to Dr. Basim Hamid. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, please.
Yes, good morning again. So in these final days of Ramadan and in this moment, I hear the voices of my Uyghur brothers and sisters and their suffering. For too long, their voices have fallen on deaf ears in the interest of the trade and monetary interests. It felt like a significant turning point when the previous Secretary of State finally recognized what we all know to be genocide committed by the Chinese government. In my invocation, I mentioned a verse, "Wahahsinu, innalaha yuhibbul muhsinin," and "Do good; truly God loves the doers of good." And this is a great opportunity for the great Harris County to show for what it stands, for civil rights, for the human rights, for what is right. And I urge you to pass this commission. I thank you, and I appreciate all what you've done. And hopefully, this will be but a milestone in the path to establishing justice and to serving the humanity. Thank you all.
Thank you. Vote on the resolution, Commissioner.
Judge, I would probably make the motion that we vote on this. Judge, out of my faith tradition, there's a passage out of Micah that says that God calls upon us to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with our God. I think by passing this resolution, we will be seeking justice and loving mercy and treating God's fellow humans with the dignity and respect that they deserve. Thank you, Your Honor.
I would second that, Judge.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The neopost?
Aye.
She carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Kegel, and we stand with the Uyghur people. Thank you. Commissioner Garcia, I know you have a resolution as well that we need to get to soon.
Yes. Which one are you?
It's 252, Recognizing Ms. Grace Rodriguez. She has to get off the words.
We lined up. Thank you, Judge. And this is, in light of things that have been taking place across the country and locally, I thought it was important that we take time to recognize a group of individuals in our community who have done so much, lifted up our economy, saved lives, and just contributed to the beautiful cultural diversity of our community and what makes us proud to live in Harris County. I'm excited that Grace Rodriguez will be receiving this resolution. Grace is of Filipino descent. She works to assist historically disadvantaged communities. She's a co-founder of a really phenomenal organization, Impact Hub Houston, mentoring small businesses and entrepreneurs to make positive impacts in our community. Impact Hub supports early-stage startups and offers many culturally diverse programs. Grace also serves on the board of several organizations in Houston, and so we want to thank her for taking time to be a part of this occasion. And the resolution I want to submit, Judge, is one that recognizes the Week as Pacific Asian American Heritage Week. And this resolution begins as such. Whereas beginning in 1977, the first 10 days in May were designated by the 95th United States Congress as Pacific Asian American Heritage Week, recognizing the significant role Asian Pacific Americans have played in the creation of a dynamic, heuristic, American society with their contributions to the sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. And whereas in the early 1990s, President George H.W. Bush issued a presidential proclamation designating the month of May as the first Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas demonstrating passion, purpose, and service, Ms. Grace Rodriguez is helping build a brighter future for innovators and changemakers in Harris County, find example of the ideals intended by Congress, celebrating what is now Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas through Impact Hub, Grace supports early-stage startups, create economic resilience and wealth jobs and opportunities to successfully participate in the innovation economy. And whereas from programs such as Emprende Impacto for Latinx entrepreneurs and FFP for female founders of businesses, to Senior Connect, matching young adults with seniors to alleviate social isolation. That is beautiful. The Black Marketing Initiative to elevate diverse small businesses and encourage them during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. Grace's efforts make a positive difference in the community. Therefore, be it resolved that Harris County Commissioners Court commends Ms. Grace Rodriguez for improving the opportunities of residents in Harris County, Texas, and by being a phenomenal example of the beautiful community that she so represents. Grace?
Lucinda, do we have her on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rodriguez, you're unmuted.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Garcia, and the esteemed members of the Harris County Commissioners Court. It is truly an honor to receive this resolution as a representative of the Filipino community and the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. I don't know if Commissioner Garcia remembers this, but I first met him at City Council in the early 2000s when I was working for then-Council Member Gordon Kwan. I'd recently moved back to Houston from New York and became Gordon's liaison to the Asian American community. And that job gave me the opportunity to see what really happened behind the scenes of the city and how people like Gordon, Adrian, Carol Alvarado, and Ronald Green could work together to drum up resources to help for people in times of disaster. At that time, we were dealing with Hurricanes Katrina and Rita. And fast forward over a decade, they're still doing that work, this time alongside the next generation of leaders they helped bring up, from James Rodriguez to Chris Brown to me. And by this time, I had gone on to co-found Station Houston, a tech startup hub started by entrepreneurs for entrepreneurs. It would go on to be a key to the development of Innovation Corridor. But even as we helped people start tech companies, we saw many other bright women and minority entrepreneurs not get the same kind of support and investment. And that's why I was really excited when Natasha Azizi and Shroya Spandiar asked if I would help launch and lead Impact Hub Houston. This was and is our chance to build an impact ecosystem that bakes inclusion and equity into the foundation from the beginning, rather than trying to patch up a broken system. When we launched Impact Hub Houston in 2018, I leaned on the collaborative legacies of those who came before me, from Larry Itliang and Cesar Chavez organizing farm workers in California, to the local chapters of OCA LULAC and the NAACP joining forces to increase voter access in Houston. For centuries, Asian Americans have been fighting for and working towards a more just society. Their work continues to inspire me to ensure that as we develop and support programs like Emprende Impacto or the Black Marketing Initiative, and as I serve on the boards of Diversity Fund Houston or the Office of Business Opportunity or the Business Ecosystem Alliance for Minorities and Women, that we give historically overlooked and marginalized innovators the same resources and opportunities to fail forward that we give our tech startups, and that we almost fight attempts to divide and conquer us so we can be more effective and more successful at raising the tide for all of us. This past year, as Adrian said, has given us all 2020 vision, from the profound ways the COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately impacted communities of color to how we must move a next step forward from advocacy to action and actively work against racist hate and violence in all the spheres our lives touch. Mine has been in entrepreneurship, an inherently optimistic adventure, and a team sport. You have to believe that you can create something that makes a difference, and you can bring people together to make it matter. We can create the change we wish to see in Harris County together. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for this opportunity to be recognized during Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and speak my truth as a Panay American. And thank you all here at Harris County Commissioners Court for your allyship and your work towards a better region for us all. The Asian American community thanks you.
Grace, we are so proud of you, and I do remember. And I would just tell you that your trajectory has been phenomenal. I'm so proud of you. In fact, I saw a write-up in the paper, I think it was last year, and we were trying to surprise you back then, but the opportunity got past us. So I didn't want to miss it. And so, I'm so very grateful that we were able to get you, but proud of you. Continue to do what you do, and because of all that you're doing and because of your work specifically in the innovation sphere, we want to make sure to leverage your thoughts and experiences and counsel so that we can build a much more resilient economy going forward. And so, Grace, proud of you. Congratulations, and thank you for representing so many so well.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support.
Grace, hang on a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Kegel.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Jack Kegel, and I am proudly seconding the motion of my colleague, Commissioner Garcia. I'm very impressed and appreciative of the contributions of the Filipino community throughout Harris County and especially in Precinct Four. And when I read the resolution, I almost made a friendly amendment on the first quote, which deals with the 1977 designation, but that was a congressional quote, and so it wasn't appropriate. But we left out cuisine. I and my daughters have been, you know, food is what oftentimes brings us together. And I and my daughters often go to a little restaurant off of, it's not that little, but a little restaurant off of 1960, where most of the menu items we really enjoy. but a little restaurant off of 1960, where most of the menu items we really enjoy. Haven't quite gotten there with Balat yet, but with most of those items, I really love it. And appreciate the warmth and expansion of that community. And we have a number of Filipino churches that are in our community. In fact, one of our employees in Precinct Four is a deacon in one of them. And so thank you for all of the contributions that are made in our community, which helps us to be this exciting place, to where we may not always have the opportunity to travel the world, but the world is traveled here, and we can enjoy it together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kegel.
Thank you for your work and your efforts. We have a motion, Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Kegel. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll go back to-
Go rock 'em, Grace.
Let's go back to the resolutions under county judge. The first is item, Resolution 240, item 245, is a resolution offering condolences to the family and friends of Dr. Floyd Jennings. Dr. Floyd Jennings, licensed psychologist and lawyer, Ph.D., J.D., served as the chief of the Mental Health Division of the Harris County Public Defender's Office. He led his division in the ZELZ's representation of individuals accused of a crime who are guaranteed the right to legal representation regardless of their ability to pay in accordance with the United States Constitution. He joined the Harris County Public Defender's Office in 2011, providing leadership that was substantiated as superior. Mental health clients represented by Dr. Jennings' division were significantly more likely to receive dismissals than previously appointed and private counsel could procure. Dr. Jennings facilitated and encouraged collaborative efforts with prosecuting attorneys, which resulted in the just and right belief that accused individuals were receiving mental health and treatment, which led to a drastic reduction in criminal convictions. He continued facilitation of advocacy-based dismissals, which resulted in less waste of county resources and a decrease in unnecessary incarcerations, hospitalizations, and county commitments. Citizens were directed instead to treatment, placement, and care options. His work helped to lessen the stigma of mental health-related issues, as well as lessen the criminalization of mental health issues for citizens of Harris County. Dr. Jennings provided substantial assistance and leadership in his role as leader in the Harris County Mental Health Services Division. Therefore, be it resolved, that Harris County Commissioners Court offers sincere condolences to the family and friends of Dr. Floyd Jennings and thank him for his dedicated service. Go ahead, Commissioner Garcia. You're on mute.
Thank you, Judge, for bringing this resolution forward. I had the honor and pleasure of working with him when I was with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. Very thoughtful, very honest individual, and really cared about those who were struggling and was always in the pursuit of solutions and opportunity. And I'd just tell you that it was just always a good day whenever I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Jennings. And so I'm, you know, lost of words, had a loss of words for us having to do this resolution in his memory, but grateful that I had the opportunity to work alongside. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe his wife and a representative from the Public Defender's Office are on the line. Lucinda, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. I have his wife on the line.
All right, go ahead.
Shirley Jennings, go ahead, please, ma'am.
Yes, this is Shirley Jennings. And I want to thank the Commissioners Court in Harris County for this honor in behalf of Dr. Floyd Jennings. Floyd retired from private practice and came to Harris County as a consultant, later joining the public defendering. He, this became his home, his family, and his love. And he loved, and he liked the work and the challenge, and it was most rewarding. And my thanks goes to Harris County for the time that you allowed Floyd to work there. He so loved the work and the challenge and the people that he met. Thank you so much.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing him with us. Thank you so much.
Judge, we couldn't reach the Public Defender's Office representative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to move on to item 246. It's a resolution very appropriate with the celebration of Dr. Jennings' life. This resolution declares the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Harris County. For more than a year, the COVID-19 pandemic has affected the mental health of all of us. Isolation from friends and families, healthcare workers, first responders, and other essential employees have continued to work during the pandemic. Whereas the Harris County Commissioners Court recognizes the contributions of frontline mental health professionals who provide direct care for people in crisis and other high-risk situations. The court recognizes the commitment of the crisis line and the COVID-19 help line and the professionals who answer calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The court recognizes psychiatrists, psychologists, counselors, clinicians there, business, social workers, and other staff who continue to provide mental health services. Public health agencies have incorporated mental health promotion into their chronic disease prevention efforts, working with partners to develop comprehensive mental health plans to enhance coordination of care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Harris County Commissioners Court declares the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Harris County, Texas.
Judge, I would like to second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I do want to thank the Harris Center and public health and so many folks who, as soon as the pandemic started, stood up a helpline in addition to the work that they continue to do, and they've been just incredibly resourceful and proactive in supporting the mental health of our community, particularly during the pandemic. I believe there's a representative from the Harris Center, Lucinda?
Yes, ma'am. We're trying to get ahold of Mr. Young at the moment, but I can get someone else on the line right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Amanda Jones, Harris Center, go ahead, please.
Hi, good morning. This is Amanda Jones, Director of Government and Public Affairs for the Harris Center. Thank you, Judge Hidalgo, for this resolution. Unfortunately, Mr. Young is hopping on a plane right now. So on behalf of the Harris Center, I would like to thank you and the entire Commissioners Court. It is truly an honor to live in a community where our leaders understand the importance of mental health care. Our community has had so much trauma, as it has faced natural disaster after natural disaster and this pandemic. Thank you, Commissioners Court, for all that you do for the people with mental illnesses in Harris County.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
And there's a motion. Commissioner Kegel made the motion, second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 247 is proclaiming the month of May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Harris County. May is Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Texas. And Harris County Resources for Children and Adults and Adult Protective Services are joining forces to raise awareness about abuse, neglect, and exploitation of seniors and vulnerable adults. Elder abuse can happen to men and women of all income levels, cultural and ethnic backgrounds. Approximately 1 in 10 Americans 65 and older have experienced some form of abuse. Last year, Adult Protective Services in Harris County investigated 12,892 cases of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of older adults or people with disabilities. Loneliness and isolation can make seniors more vulnerable to abuse, neglect, and exploitations. Harris County Resources for Children and Adults provides services to vulnerable adults through the Guardianship Program, the Senior Justice Assessment Center, and the Representative Payee Program. We've partnered with other groups in treating, assessing, and prosecuting cases of exploitation, resulting in the successful prosecution of cases in Harris County. Abuse hurts at any age, and all people deserve dignity, respect, and the right to live in a society free from abuse. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Harris County Commissioners Court hereby proclaims the month of May 2021 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Harris County, Texas, and urges all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse, neglect, and exploitation of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Thank you to Mr. Levine and his team and everybody who's working on these incredible programs, serving, older adults are children, the most vulnerable. Is Joel Levine on the line, Lucinda?
Yes, ma'am. I'm unmuting him.
Okay.
You're unmuted, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge Hidalgo, Commissioners. I'm Joel Levine, Department Head for Harris County Resources for Children and Adults, formerly Harris County Protective Services. In addition to serving vulnerable children and at-risk youth, our department also provides services to vulnerable adults and elderly victims of abuse and exploitation. In order to address the unique and complex challenges of cases involving elder abuse and exploitation, Harris County Resources for Children and Adults stood up the Senior Justice Assessment Center, affectionately known as S-JAC, in 2017. S-JAC serves as a central location that houses a multidisciplinary team of experts in criminal and civil prosecution, law enforcement, protective services, social services, geriatric and forensic medicine, collaborating to address the complex needs of senior victims of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Since we launched the program, we have already served nearly 1,000 clients. We've seen an increase in the number of cases with successful convictions and safer outcomes for the elderly. I would like to recognize and standing up the Senior Justice Assessment Center, and really responsible for its success is our Adult Services Division Director of Cloyde Gonzalez, Ms. Barbara Lopez, manager of the Senior Justice Assessment Center. I would also like to recognize the unending support from Cecilia Legoria, who is the Disability and Elder Law Division Director with the County Attorney's Office. And we're also proud to be doing this work with Ms. Adriana Franco, who is the, who will be speaking next. She is the Regional Director for Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, Adult Protective Services Program in Harris County. And we are proud of our well-developed state-county collaboration with APS for both S-JAC and our department's Public Guardianship Program. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize and remember Dr. Carmel Dyer, a renowned geriatrician, a champion for older adults, and a former Harris County Resources for Children and Adults Board member. Dr. Dyer was instrumental in helping launch the Senior Justice Assessment Center, the only such-type center in Texas. Unfortunately, she passed last week. She was taken from us much too soon. Finally, I just want to add that during the month of May and throughout the year, we encourage everyone to protect the elderly in our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kegel, would you like to make the motion on this one?
Judge, we have another speaker on this item.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Yes, ma'am. Adriana Franco with Adult Protective Services, go ahead, please.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge Hidalgo and all the Commissioners. I want to take this time to thank you for the opportunity to accept this resolution and also kind of echo everything that Mr. Levine just said. We really are truly blessed to have a partnering relationship with Harris County Resources for Children and Adults. We really do work very collaboratively together. And it does take a community-based approach to really bring awareness to the issue of adult abuse and neglect and exploitation in our community. And I want to thank Harris County, because you all have always been so helpful in not only bringing awareness, but contributing to a lot of the events that we sometimes have within the county. I still remember years back when Commissioner Garcia was still a sheriff. He's the one who went and helped us open one of our resource rooms that we have in our area there in Harris, here in Harris County. And I wanted to just kind of reiterate some of the numbers. Just in fiscal year 2020, we, Adult Protective Services, completed investigations on over 86,000 cases and validated over 52,000 cases. And then those validations, you know, the majority of the cases that we have investigated have been within the Harris County area. Our area is Harris County and the 12 surrounding counties that we investigate abuse, neglect, and exploitation. And we do take this time in the month of May to really bring awareness as to the issues that arise for our elder community. And also especially right now in the times of COVID, that, you know, one of the risk factors is isolation, and with COVID, it really has impacted this even more. And also the situations we have had with the unlicensed women boards, that we really have also partnered together to really try to address. And also even there's some legislation that has been introduced to try to tighten, tighten those activities, make them criminal. And I also want to thank Mayor Turner, because on June 15, there will be World Elder Abuse Awareness Day that was brought from the World Health Organization. And want to invite everybody on that day, because Mayor Turner has declared that he's going to make the city purple on that day. So thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak today, and let's bring more awareness to elder abuse and neglect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work.
Judge, I'd be glad to make the motion. I had thought I seen Commissioner Garcia make the flag, so I had put up the second. I don't want to, I don't want to bump him in, in that, but I think he had, I'll second or move whichever one Commissioner Garcia wants.
All right. So Commissioner Garcia has made the motion. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And second, Commissioner Kegel. All in, oh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Ramsey.
Quickly, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the things our community centers do in support of our elder. When I go in there and see over 20,000 folks a year, many times that gives them a reason to get up in the morning, to come to our community centers, adult education centers. So the good work they do, that's just another resource within the county to support this and to be sure that we too are the eyes and ears for this, this group of folks in the community, to be sure that there isn't this abuse that, that we see. So Judge, thank you for bringing this.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do have quite a few motions today, so just bear with me. I have two more, and then, and then we've got several others. It's just, for whatever reason, there, there are several today. This resolution is designating this, the week of May 16 through the 22nd, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Emergency medical services is a vital public service. The members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The emergency medical system, services system consists of first responders, emergency, medical technicians, firefighters, police officers, educators, so many more. The members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Now therefore be it resolved, that Harris County Commissioners Court hereby proclaims May 16 through 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Harris County, Texas, with the EMS strong theme. This is EMS, caring for our communities. Thank you to so many folks that are part of this emergency services team. And here it lists paramedics, pre-hospital nurses, school administrators, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public. This is just, it takes a team effort. So thank you to everybody who's part of making, keeping our community safe. So thank you to everybody who's part of making, keeping our community safe. Lucinda, do we have speakers on this item?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, go ahead.
Justin Reed with SciFaire Fire Department, go ahead, please.
Good morning. Thank you Judge Hidalgo and Commissioners. On behalf of the EMS professionals throughout Harris County, thank you all so much for the recognition. Our clinicians are on the front lines every day elevating the care for the public. No matter the circumstance, whether it be our biennial thousand-year flood event, a hurricane, pandemic, or just a normal Tuesday, these men and women work tirelessly to care for all and your recognition of their sacrifice and their hard work is immeasurable. Thank you all for making EMS strong.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Commissioner Garcia?
No Judge, I was simply wanting to throw the, the motion up or the second, but this is such an important resolution. Obviously, we understand the value of everyone involved and so very just appreciative.
So Commissioner Garcia has made a motion and...
I haven't, I'm sorry Judge, before you vote, I do have another speaker.
Oh, thank you, Lucinda. Go ahead. I'll take the second from Commissioner Cable, too. Go ahead.
Chris Collier with S-E-T-R-A-C, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm Chris Collier, the Director of Response here at SetTrak. And as you know, we work with multiple healthcare agencies across the greater Harris County area. We're, you probably know us more for our disaster response side. You see us up there at Harris County EOC during activations as well as working with our hospitals, providing the hospital data during COVID. Some of the unknown side is, we also work with our EMS providers and bring them together through our coalitions. And I, I think that Chief Reed kind of is not self-promoting as he should be. I think we're fortunate in this county and the greater Harris County area to have an EMS system the way we do. And I think they take granted that the true professionals they are. I could say that we lead the state of Texas and the nation when it comes to EMS on the initiatives and the, and the way they run their systems. So I thank you as far as SetTrak being part of this and accepting the warrant on, you know, behalf of the EMS providers. But I would also encourage you Commissioners and Judge, if you're not engaged with your EMS providers in your area, please go out and get to know them. They're truly doing amazing work. And like I said, they lead the nation of Texas in our area and we take that for granted a lot. And I thank the public as also of everything they do. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you always for the work SetTrak does.
Those are all the speakers, Judge.
Thank you. So we had a motion by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Commissioner Cable. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries unanimously. The final motion under my agenda, and then we've got several from other members of court, is very special to me, I think to, to the community as a whole. I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the efforts of the military personnel who are operating our site at NRG Park. These are continued efforts, but I think they deserve a pat on the back, very much well-deserved. NRG Park was established as a FEMA Community Vaccination Center under the unified command of Harris County Public Health, Houston Health Department, Harris County Constable Precinct 1, Texas Department of Emergency Management, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Defense, and the NRG Park Executive Leadership. The Department of Defense provided the primary vaccination personnel resources led by Danny K. Wong, Colonel, United States Air Force Commander, 64th Expeditionary Medical Operations Squadron. Whereas of the 576,799 vaccine doses that Harris County Public Health has administered to date, 314,751,000 have been given at NRG in 11 weeks alone. NRG has provided vaccines to 194,191 people, a figure representing over 10% of the total Harris County population that has received at least one dose. Of course, this 300,000, that's going to be even higher percentage. The NRG Park Vaccination Site has been deemed a national model for conducting mass vaccinations with FEMA having cited and published over 18 best practices based on the vaccination operations continued at NRG. Now therefore be it resolved that the Harris County Commissioners Court recognizes Colonel Danny Wong, United States Air Force Commander, and the hard-working servicemen and women under his command for their historic effort making Harris County, Texas, a healthier community in the fight against COVID-19. Colonel Wong, it's been incredible to watch the, the work you guys have been doing. And it's just such a great example of collaboration, county, city, state, federal government. So we're very, very happy to see this continue. The numbers have been ticking up this week per the, the provisions we passed at the last court. And, you know, we're going to keep delivering those shots to move our community closer and closer to, to a new day when it comes to this virus. So I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the sacrifice that these men and women are making. And they're there, you know, until nine o'clock at night and they've been there, unfailingly professional.
Absolutely.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Go ahead.
Colonel Danny Wong with U.S. Air Force, go ahead, sir.
Morning Judge Hidalgo and distinguished Commissioners. This is Colonel Dan Wong. I wanted to thank you for taking the time today to recognize the Air Force team. As the commander, it is an honor for my airmen to serve America, specifically Harris County in its time of need. I couldn't have asked for better partners than the dedicated professionals with whom we have worked with here on site. Whether it was Harris County and City of Houston Public Health Department, the constables, Texas Division of Emergency Management, or the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the NRG staff. All the teams have worked so well together to ensure safe and efficient site operations. The success of the Community Vaccination Center was a reflection of these strong organizations. To date, we've provided over 333,000 vaccinations now. And I'm confident that our efforts here have helped reduce the spread of the pandemic and will help our nation return to a sense of normalcy. Thank you again for this resolution and for hosting our team in your beautiful community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you Judge. Commander, please convey to your team how grateful we are. And we just know that you guys are working around the clock as the judge mentioned. But we are so grateful and, and obviously we couldn't do it without you. So thank you for all you, all you are doing.
Yes, sir, I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's it for the resolutions under my agenda. Commissioner Ellis, I know you have a resolution.
Judge, I think I have, yeah, I do have, this is 249, the George Floyd Resolution. Judge members will never be able to get justice or relief for George Floyd and his family, but we owe it to him to at least set the record straight on a case in Harris County. Mr. Floyd was accused of and pled guilty to charges for the sale of $10 worth of crack in 2004. The only evidence in the case was the testimony of a police officer. We now know so much more about many cases involving that officer, Officer Goins. The District Attorney's Office has reviewed and dropped hundreds of cases linked to that officer's involvement and testimonies. This case is a product of the war on drugs in America, the criminalization of poverty, and mass incarceration of people of color. A lot of implications from this case. He did, Mr. Floyd did not have the ability to post bail. He had a court-appointed lawyer, who I'm told did a reasonably good job, at least based on the standards of that time. We had no public defender back then. We cannot find out whether or not the lawyer asked or the court gave any money to investigate the case. So I just make that point to, to stress the issue. A host of those issues still go on today. I want to commend the public defender's office for seeking a posthumous pardon for Mr. Floyd, the DA's office for supporting that effort. This is why it's so important to have strong advocates for people who've been accused of a crime. We cannot expect truth and justice when the deck gets stacked in favor of powerful institutions instead of real people. I hope my colleagues will support the resolution. That number whereas is I reduced him as much as I could, but I did want to make the points. He was arrested on February 5th, 2004. It was at Cutie Homes, accused of dealing with the $10 I mentioned, the crack. He was arrested in the third ward at the time. He ended up being sentenced to 10 months in state prison. He got out for time served. One of the people who I think signed up to speak is the public defender who's representing him. Allison Mathis, I think is on the line, and maybe some family members as well. I'm sure that when movies or books are done about George Floyd's life, his encounters with law enforcement in Harris County, particularly this one, will be written about and talked about and the impact that it had on his life. So I think it's the very least that we can do as a Commissioners Court is to support our public defender and our district attorney in encouraging the board of pardons and parole and the governor to give him a posthumous pardon. And with that, I may more than happen to answer your questions. I'll go to the speakers.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you Judge. Commissioner Ellis, thank you so much for putting this resolution on the agenda. And I'll just tell you that over my years, either at the police department or as a sheriff, and, and as sheriff in particular, many people have, have asked to submit letters of support. I think the statute requires that either the chief or the sheriff or the DA be the ones to request a pardon, or in support of a pardon, I think, I think it's, is what I...
Think it's by actual innocence. I think you have to have three writings.
Yeah. And when they would come to me, I would be very, I was very reluctant because I'm like, you know, how, where am I from with the limited information that I have to be able to second guess what has transpired involving other entities? And in most of these cases, they didn't involve the sheriff's office specifically, but because of the three writings it looked to, they would come to me. And, and I would tell you that regretfully and, and that there is no doubt that George Floyd deserves this pardon. There's no doubt. And I'm glad that in those times when I had reservations about doing so, that today I do not. So thank you for, for doing this.
Commissioner, thank you. As you know, the, the DA has written hundreds of letters to try and find people who were involved in cases, while only the testimony of this one officer was involved. Look, I take the blame for writing that statute. It shows how trying to pass something in Austin can be a rather inexact science. And I doubt, I'm not sure by the way, that in this case, Mr. Floyd will, his estate will be eligible for any compensation. Brandon, my staff was telling me when we wrote it, I think we, we counted time in state jail. And so the statute you're making reference to, you had to have the... Sometimes it was the police department that did it. I think as the case came up, when the police department wouldn't do it, you did it. I can almost think of the person's name. It'll come to me later. And then you used to have to have the DA say actual innocence. And there have been cases where the court wouldn't do it, wouldn't, the judge wouldn't say it. But that was one case where in, in court, it was in the record where it said actual innocence. But, you know, at some point, maybe next session, we may try to clean up that statute. It's not clear anybody could get compensation for time served in a county facility. I just don't know. But Governor Abbott was Attorney General, by the way, when a famous case came up. Corrissession's, a Tim Cole case, so-called Texas Tech rapist. And in Texas, I think Governor Perry thought she couldn't do a posthumous pardon. And that's when we ended up, the Attorney General did a ruling and said, turns out you could. And I think President Clinton had done a posthumous pardon on the federal level. So we got that changed and then went past that statute. And that's the part where these three writings come from that you make in reference to. But thank you.
Listen, I know we have several speakers on this.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
All right, let's take the speakers.
Allison Mathis with the Public Defender's Office, go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi, this is Allison Mathis. I'm the public defender who drafted the pardon and filed it. And I thank you guys so much for considering this resolution today. I just wanted to briefly say in support of the resolution that the reason that we had to file this as a posthumous pardon as opposed to a writ of habeas corpus, which is a legal vehicle we would have used if Mr. Floyd was still alive, is because he's dead. So this is the only way that we can get any kind of relief or correct the record as far as Mr. Floyd is concerned. And I'm so grateful that you guys have already recognized that this is really not a political issue. No matter how you feel about Mr. Floyd, about his life or his death, Mr. Floyd does not deserve to have the stain and taint of a wrongful conviction on his record. It doesn't matter who he was. All that matters is that this was a wrongful conviction and he deserves to have the record righted and so does his family. So that's what we're asking the Commissioners Court to get behind today. Thank you again, and I hope you have a great rest of your meeting.
One quick question, Judge. Ms. Mathis, I, I know that the records show that the DA's office tried to reach Mr. Floyd, I think in March of 2019, more than a year before his death, to alert him of the Goins investigation. Are there others, other people who got some of the letters? I guess hundreds went out from cases, who would not necessarily know. I mean, addresses change. I assume they use whatever address somebody had, but are there others as well?
Absolutely. And, you know, part of the, part of the problem we know with the war on drugs and with the stain of felony convictions on people's records is that it makes it very hard to get an apartment, say, or stay in one place to keep a job. And so people with felony convictions who were wrongfully convicted by the, on the testimony and affidavits that were provided by Officer Goins frequently have to move around and it's hard to keep track of where they are. We are unable to find a lot of them. I know the DA's office sent out letters to the last known address. And we've actually had our investigator try to find some of the, some of the people we think whose cases were most egregious. And we found some of them, but some of them are just kind of lost to the wind. So it's a, it's a big shame. We do have the information we needed on Mr. Floyd's case now. And hopefully we'll be able to undo a good number of these moving forward.
So I just, it's a separate issue, but I just want to suggest that your office come back to us with some proposal. You know, I remember years ago, in my previous job, I read about California starting a Holocaust registry as an example. And they put all of the names online of people who had insurance policies during the Holocaust. So they could be, you know, it's out there in the public domain and you could, you could find it. But just thinking, I certainly would be supportive of funding that effort because I assume if there were hundreds of letters that went out, I doubt that we've ever asked for a report on how many responded. But hey, thank you for the work you do. I assume it's very rewarding for you to work on a case like this.
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner Ellis, and I'll definitely be in touch with your office about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Sharida Tate with the George Floyd Foundation, go ahead, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Sharida Tate. I am the president of the George Floyd Foundation, but I'm also a family member. I'm his first cousin who was raised along with him in the third ward area. And I am so grateful that we are having an opportunity right now to right the wrong that occurred in this wrongful conviction. I did in fact write a pardon support letter. And I think he deserves this pardon, albeit posthumously. I think regardless, he did not commit that crime and it should be on record that he did not. And so I just wanted to take the time to come on and to let you know that I'm in full support of the resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Tate, this is Rodney Ellis. I just want to publicly thank you and your family for the grace and dignity in which you have carried yourselves during this tragedy. And you are, you and the entire family are an inspiration to, to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Tate, thank you. Thank you for continuing to fight for his legacy. Thank you for continuing to fight for his legacy and the work you're doing uh with the foundation. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Tangela Hamilton with NothingButNet Org. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Tangela Hamilton here, and I thank you very, very much for this opportunity. Uh, just to give you a little information about myself, I learned um five days uh after George was murdered that we share great, great grandparents. So I was, this whole thing with him took on a whole new level because now I know that we share blood. And uh since then, I've been very uh involved uh in the community. I've been, uh, I live here in Washington, D.C. I am a native Texan. Um, and I am a moderator moderator of a very large uh Floyd family group uh of uh other extended uh and close relatives of him as well. I want to say that as the daughter of career law enforcement, um, and a native Texan, um, I full, I give my full support uh of of this um, of this pardon for him. Um, George, there's a lot that he has done uh from the things that I've learned with others uh near him and in his life uh that he's done for many, many people that was not even celebrated, uh, and it was unseen. They just didn't know. And the other piece of that is statistically sentencing um has been harsher against people of color uh than those of um of our white counterparts and so forth for identical crimes. I think this is an opportunity to usher in promising change and fairness for the state of Texas and for places around the country. So I I give my full-throated support. Uh, and of course, if any of you uh want to uh speak to me further, feel free to contact me and everything that I learned in this process, I'm also relaying back to the family um in our, in our uh group that we have. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Carl Davis with Jack Yates National Alumni Association. Go ahead, please.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, uh, County Judge and all of the Commissioners assembled today. I'm Carl Davis and I'm representing and a proud alumni of Jack Yates High School. I'm calling today in support of the uh resolution to pardon George Floyd. George Floyd was a proud alumni of a great institution named Jack Yates. He excelled in sports, football and basketball, and also uh played in the uh state finals in 1973 when the proud alumni of Jack Yates played Temple. He was one of the star players during that time. Now it's time that uh he, we can right a wrong. So many uh people of color have suffered injustice. And I think that with this resolution being put forth by the Commissioners Court led by Commissioner Ellis and those who sit with him, I hope that you will join a unanimous vote in supporting this resolution and be the beacon light for others around this nation to take the lead to right a wrong. Thank you so much. I throw my support and support for this resolution to pardon George Floyd.
Pastor, please stay on the line. Go ahead, uh, Commissioner Cagle.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Davis. I miss seeing you. It is good to hear your voice this morning. This is Cagle.
Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Cagle. And as the uh pandemic uh uh, we get past that, I'm sure you'll see me around again. And thank you, uh, all the Commissioners. And as I said, I wish this was passed unanimously in support of the pardon of George Floyd.
Thank you, Carl, for sharing your voice, brother.
Judge, oh, Carl was ill. He was, he was in the hospital for a while and I I I called so I could go see him. I was headed over and they told me he checked out of the hospital. So we're glad you you're back in the South, Carl.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for you. Appreciate all of y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in and congratulations on 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 your recovery.
Thanks, Judge.
Tara Brown, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, hi. Um, I um just want to say, um, first of all, thank you for allowing me this moment to be able to um to share in this. I um think that this is a phenomenal opportunity to um fix the miscarriage of justice um in in George's um, in George's case. Um, I was um raised with him and I know the person that he was. Um, his, his mother and my mother are sisters. And so um, we were pretty much raised in the same household, um, raised as siblings. And so um, I am a witness to some of the things that happened um in the community. And I do understand that sometimes um bad things can happen to good people. Um, so I do know that um this, this is something that needs to happen, especially with um the legacy that um George is is now become um a catalyst for this social justice change and just exposing some of the things that have happened as a miscarriage in in um the criminal justice system. So I am in full support of this pardon and I am hopeful that this will um, this effort will be pushed forward. Um, so we can, we can celebrate that. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ellis.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And I I I want you to know that I've reached out to uh friends in the Texas House and Texas Senate. And if there's time, I I assume that there'll be resolutions coming through legislature in support of uh Mr. Floyd getting his pardon as well. We we certainly do know his name around the globe now.
Oh, I'm so proud of that. I I appreciate, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bishop James Dixon, NAACP president. Go ahead, please, sir.
One, um, yes, good morning. President, I am on, and at the same time, I'm speaking to you. I'm speaking to Commissioners Court. One of our political action items is supporting a resolution in Harris County that's on the court right now, sponsored by Commissioner Ellis, for the posthumous pardoning of uh George Floyd uh who was charged with a, a drug charge years ago, uh, a case that was investigated by uh the former uh more disgraced uh uh investigator, Goins. And uh, I am standing with individuals like Carl Davis and others in our community who are in support of passing this resolution that's before the Commissioners Court right now in Harris County to completely clear George Floyd's record. We can't bring him back. Uh, but uh, the death that that George Floyd experienced, of course, uh, represents to us uh modern day lynching and oppression. But thank God, such a wide, diverse group of people from across America and Harris County have come together to stand to say, no more of that. And George Floyd is the emblem of what should end in America. I think that the Commissioners Court has taken the right stand today to exonerate his record posthumously. Thank you, Commissioner Ellis and all the Commissioners and our county judge for taking that aggressive action. And I'm sharing that at the same time, on behalf of Houston, uh, Mr. Republican Baptist Ministers Conference, Dr. S. Gilbert, along with the Houston NAACP, as well as One Family, One Future. Thank you all very much for listening.
Judge, thank you. Bishop, I want to thank you and uh Dr. Gilbert, NAACP and others. I, you know, I think it's important to make the case that uh, that a lot of issues that come out of of this conviction of George Floyd. One, uh, there was no public defender. He had a court-appointed lawyer. I doubt that any money was asked for to investigate the case. Number two, he sat in the Harris County jail for 10 months. Didn't have the money to post bail. And oftentimes, as uh it, the way it works, you sit there long enough and you plead anything. Uh, so he pled guilty. Uh, but those issues still go on today and I appreciate you. I know you're going to be out there actively making the case for us to have a MAC, for us to expand the Public Defender's Office, for us to have an alternate uh Public Defender's Office uh and uh do dashboards so we can see, do people ask for money to investigate cases? We ought to take this resolution and honor Mr. Floyd, obviously hoping the state will give him this posthumous pardon, but also see what lessons there ought to be learned. And there are many, even today. Same issues that were going on in 2004 in February are going on in May in 2021. So thank you, Bishop.
Bishop, please don't jump off. Commissioner Ramsey has a comment for you as well.
Bishop Tom Ramsey here. Appreciate what you do. Appreciate what you do on Sunday. Appreciate what you do Monday through Saturday. Thank you for your leadership.
Bishop, Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Cagle as well. Go ahead, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Bishop, thank you so much for uh your willingness to lead the NAACP and provide a voice, an eloquent voice to so many issues like this. And um, and I, and I would just share that, you know, I've had a lot of conversations over the years on different matters. And I, and I would just say that this is, this is an awakening for us for uh conversations that I've had with so many over my years uh raising concern and issue uh to circumstances that uh, you know, very much resemble those that George uh went through. And um, so I'll just say that our work obviously is not done. And um, and I, I have uh enjoyed visiting with Chief Fenner. And uh, so I, I think that at the appropriate time, we need to reconvene and continue to talk about, you know, what more uh reforms are in front of us uh to uh support justice and transparency. Uh, but um, but again, I just want to thank you. You're, you're always there. You're, you've been a constant. Uh, just ask you to regulate, cause we need, cause we need you for a long time, man. So thank you, Bishop.
Commissioner Cagle.
Bishop, earlier we had a resolution that we passed. Uh, and I couldn't resist citing Micah six, the pursuit of justice. You know, what does the Lord require of us but to do justice, to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God? And I thank you for calling us to do that today.
Bishop, thank you so much for the work you do and your eloquence. Truly as Commissioner Garcia mentioned, it's, it's beautiful. Thank you. Powerful. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Yes, ma'am. Vaughn Dickerson with 88 Jump. Go ahead, please.
Hello, uh, I'd like to thank everyone. Uh, my name is Vaughn Dickerson, I'm co-founder. One of the co-founders is 88 Jump, one of the childhood friends of George Floyd. Uh, I pray that this pardon uh will get exercised on his behalf and many others. Uh, it has praised the community for years for what happened to him uh at uh at the hands of law enforcement, not only with his killing, but also uh with the unjustly uh pardon that we're fighting for right now. And it's said that uh here uh in Houston, Texas, that we're still fighting for reparations on behalf of young black men. And I just pray that uh everyone continue to fight, continue to get out, peace in the protest, and that everyone can just get along. But most importantly, that we all can be on one accord and do what is right and what's just in God's eyes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those were all the speakers we could reach.
Thank you, Lucinda.
Take that with adoption.
Second, with Commissioner Garcia. All in favor? Oh, is there a question, Commissioner Cagle? Yes, go ahead.
Yes. And I may, I may ask a uh personal indulgence from Commissioner Garcia in a moment. As my colleagues know, I, I served before becoming uh a public servant here on Commissioners Court as a judge. Justice is very important to me. Um, in discussing this particular item with several folks, uh, there were two questions of of why bother? There are nine convictions. This is just one of the nine. Why should we care? Why bother? Because this occurred in 2004. Um, many years have passed since that period of time. Can't we just move on? Um, but I think that one of the cornerstones of our justice system is that things are either right or they're not. And with uh the recommendation, I want to thank also our county attorney. I called uh Christian Menifee and caught him after hours yesterday and he visited with me for a few minutes of can we do this posthumously? This is actually not something we're doing. We're just encouraging the state and the governor's office to do this. But, but Judge, the why bother is, is because it's either right or it's not. And um, to echo some of the comments of of all of our friend Carl Davis and of the bishop, uh, if it's correct, it's correct. And if it's wrong, it's wrong. This was a wrongful conviction. The DA has joined on this. County attorney has joined on this and we should join in on this. And so the indulgence that I would ask of my colleagues, I don't know if it makes a difference, but um, being that I am a Republican member of this court, it may help if I am the one who makes the second. I don't want to cut somebody out of that corner if that's what they want. But it's either right or it's not. I'm not, um, you know, I'm not talking about the other eight cases. We're just talking about this one. And on this one, I would be willing to make a second if my colleagues would accept that.
Be happy to.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner.
Commissioner Ellis, are you all right with that?
Uh, yes, sir. And Commissioner, might, might I say, just based on my experience, what would help more than anything? When the uh, uh, case came up uh many years ago from Texas Tech, what helped more than anything was my Republican colleagues agreed with me. You know, they, they, we had some similar resolution. They voted for it. But they also, in their own way, quietly called people in power that they worked with, not the ones they didn't work with. So for what that's worth, you know, if they're folks on the Board of Pardons, and there are two ways it can happen. The Board of Pardons and parole could do it. Uh, and and they may, there may be people on that board you could call quietly. Or if you have a relationship with members of the Senate or the House, just do that as well. That would be my suggestion, just based on having gone through this before when uh Governor Perry thought he couldn't grant a posthumous pardon. It turned out President Clinton had done it, I think, twice. And uh, you know, we, I think we asked what was called the Legislative Council. It was the, it was the, it was the Katy Shop of State Government. And I think Senate Research first said you could do a posthumous pardon. Then the Legislative Reference uh Legislative Council did it. And then the AG, uh, then General Abbott, agreed. And so it's, it's a pretty big deal to get a posthumous pardon uh back then. So if you make those calls, that'll help as well in addition to a second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ellis and a second by Commissioner Cagle. All in favor?
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, post, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Commissioner Ellis, for bringing this. It's, it's so tragic, but I think part of doing him justice is, is lifting this up. Um, not just, not just the pardon, but the fact that there have been these mistakes and calling attention to them.
And Judge, I, I do think we should go and see if there are resources for those others. If there were hundreds, you know, most folks, when you're, when you're in that world, I think you do change addresses quite a bit.
Absolutely. And it's something, you know, we have to work so that it doesn't, this kind of thing doesn't happen again. But certainly there needs to be a system so that if it does, we can, we can right the wrongs. So I think it's, it's a brilliant idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. And uh, I know I've got two uh resolutions next. Which one are you uh looking at?
I have a resolution, item seven, Commissioner Garcia.
Okay.
Honoring the life of the deputy.
Yes. Thank you, Judge. And um, I just um, you know, anybody who who wears a uniform is uh serving us in so many special ways and um past uh discussions aside, there are those who you just, you know, you're grateful for, cause they stepped in with a promise and a hope to contribute and um, and didn't get to, you know, carry out a full career like I was fortunate to have and so many others have had. You know, you and I were at the uh. You know, you and I were at the Harris County Sheriff's Office uh Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony. I really thought thought your words were very, very uh on point with um the contributions, the sacrifices, and the commitments of so many. And um and you know, in many of those occasions that uh of those names that were read, whether from Sheriff's Office or the constable offices, were taken from us violently as they ran to things and people that most others run from. And um but this past year, uh Judge, it has just been painful all the way around, but uh especially amongst our first responders. And because they uh then they knew that we had to keep them out there. Uh they they knew they had to be there and to keep uh us moving forward. And yet another young life was taken by this horrible virus. And um so I just want to, again, applaud you, Judge, for everything you have done. You have worked tirelessly to do what can be done, your leadership and your counsel and your direction to save lives. And there's no doubt that many lives have been saved. Unfortunately, we weren't able to save this one. And this one is that of Deputy Alexander Gosh and um his father, also a thirty-four-year veteran of the sheriff's office. And I know that uh he was hopeful and praying that his son would have such a career uh in length as well. And so this resolution reads, whereas after a brave battle against COVID nineteen, Deputy Alexander Gosh passed away on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Whereas Alexander David Gosh of Cypress, Texas, was born on January the ninth nineteen eighty-nine in Houston, Texas, to Chris and Sarah Gosh. Alex was a two thousand and seven graduate of Cyfair High School and went on to attend Sam Houston State University where he graduated with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. Pursuing his love for law enforcement, Alex joined the Harris County Sheriff's Office in twenty twelve. He was assigned to District Five Patrol as a deputy, where he was involved in high-water rescue Special Response Group. And whereas the Harris County Sheriff's Office is mourning the death of one of its youngest members, Deputy Gosh, thirty-two, was a nine-year veteran for the Harris County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Gonzalez said, "We are devastated and saddened by another loss of life and reminded again of the dangers of this terrible virus." And Deputy Gosh loved this job. He had a servant's heart. He came from a law enforcement family. His father is a retired sheriff's office deputy and our brother in blue. His whole life was ahead of him. Gosh's father, Chris Gosh, retired from the sheriff's office last year after spending thirty-four years with the department. And whereas Alex enjoyed time off with his family and friends, riding ATVs, hunting, and fishing, and participating in heroes' runs and and the Spartan Spartan race. And whereas Alexander is survived by his parents, Chris and Sarah, and his sister Catherine, his grandmothers, Victoria Salinas and Margaret Gosh, godparents, Simon Salinas III and Patty Instrom, as well as numerous aunts, uncles, and cousins. Now therefore be it resolved that Harris County Commissioners Court hereby honors the life of Deputy Alexander Gosh and his service to the citizens of Harris County. God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Lucinda, do we have any speakers on the line?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Chris Gosh, go ahead, please.
All right. First, I'd like to thank the court for recognizing my son. Uh he was dedicated to his job. He uh served the citizens of Harris County every day, and he would share his stories with us when he'd come home from work, and we're gonna miss that. But Alex also, he left us a letter. Well, he left everyone a letter in his best, a what-if letter, if something was to happen to him. He had it in his best. But I'd like to read that. Uh he starts out with the Matthew five nine, blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God. Then he addresses his family. To my family, it is with a heavy heart that I write this letter. As I write it, I solemnly hope that it is never read. I love each and every one of you, from my biological, my chosen, and my blue family. Please do not cry for me, for I am with the Lord's embrace and my struggle is over. To my blue family, know I stand with you and I am still by your side. Every time you go to a call, reach a door, save a life, I'm with you and I'll give you my strength. To my mother and father, I know I've been a pain, but I know you love me unconditionally. My hope is that you are proud of me. To my sister Catherine, you joined the blue family despite me trying to stop you. I want you to know I'm proud of you. Fight the good fight. Don't let anyone stand in your way. In many ways, you are stronger than I will ever be. To my chosen family, y'all have helped me in many ways to be the man I've become. Y'all have seen sides of me no one else has ever seen, and I am proud to call y'all my family. It is my wish for everyone to stand tall, fight the good fight. I know it's a long and weary fight, but y'all are strong and can handle any and all things. Do not cry for me. Honor my memory. Fight the good fight. I will see you all again one day. But until then, hold the line. Love, Alexander David Gush, badge number twenty-eight oh nine, unit forty-five, David twenty-one. Again, I'd like to thank the court and Harris County Sheriff's Office for everything I do to honor my son.
Mr. Gush, it's been, it was such a pleasure and honor to meet you last week. And your son has such a beautiful example. I could just tell what kind of person he was from the letters, the words in his letter, and the fact that he had decided so early on to dedicate his life to law enforcement and to serving the community. So, sir, thank you for raising such an incredible man to you and your wife and and the whole family. I'm I'm just so honored to know you all and to know of your son's memory. Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, thank you. Um Chris, um first of all, um God bless you and your family. And if there's um anything that helps to soften the pain that there's no doubt that you feel, it's um simple to say that as a father, we we do our best. We try to raise our kids in the best possible way, with the best possible example, always striving for them to do better than us. And uh and Chris, that letter really indicates that you raised a great man. And um although he cited Matthew, I think uh Second Timothy four seven uh is an appropriate one because that letter indicates that um he fought the good fight, he finished his race, and without a doubt, he kept the faith. God bless you, Chris, and your family. I know that we'll never forget.
Commissioner Ramsey, and then Commissioner Cable.
Yeah, I would like to uh second that. Commissioner Garcia, thank you for bringing this. Uh he's a resident of precinct three. Um I couldn't think of anything more proud if I was a father than to hear my son say what he did. To quote Matthew as as a calling, to be a peacemaker, what a what a legacy that is for the blue. What a what a legacy in leadership. And so we will remember him and and quote him again and reference him again when we when we have uh discussions in the future. Just know that your son did well. And just know you, as a father, did well. Thank you. You and your family.
Commissioner Cable.
Your Honor, in a few moments, we will be voting on it on recognizing National Police Week, where we will be recognizing those officers who fell in the line of duty last year. And and I know that uh this is tender, but we will be expecting to honor this deputy next year when we do this again at that time. Philosophers have debated of what is better and what is worse. Uh Tolkien said that fathers should not bury their sons in a moment of Solon of Athens, one of the one of the uh one of the great sages of the ancient world, though, said that there is a beauty that is there when you are able, as an older man, to rest your head knowing that your sons have lived honorably in the service of their country. Um I think both of those things are true, and I am grateful for both the father and the son and both of their services in this situation. Thank you for your service to the end.
Commissioner Ellis.
Commissioner Garcia, thank you for bringing this forward. And what a a wonderful family. We all share the the pain that they feel, but just thank you. And to the family, thank you for sharing it.
Thank you. Lucinda, do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Commissioner Ramsey. Or Commissioner Garcia, I'm sorry, you have one more resolution.
Yes, Judge, thank you. Uh excuse me, Commissioner Ramsey. Uh but I've got one more resolution and um and this gentleman too was a giant um in our community. And so I've um heard of his uh passing, and because of all of the things that he's done, his walk of life and um and his just ferocious tenacity to speak truth to power and to fight for those who have no voice, um this resolution is uh a huge honor for me to present. Um we do have uh the spouse of this gentleman that will be accepting this. And in short order, let me say that uh if you didn't get, if you didn't have the opportunity to know Rick Dovalina, uh then you missed an experience and um and you just an experience of knowing him as a person. But you also missed the experience uh to witness an unquenchable fire uh that um that he had and always had something in the forefront of his mind that he saw that was ripe and needed attention, and it needed attention yesterday. And so um I had the pleasure of speaking to him and working with him on many occasions over my years. And uh and just recognize that although he held no um governmental elected office, he was an elected official. And um and he uh did so much for so many. And this resolution recognizes a young man who was born in Laredo, Texas, on August the eighteenth, nineteen forty-eight. His family uh ended up moving to Corpus Christi and where he graduated from Miller High School and then went on to achieve his undergraduate degree in business from A&amp;I in Kingsville, Texas. Um he's he is survived by his two sons and um one of them is Navy uh Navy Chief Petty Officer Richard Jason Dovalina and Michael Dovalina, along with his wife of twenty-seven years, Lisa Alcantar Dovalina. Uh he is a graduate of U of H's Bates College of Law. Um and in nineteen eighty-one, uh he was licensed as an attorney and uh enjoyed forty years of practice in our local community. And then um he um just gave himself uh just entirely, one hundred percent, was invested in the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, Council Six Seventy-three. Um LULAC is the largest and oldest Latino civil rights organization in America. And um and while uh in working and contributing and volunteering this, that's what you do in LULAC, you volunteer. Uh he did it with a passion. And ultimately, he served as president of his council, district director of LULAC District Eight, national legal council, various other positions, and in nineteen ninety-eight um at the LULAC National Convention in Dallas, he was elected the forty-sixth national president of the organization. And um and get this, he uh uh his service is a unique one because generally you serve as national president, maybe for a term. Um you you'd be fortunate. I can't remember who was the last person who may have served two terms. Uh but Rick served three terms and uh served from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two. And uh working very closely with Presidents Clinton and W. Bush. Um and just, again, he did so much for so many and has an incredible legacy. Um and this resolution uh reads, whereas we join the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC, mourning the sudden death of Enrique Rick Dovalina on May third, twenty twenty-one in Houston. Whereas an attorney by profession, Rick served as the forty-sixth national president of LULAC between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and two. He was an active civil rights advocate, previously served as a legal uh legal counsel of LULAC during his more than forty-year membership in the League, bringing about positive social change. Whereas while president, Rick published the LULAC Civil Rights Manual, opened a LULAC state office in Austin, and promoted the benefits of having a LULAC presence in each state capital as a lobbying force. He worked with President George W. Bush on many critical national civil rights issues and later stood in solidarity with Puerto Rico in their struggle for equal rights. And whereas Rick was known by colleagues and friends for his big heart, warmth, intellect, and unique way of understanding the plight of the most vulnerable, sharing wisdom, guidance, and membership. Whereas he also spent decades working to improve the lives of Hispanics in the community by serving as a board member of organizations such as the Hispanic Association on Corporate Responsibility and Set Jobs for Progress, making sure future generations of Latino leaders have a seat at the table. Whereas Rick is survived by his wife Lisa, his children Richard and Michael, he will be dearly missed by his brothers and sisters in LULAC at home and across the US and Puerto Rico. Yet resolved that Harris County Commissioners Court hereby honors the life of Enrique Rick Dovalina and its service to the residents of Harris County. God bless you, Rick, and thank you for everything you've done. Lisa, thank you for sharing him with us so much because we know that uh he sacrificed so much at home uh to give so much to us. So, we're grateful to you.
Commissioner Ellis.
Uh thank you, Judge. Commissioner, thank you for bringing that forward. I did get to work with Rick on so many issues as an intern, worked for the congressman and in Austin, and he was always a steady voice and God bless his family for sharing him because he was at a moment's notice. He'd show up if it was the hate crimes bill, whatever it was, and had that ability to draw bipartisan support, but I thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Lucinda, Mrs. Dovalina on the line.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lisa Dovalina, go ahead, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I want to first say thank you for honoring my husband, and he loved what he did. He worked hard every day and you if you knew him, you knew him and you know he was in the room, his presence, and I want to say thank you so much. Thank you.
God bless you and your family, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Commissioner Kegel.
Ms. Dovalina, I want to thank you for the service of your husband. I got to know him through my involvement with the Mexican-American Bar Association and to a lesser extent, his involvement with the Hispanic Bar Association, both affectionately known as MABA and HISP, respectively. And the thing of the resolution that I appreciate is the reference in here to big heart, warmth, intellect, and unique way of understanding, and that's so appropriate. Thank you for the service that your husband has rendered to our community.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. You know, we do many things as as commissioners and representatives of Harris County. And a couple of weeks ago, I get a phone call from Dr. Holloway. She said, Commissioner, I need you to come over. I'd like for you to come over and give the keys to a new home to a couple. I thought, well, okay, I'll just work that in, figure that out. That was the biggest deal I think I've had happen since I've been on court. Well, a wonderful thing our community services department does, and I think if we don't pause and take a minute to see the direct impact we're having on people's lives, sometimes we forget. I got there early. I met Mr. Bill Garrison, Susan Garrison. Bill Garrison was a coach at Stratford High School when they won state in 1978. His wife Susan was an art teacher for many years, and when we got there, she gave us this picture that I now have framed in our office of the state of Texas, as only an art teacher could do it, and just their heart, their level of appreciation. But just understand this, this couple had been flooded multiple times. They were, in many cases, without hope, were it not for the programs we have here at Harris County and the fact that we initiated, we worked with them. They're in a beautiful two-bedroom home on the very lot that's flooded many times. Now, the engineer in me looks at this and says, this is two and a half feet. It looks like in many ways a beach house in Galveston, but it's so well done. The lattice work around the foundation, around the house, that home will never flood again. They're living on a lot that is home to them, been home to them, and as they sit on their back porch and look at the trees and they think about their life, it's just it's just great. So I think I wanted to be sure and call attention to that, and this resolution goes as, whereas during Hurricane Harvey, William and Susan Garrison's home incurred substantial damage from the storm's subsequent flooding, whereas Mr. Garrison, a disabled individual, and Mrs. Garrison, a retired art teacher, were in need of assistance to recover from their devastating loss. Whereas the Harris County Community Services Department, CSD, partnering with the Texas General Land Office, GLO, was able to assist the Garrison and reconstructing their home as a part of the Harris County's Project Recovery Homeowner Assistance Program, HAP. The Garrison home is the third home to be reconstructed through HAP, benefiting from funding through U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds granted to the GLO. And whereas CSD hopes to help almost 200 homeowners like the Garrison's in Harris County through the administration of approximately 30 million in Hurricane Harvey HAP funds. Now therefore be it resolved, the Harris County Commissioners Court thanks William and Susan Garrison for their service to our community and extends congratulations, best wishes to them for a long and happy life in their newly reconstructed home. Thank you, Court, for what you do on these issues.
Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, if if we could, I was in the process of making a motion to recognize Mr. Dovalina's life, and I'd like to take a vote on that before we move on.
Oh, of course.
So move on the resolution for Mr. Dovalina.
Second. I'd already held up the second, but I'll defer to colleague one.
So there's a motion and a second motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Kegel, all in favor of the resolution to celebrate Mr. Dovalina's wife.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And your post-motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for bringing that resolution to court. Now, Commissioner Ramsey, you had made your motion. Are there any speakers on that item?
I do not think so, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second you, Judge.
Okay. I don't think we need to take a vote on this one, right?
Okay.
Commissioner Ramsey, you have another item?
Yeah, quickly, let me recognize an incredible young lady. And just to understand, for a Texas Aggie class of 74, to recognize the incredible accomplishments of someone from the University of Texas, I exercise great discernment. But let me also say that my three children has one thing in common, they're all married to a graduate of the University of Texas. So I've learned to keep my mouth shut many days. But with that said, whereas it is no big surprise to the neighbors of Joanne Allen Taylor that this incredible young lady has soared to the top of the academic and ladies' collegiate basketball worlds, the community witnessed the dedication and discipline of Joanne on many mornings, neighborhoods woke to the sound of dribbling shots off the backboard and swoosh of the net, realizing their young neighbor was at it again. Whereas the native Estonian has been at it all her life, a graduate of Cy Falls High School, she embodied the school's motto of Eagles exemplify excellence. Joanne never made lower than an A on any subject in lettered all four years playing varsity women's basketball. And whereas during high school, Joanne's 134-game career saw 2,567 career points, 305 career assists. She was first team all district all four years. She was named TABC All-State for sophomore, junior, and senior years. Incredible. Ranked as one of the nation's top 15-point guards in the class of 2018, Joanne was ranked number 56 overall by ESPN. Whereas Joanne knew she played the wanted to play college ball in the sixth grade and realized ago when she signed with the University of Texas Longhorns in the fall of 2017, as a junior, Joanne started all 31 games averaging 35.4 minutes a game, which is the second highest average in school history. Joanne's talent was instrumental in propelling the Lady Longhorns to an Elite Eight appearance, averaging a team-high 13.9 points. Whereas she will graduate early as a junior with a mechanical engineering degree, boasting a 3.73 GPA, a two-time academic All-Big 12 First Team Honoree, a four-time member of the Big 12 Commissioners' Honor Row, and a member of the 2019 Academic All-Big 12 Rookie Teams as freshman, Joanne will finish the very impressive academic career as the Big 12 Conference Scholar-Athlete of the Year, UT's first women's basketball student winner. Now therefore be it resolved, the Harris County Commissioners Court extends its best wishes to Joanne Joanne Allen Taylor in the upcoming WNBA draft and congratulates this remarkable young woman who's made her mark and has left big footsteps for the others to follow her on the court.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, we do have her on the line.
Oh, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and hear from her.
Joanne Allen Taylor, go ahead, please.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you all for presenting me with the resolution. I'm really blessed. It's funny hearing all of those things read about me because, I don't know, I don't I don't feel like I've accomplished all of those things, but hearing it being read, it's a blessing. The community got me here. It takes a village to raise a kid, and my village has been overwhelmingly supportive and just behind me in every single thing that I choose to put my mind to, and I'm just blessed, so thank you.
Thank you, Joanne, for what you've done, and as a mechanical engineer, I look forward to visiting with you soon. There are just numerous opportunities back in your home county to not only play basketball but do engineering.
Thank you.
Joanne, congratulations and best of luck. And you know, I did a year at Cy Falls. Go Eagles. Good work.
Judge, we have one more speaker on this item as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jonathan Underwood, go ahead, please.
Good morning, Judge Hidalgo and commissioners. My name is Jonathan Underwood. I'm the owner of Woods Warriors Basketball Academy. Thank you so much for honoring Joanne Allen Taylor, one of our original members who has been and continues to exemplify our core values of our program. Joanne has achieved many accolades on and off the court, as well in the classroom, and always makes and takes time to give back to our youth, especially the young girls. She gives them words of encouragement, direction, and just is a great role model for them. I've known Joanne most of her life, and I've known from the time that I've met her that she is a special individual that would make a huge impact on everyone that she comes in in contact with. I just want to thank you guys once again for recognizing her and her achievements thus far. I know she's very humble and doesn't realize all that she's done, but you know, I live right across the street from her, and I was one of those neighbors that would get woken up to see just her dedication and will to succeed, not only on the court, but I'm hugely proud of her for her accomplishments in the classroom. I know that she hadn't made less than an A, not only in high school, but even as a mechanical engineering major in college, she still has not made less than an A. And to manage that as well as being a collegiate athlete and a high-level collegiate athlete that has the potential to go in the 2022 draft, we are just extremely proud of her and everything that she has accomplished, and we know that there is way more to come. I just think she's a great individual that I've known for a long time that would be successful no matter what or who is around her. So thank you guys very much for this blessing and this honor for her and for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kegel.
Your honor, I have two motions to present. The first one deals with National Nurses Day, and this is a special honor for me to to bring this motion in that my grandmother, Gwendolyn Dundent, was a second-generation lady of Irish descent. When she was young, she had flaming auburn hair, and she had a fiery temper. When I go go see my grandma, my grandpa oftentimes would wave me off to the garden and said, your grandmother's Irish is up, we need to come over here. But when she was young, shortly after World War I, she had enlisted and had been trained as a nurse. And in those days, if you were a lady of morals, and my grandmother was of strict morals, you had to be tough as iron if you were going to be dealing with folks in the nursing profession. Nurses have had to put up with a lot. They've been asked to stand in front, and oftentimes, there are the folks that have hid behind their skirts when their iron hands with softness healed our country. And my grandma, when she touched you, you could feel the healing in her hands. And and her faith was unshakable, and so it is with privilege that we bring this motion today. Whereas National Nurses Day is observed annually on May 6th to acknowledge the nursing profession's vital role in our society and in our lives. And whereas National Nurses Day is the first day of National Nursing Week, which was first observed in the United States in October of 1954 and proclaimed by Ronald President Ronald Reagan in 1984 to mark the 100th anniversary of Florence Nightingale's pioneering work in the Samarian War, Crimean War. And whereas at the end of the 19th century, Florence Nightingale was dubbed "The Lady with the Lamp" because of her habit of making rounds at night, she became well-known while caring for wounded soldiers during the Crimean War. Florence Nightingale was a celebrated English social reformer and statistician, and thanks to her strict use of hand washing and hygiene practices, she and her helpers reduced the combatant death rate from 42% to 2%, ushering the nursing profession we know today. And whereas the year 2020 was designated as the International Year of the Nurse and Midwife well before the COVID-19 pandemic to highlight the commitment of nurses to all their patients. Since that designation, the nursing profession has experienced the unprecedented catastrophic impact of a worldwide pandemic. In Harris County, our nurses have been caring for patients and comforting families impacted by COVID-19 for more than a year with humility, kindness, and strength that are greatly appreciated. Now therefore be resolved, the Harris County Commissioners Court proclaims May 6th, 2021 as National Nurses Day and May 6th through 12th, 2021 as National Nurses Week, with deepest appreciation to all the nurses in Harris County for their vital work in the health care and for their extraordinary dedication and commitment to keep all of our constituents healthy in and out of emergencies. And your honor, we have Maria Padilla, who is the chief nursing executive for Harris Health Online, to receive the the resolution.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner. Let's hear from Ms. Padilla.
Ms. Padilla, you're unmuted. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Hidalgo, Commissioner Kegel, and other members of the court. I sincerely thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of nursing. This last year was the most challenging year that most health care providers have ever faced, and it was the toughest year that I've faced in my 32 years of nursing. The pandemic created situations that many of us have never seen in our careers that afforded us the opportunity to sharpen our innovation skills and find new ways to provide the best care for our patients. Patients are hospitalized because they need specialized care and they need 24-hour nursing care. Nurses are at the bedside around the clock, and they spend the most time at the patient's side. So despite the unknown of this COVID virus, despite the fear of being infected, the stress and the worry of what might be taken home to loved ones who could then be exposed, nurses continued to show up and provide that critical care that these patients needed. So we are in the middle of celebrating National Nurses Week this week, and tomorrow is actually the birthday of nursing founder Florence Nightingale that Commissioner Kegel spoke of. So this resolution is very timely. Thank you for the resignation for the recognition, excuse me, and the resolution for nurses, and I am honored to be able to accept this resolution on behalf of Harris Health System nurses and all nurses that work across Harris County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I proudly make the motion, Judge.
Second by Commissioner Ramsey. Commissioner Kegel, you have one more resolution?
I do, your honor. This is this is a bittersweet resolution, and as we had honored Officer Goetz earlier today, and as we have all been aware of Mike Knox, last year having lost his son in the line of duty, he'll actually participate in the program that we're about to recognize here. And Judge, we have Judge Ted Poe, Congressman Ted Poe, on the line to receive this particular resolution honoring National Police Week. Whereas this week is National Police Week honoring the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers, especially those that paid the ultimate sacrifice for the safety and protection of others. And whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers' Memorial Day and designated the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas communities across our great nation are holding ceremonies to honor local, state, and federal law enforcement officers for their tireless dedication and to remember those who lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas we take time today to pause and pay our respects to the 2020 Texas fallen officers killed in the line of duty, and whereas 75 police officers from the great state of Texas had their lives cut short in 2020, the highest number of fatalities in the nation. And whereas the service and sacrifice of these 75 officers, Texas officers, will be honored during the 7th Annual Police Memorial Ceremony on the morning of May 17th, 2021. And now therefore be it resolved that the Harris County Commissioners Court reflects on the sacrifices of these brave men and women for their tireless dedication and service to Harris County and the state of Texas. Judge, we have Judge Poe to receive this resolution. But I would be remiss if I did not mention that this was a program that Judge Poe began because it was too difficult for folks to travel all the way to Washington, D.C. for the national day. And so he began it in Texas, here in Harris County. And then when he retired from Congress, Harris County picked up this ceremony. And so we in Harris County now are carrying forward the Texas version of this, and Judge Poe is still going to be moderating on the ceremony that we'll be having on the 17th. And so with that, Judge, I turn it over to Judge Poe.
Thank you, Commissioner Kegel and Commissioners Court. On behalf of all of the peace officers and their families and the ones who have died in the line of duty for protecting the rest of us, I accept the resolution. And may we never forget that the peace officers in our community are cut above the rest of us in protecting and serving our community, the great state of Texas and Harris County especially.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Before Judge Poe gets off the line, I just want to say it's great to hear your voice and still remember you as my district judge and the man who refused to unmask the Lone Ranger. Thank you for all you've done. Love you and all the best. Just enjoy the memories with Jim and Martha having a wonderful dinner with you and your bride. And so good to hear your voice, Judge, and God bless you, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for this. And it is important to recognize their work, recognize their sacrifice and the sacrifice of their families. And I'm truly in awe of the work that these folks do. We can't possibly do justice to what they do, but I know they don't do it for the recognition. They do it for the love of community. So thank you. I believe that's all for the resolutions. Any other speakers on this item, Lucinda?
No, ma'am.
So it's time for a break, but I do want to, I'm hoping we can make a change here for James's benefit. On item 247, the resolution proclaiming the month of May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month, there was a typo. And so the fifth whereas clause should read as follows. Has partnered in the treating, assessing, and protecting of elder victims. The resolution said prosecuting. So it should say protecting instead of prosecuting. And James, if you will, just put that on the list for us to vote on it with everything together.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so it's 12:15. Let's take a 15-minute break, and then we'll hear from the speakers. All right, it's 12:30, and Commissioners Court is back in session. And we were going to take the speakers. Lucinda, will you please call them up?
Yes, ma'am. Julia Orduna with Texas Hausers, go ahead, please.
Hey, my name is Julia Orduna, and I'm calling on behalf, I work with Texas Hausers, and I'm calling to support the Northeast Action Collective. We are concerned about the continued disinvestment of low-income and marginalized communities on the east side of Houston due to the misuse of the $2.5 billion flood bond. While existing projects were ranked equitably, it is obvious that the equity framework was completely overlooked when the conversation shifted to the project funding. We ask ourselves why Willow Creek Watershed is funded at 110%, while Greens Bayou funding only covers 20% of the necessary improvements. To talk about the numbers inversely, the funding gap in Cypress Creek Bayou and Buffalo Bayou are 40%, respectively, while the funding gap for Hall's Bayou and San Hasimso Bayou are 75% and 63%, respectively. We are perplexed. Flood-controlled districts have allocated the funds in such a skewed manner, and how the Commissioners Court has allowed this to happen. We are also quite worried that this $1.5 billion was misused to complete construction projects that were not originally included in the scope of the flood bond. By spending funds inappropriately, the county continues to deplete the underfunded communities of the only investment they have seen that will benefit them. These neighborhoods are not sacrifice zones. We know that every dollar spent in low-income areas is more effective at reducing disaster impacts than the dollars spent in more affluent areas. disasters are coming, and we need to take care of every resident in this county. We ask the Commissioners to take immediate action to fix the problem of the lack of funding to complete the flood improvements in the most disinvested watersheds that are consistently short-changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, thank you. Julia, thank you for taking time out to join us on this meeting and really appreciate you lending your voice. And I'm proud of the progress that we're making, but your points are still important to be heard. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lucinda.
Yes, ma'am. Ben Broadway with Northeast Action Collective, go ahead, please.
Yes, Alexa, start a 2 minute 30-second timer. Yes, I'd like to thank the Commissioners Court for letting me speak and Judge Hidalgo for letting me speak today. I'm here, I'm a resident of the northeast, and I've been here throughout the years since 1983, through Hurricane Alicia and everything else, through Rita, through them all, through Harvey, through them all. I've been in this area, and we've drastically needed improvements. They started improvements, but then they stopped. I'm a visually impaired and blind person, and I'm very terrified of water coming in, not knowing where to go, not knowing what to do, because the funding got put somewhere else. I think that we need to ask for Mr. Poppy and Mr. Matt, Matt's resignation, because when they misplaced those funds, they dramatically put lives at danger, friends, families. And now here I am again, facing another hurricane season. And it's very scary to know what's going to come out of it, what's going to happen. Am I going to lose my family members? Am I going to lose my neighbors? What's next? I would hate to put anyone else in that situation. That's why it's very crucial for us to find the funding for the Hall's watershed, for the Greens watershed, for the Huntington's watershed. I want to say in Harvey, a friend of mine lost family members that I knew, and very important people of the community were lost during Harvey because someone decided to put the funding somewhere else. I would like the court to let me know, or even Judge Hidalgo, how would you feel if that was your family, if that was your friends going down the water? Before I purchased my home in 2019, here in this area, I said 89 Jan. Shavitz, my home flooded. I'm not in a flood plain. So tell me, how am I supposed to move forward when I'm not in a flood plain, but my home flooded, and they're using money to go somewhere else? I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair one bit. And we're working to try and educate this community and let them know where to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, Judge, I just wanted to thank Mr. Broadway and Mr. Buford. And you raise a good point, and at the Commissioners Court in June, flood control and the Budget Office have been tasked with coming back with a plan to show how we meet the equity guidelines. And sure, what happened was, they started all of the projects. No, they started certain projects before the equity framework was adopted. And I've taken a position, either it means that we have to find the funding that we thought was coming from the state and may well not be coming, or we got to find other county resources, or we got to slow down some projects that have been started ahead of those in lower-income areas. Because if, in the event, we have to go back to the voters, I don't want to go back to neighborhoods that have always flooded, that have always been neglected. So, you know, I'm not going to rehash it here, but I hear you. I hope all of us on Commissioners Court hear you. If there's another alternative, somebody can certainly lay it out. I hope we all do on our part, those who have allies, if they can influence in Austin. We talked about that on the resolution earlier. They ought to do it quietly or publicly. You know, all of us are pushing to the extent we can to get hurt, to help give some relief. But it's an untenable position to be in. And come June, I hope that we have a solution. If not, I'm going to lay some stuff on the table for us to vote on that may not be as well thought out. But I don't, I think it's just inexplicable to leave Hall's, Greens, there are others, but those in particular, because there was so much discussion about them, and they're virtually all in Harris County. Some of the others that also have challenges with inequities service other counties as well. But I hear you, and you ought to be mad. And I'm going to do all I can, and hopefully we have the support of all of us on Commissioners Court. Thank you.
Thank you. And obviously, I echo that. We're working to find a solution. We're just as appalled and ready to change this. So we're with you. We're working to fix it, and we'll get there. Any other speakers on this topic, Lucinda?
Not on this topic.
Okay.
Do you want me to continue with the items? All right, thank you. Amber Boyd, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Judge Hidalgo and Commissioners. I'm here to discuss line number 185, 212184 regarding the request to increase the penalty. I greatly oppose the request to increase the penalty, and I'm disappointed that an increased penalty is being considered when we know that it would greatly impact our working-class homeowners. My question to the court is, what is the incentive for increasing the penalty? Basically, we're penalizing working-class homeowners who are already scraping pennies to survive and keep their homes. Unfortunately, another concern I have is this increase will have astronomical impact on our minority communities, especially where the land value increases and gentrification rises. Instead of increasing the penalty, why about, what about looking into better ways to collect from the homeowner by allowing early payment plans? I think we should, we shouldn't be talking about increasing the penalties. We should be talking about the procurement process and the method Harris County obtains its collection vendors. This is a disservice to our homeowners, and we really need to look at that because that's how they're able to stay in their homes, if they're able to get on common sense payment plans. As an advocate and black female attorney, I'm concerned that the procurement process is not properly adhering to state standards, whereas there are many local law firms, like my firm, who can handle the collection process. And I apologize, I didn't mention I am a lawyer and I have a law firm. But who can, we can, there are firms like my firm who can handle the collection process for the county. However, local firms are not being, are not given an opportunity to do this. We have the same, we've had the same vendor for 30 years, and the best way to collect on delinquent taxes is to increase the penalty. I really do not agree with that. I proposed to Harris County to consider using local law firms, like my law firm, to handle the collections. Using the same vendor, we only get the same results. And I would love to, I would love to be on contract for 30 years without having to rebid. To follow up on the question I asked early regarding the incentive, well, growing up, I was taught that you should follow the money. And as I look at the current situation, the money is going to the vendor, and that's where the incentive lies. Thank you for your time, Commissioners and Judge Hidalgo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Boyd, go ahead, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. I speak to you today on behalf of my family, my deceased parents who worked hard to achieve the American dream of owning a home. I ask you to please do not allow an increase in the delinquency penalty fees on our property at 803 Grinchaw Street in Harris County. If the fees are allowed, you will put our family and other families with tax burdens in a bad situation. The only people benefiting from this over the years that I've seen is Lineberger, Blair, Grogan, Sampson. I mention their name because they're the ones that are always sending us something. Owners of the property in Harris County are not being represented properly, in my opinion. And finally, after Lineberger, Blair, Grogan, Sampson get your property, it lands in their property for sale site, which to me is nothing but a land grab and simple dipping into the vast land honeypot that we have in Harris County. And it also increases the expedited sales of our property. This gives them no incentive to be fair, serving as judge, jury, and executioner. I thank you, Harris County Commissioners, for allowing me to voice my grievances today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do want to clarify, this is not an increase in the fee. It's about as low as we can get it, but it's something we're continuing to work on. So I want to make sure folks are clear. It's very much not an increase. It's actually an attempt to lower it as much as we can at the current moment, and we'll keep working.
Elizabeth Martin, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Martin, and I'm a small business owner and have spoken out about item 185 in the past. As a WBE myself, I feel that the county has truly moved in the right direction with their new program. But I'd like to do this follow-through into the tax collection services. Last time I spoke out about the deprecable service that is being offered that creates a cycle of poverty for Harris County residents. And I urge you to research some of the illegal and immoral practices that our current collector has engaged in. I hope that you all took the time to do that and have a true understanding of how by not collecting taxes in a timely manner, they're creating a sinking ship for these individuals. And you, our elected officials, are culpable by not stopping it or at least addressing it. Looking at the procurement process, while it's time-consuming, it's going to help so many of your own constituents. How long has it been since we've had another company in place for the county? Where is the competition to do their jobs correctly? How many lawyers are employed by them? Why do we continually make rich men richer at the expense of our most noble? Sorry. Get some women, get some minorities, get some Harris County residents out there to bid on this contract and clean up the involving prices of delinquent taxes that we face in Harris County. The previous speaker, Amber Boyd, really triggered something with me. She said it best, to follow the money. As somebody that went through journalism school, you know, that's what we're taught. And maybe we need some journalists to come out here and follow the money. Where is all of the money going if it's not actually collecting our taxes? I appreciate your time today. I appreciate all that you guys do. But I really urge you to look at- really urge you to look at expanding this, to look at the procurement. There are so many companies out here that deserve a chance, and we cannot keep funneling our money into monopolies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kegel, did you need me to keep that speaker on the line?
No, I had a quick-
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We can, we can address it later, Judge, but I had a quick question on some of our contracts we have voted to bring in-house, some of the contracts we have voted to leave with our private contractors. I'm assuming this one is still with our private contractor? And that'd probably be a question for Menifee or for our attorney Menifee or for Jay.
Sure, Commissioner, yes, we're, we're not, we can certainly talk about details related to the contract if we go into executive session. But we're, we had been talking with our vendor, and our intention is to remain with the vendor for the time being under, under a modified arrangement. And, but we're happy to give you details on that item.
Well, I'll reserve my questions for later. I just wanted to hear, Mark, that there was discussion on this.
Sure.
Judge, if I might-
Yes, Commissioner Ellis.
And I might ask Mr. Berry, since there are so many people who have signed up on this matter. Obviously, in terms of, terms of the contract, we can talk about them in executive session. It'll be public at some point. But Commissioner Kegel, to answer your question, which I assume you know, state law in Texas is fairly unique. Probably in the eighties, a law was passed in Texas so that only if a governmental entity subcontracted its tax collection to a private firm, initially, I think if you could get up to a fifteen percent, they could add a fifteen percent penalty on. Back when I was on city council, then Mayor Kathy Whitmire read the law, was somewhat offended by it, and decided she'd split the fee. They were collecting the taxes in-house. I don't know what the split was, eighty, twenty, just guessing. And then the vendors went and changed the law, so a governmental entity couldn't split it anymore. So, the point I'm making is, it's a vendor bill. And I think this court went on record asking the legislature to change it. So, at least if you're going to have a high fee, a penalty to collect taxes, we could do it as well at the higher fee, because at least we'd spend the money on some governmental service. So, for thirty years, Harris County has subcontracted this out to the same firm. They are right, let me say that. The court, two and a half so years ago, decided to move toll road collections in-house. I think the fee over there was twenty percent, a penalty added on to it as well. So far, with the toll road doing its own collections, the number is up. I got it somewhere here in my, in my, in my notes, but I was trying to gobble a little food down, Judge. But it has worked fairly well to have moved it in-house. The law permits an additional twenty percent tacked on to the penalties that the governmental entity already gets. We get about twenty-two percent when somebody's late on their taxes. The law tacks on another twenty percent. Harris County got a bill put in, which had a hearing to cap that at fifteen percent statewide. We moved this, I think I made the motion, to reduce the fee to fifteen percent, fifteen percent additional penalty that the private firm gets for residents. We tried to make that statewide. If I had my druthers, and if you tell me you're going to give me a second, I'll move it down to ten percent when this item comes up today. But if that's not going to happen, the legal department and the budget office have done the best they could on negotiating an agreement. What a number of items they'll walk through, I won't say now, but they will be public. One item that's not included is MWBE goal. I'm going to make that motion. Look, I think it ought to be brought in-house. There are a lot of people who are going to lose their properties now. A lot of people are going to be late this year who never thought they'd be late. But at the end of the day, it is a vendor bill. And the folks who make money off other people's misery in this place, keep that law from being changed in Texas. But I just want to lay that out. But Mr. Berry, can you kind of walk us through, well, whatever we say in executive session, when this is voted on, it's going to be public anyway. But where are we now? Walk us through what it is, just in case my memory doesn't serve me correct. I think it's about a forty-three, forty-five percent of penalty added on when somebody is late. And the way the system works now, the vendor only makes money if you're late. So, what are we going to do to not incentivize them to let people be late? But if you would, Mr. Berry, or Mr. Ayer, walk us through that. That we're going to have to do in public at some point, anyway. We just as well do it now, since so many people have signed up. Judge, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Commissioner. And I'm, I hate being kind of not super clear about this. My concern is that we're in negotiations, but everybody knows the problematic aspects of this contract. We just have to be, in order to get to where we need to get, we need to make sure to continue the negotiations. So, that's why I'm being sort of broad in my comments. So, maybe Dave, yeah, you can guide us in informing folks. You and Jay know best what can be shared for now, so that, you know, we in our comments don't accidentally create a problem.
Jay, do you want to walk through a few of the headline terms you've been working on, or would you like me to?
Well, yeah, I'll walk through a couple of them. And I want, again, I want to be general on it. Well, for two reasons. One, the item that we have before us is really about setting the rate. It's not about any contract terms. But since they are, there is a connect, they are connected in as much as I can do it, because the rate does not tell the whole story as to what, what we're, what we're talking about doing. So, the biggest issue with, as Commissioner Ellis laid out, was that the, is that the way the structure is right now, when third parties collect taxes, they are able to assess a fifteen, excuse me, up to twenty percent fee, penalty fee for the delinquent tax collection. That only, that applies the moment the, those delinquent properties are turned over, whether that's pre-litigation, post-litigation, those fees are fixed. So, the moment that goes over, that's roughly about ninety-five, about five percent of the total of the tax roll, I think, is what, what ends up going over. It may actually be a little bit less than that. That is an option that currently does not exist, as Commissioner Ellis pointed out, in the public sector. So, by and large, we, that is a rate that we would not be able to charge. What we're, what we are recommending, and we can go into detail about this, is sort of twofold. One is, we want to continue on creating a maximum penalty that could be charged of fifteen percent under chapter thirty-three. So, that the cap would be thirty-three, would be fifteen percent. But in, in exchange for that, the vendor has agreed to provide and is essentially sort of partnering with us to create a fund that would be managed by a nonprofit that would be able to go towards distressed homeowners. And I think Dave can walk through some of the financials. Commissioner Ellis, your point on MWBE is taken, and that we certainly intend to continue with that. It was actually in the previous contract. It was just never enforced. We intend to kind of continue on with that conversation and make sure we do get that. In large part, in the past, we did not have a policy. We now have one, so we're going to continue with that. But I can go into some more specific details on the terms we're still negotiating. But the, the general view is that the, the effective rate of fifteen percent will continue because of the additional contribution that the vendor is willing to make to help distressed homeowners. We think it's a real asset. I think Dave can talk to a little bit about what he thinks sort of the county can do.
Jay, if I might, and I'm willing to wait until executive session, I know what the terms are.
Yes, sir.
I think I've made my position clear. Don't mind saying it publicly. We'll say it even after executive session. I don't want to blow it up. And I was prepared to let the agreement go forward, that I wasn't, I didn't feel that good about it. But then I was told they wouldn't do the MWBE goal. And I'm not going to make an exception here. I'm not, maybe the court will, but I'm not. Particularly, when somebody's had a contract for thirty years. But my preference would be to take it in-house, as we did for those of us who can afford to get toll tax. And we'll walk through it in executive session and then again publicly. But the firm would be wise to take that thirty percent goal. In my judgment, we ought to do it. Don't, don't try to tell me you're an MWBE firm. You're not certified with the city. I know that. You're not certified with the state. I know that. You're not certified with Bear County. I'm, you're not you, the firm. I'm telling them. So, we don't have to do this here. But take it and get on down the road. It's still a good deal. If I had my druthers, even when we say fifteen percent, that's above, if I'm correct, the twenty-one percent, is that right? The governmental entities get anyway. And under the current contract, it's about, I guess if you late June sixteenth, is that when it kicks in, Jay or Dave, to about forty-five percent? Am I right? Or is it the end of the year? So, if you're a thousand dollars, by the end of the year, it's a thousand four hundred fifty. And then it keeps going up.
Right.
If, I'm just trying to do it from memory without reading my notes. But, so with that said, I'll let the other folks talk. But they'd be wise to take that MWBE goal. I mean, I know who's losing the houses. They look like me. I got the numbers. So, they'd be wise to take that MWBE goal and get on down the road.
Dave, did you have anything to add before we continue with the speakers?
Just one minor point of clarification of what Jay said. For real property, fifteen percent is the number that we've been at. It was previously at twenty. So, it reduced, was reduced last year.
I think that was Ellis' motion, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's correct.
I just didn't want to get an impression that somebody was volunteering to give up five percent.
The penalty for personal property has previously been at twenty percent. And part of the recommendation in front of court today is to reduce that to fifteen percent. And in addition, there would be a meaningful contribution from our vendor to a relief fund we could target on the most vulnerable taxpayers. And I think the county could also consider contributing. So-
And I hope, Dave, the county will match what the firm is putting up. And by the way, it is, the match would be helping to reduce the additional penalty that's going to the private firm, instead of us financing that off the backs of people who are in unfortunate position, most of in precinct one and two, by a substantial increase over. There was fourteen thousand four hundred and eighteen accounts in precinct one, eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight precinct two, forty-nine hundred in precinct three, and fifty-five hundred in precinct four.
And then an added portion is, of course, we're going to continue to work. It's not a perfect solution. I don't think it is, but it's better. It's obviously better than what we had last year, better than we've had for thirty years. And that doesn't mean we're not going to continue to work with the tax office, members of court, Lineberger, and whomever else to try and improve it further. But it's, you can only imagine something that's been in place for so long that is almost enshrined in law is incredibly difficult to reform.
Judge, I just wanted to give the speakers, since they sign up, a taste. And we'll get to talk about it if it's not worked out in the executive session. But I mean, it wouldn't happen here from those speakers.
Well, that's fair. Okay. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Yes, ma'am. Abel Garcia, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Let me set my clock for three minutes. First of all, I am Abel Garcia. I'm the Executive Director of NAMAC, the National Association of Minority Contractors here in the greater Houston area. I came to Houston in nineteen sixty-seven, when Commissioner Garcia was six years old, going on seven, when Commissioner Ellis was thirteen years old. And so, I got to tell you that I'm impressed, especially I'm touched, Commissioner Ellis, with your humble beginning with your mom and dad, their jobs that they had. Honest and hard-working. The same thing for Commissioner Garcia. Judge was still twenty-five years down the road. So, my point is this-
I was hoping you wouldn't go for me.
She was twenty-five years old. She was twenty-five years old. She was paid back reincarnated.
You were in the, you were in the future, Judge. So, my question is this, because I came here as a poor person, and I grew up like you did, Commissioner Ellis and Garcia, you know. And so, what, what is the discussion about? We're going to discuss it. We're going to, we're going to posture it. You know, this particular firm, which I have trouble pronouncing, right? I've written it down sometimes, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, Bogger, Gogan, Blair, and Salmon. There's not a Garcia, there's not a Martinez, there's not Gutierrez, there's not a Williams, there's nothing in that. And I went to do some research for us. There's twenty-four thousand attorneys, plus twenty-four thousand attorneys in Harris County, of which there's forty-eight hundred-plus minority attorneys. I did search work. I had an executive search for them. It doesn't take long to find those people. I would say fire Lineberger. They've been here too long. They have fifty, five zero, fifty offices throughout the United States. Do you think that they feel the pain that we feel here in Houston, Texas? I have some rental properties, by the way. So, last time I wasn't prepared. I'm prepared this time. I have some rental properties in the, in the wonderful communities of Fifth Ward, Kashmir Gardens. A thousand-square-foot houses that I bought back in two thousand seven, I remodeled them, and I did, that was in the restaurant business. I put island kitchens and so forth, and I rented their property to Section Eight folks. I've had from the first time, I have a fourteen-year rentor in one of those thousand-square-foot houses, that I have not raised a rent in ten years. However, the county continues to raise taxes. That one thousand-square-foot house in Kashmir Gardens, the taxes are the same as the three thousand-plus house that I have here in Spring, Texas. It makes no sense whatsoever. How can I possibly, if I live there? Commissioner Garcia, where you grew up in the north side, there were, there were a lot of neighbors, I'm sure, that can no longer afford to live there. Our city's been gentrified. That's fine. We continue to get more taxes. So, I live within a budget. You guys live within a budget. Why do we have to increase, continue to increase taxes? Let me throw something that's, you know, totally unusual. But I got my tax bill and I said, I'm going to take a twenty-five percent reduction on that that you just sent me. It's fifty percent. Why can't I not take twenty-five percent? And so, I'm going to fight the twenty-five percent. I deserve twenty-five percent, right? And so, we need to begin to take bold actions, not conversations, bold actions. Let's do some things that make it. I thank you for your time, and I want you to go ahead and move forward and do some bold things. Represent our community better, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Abel. Good to hear your voice.
Commissioner Kegel.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Garcia, you are showing all the love to my Democrat colleagues over here, but I'm the one that put myself through college as a woodbutcher.
Well, congratulations, sir. I live probably in your district in Spring, Texas.
Delighted to serve you.
And I want you to continue to dig those channels so my house doesn't flood next to Cypress Creek, please. Thank you.
Michael Brown, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Judge Hidalgo. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm a small business owner, black-owned business. I'm echoing the thoughts of the previous callers on item number one eighty-five. And also, Commissioner Ellis, my concern is really the MWBE goal. You know, there shouldn't be a discussion at this point. This contract has been held by Lineberger for the thirty years. You know, for the same vendor to have the contract for the thirty years sounds like a monopoly. It doesn't sound like property procurement has been filed. And with that, the MWBE goal, Lineberger has, you know, had an MWBE goal on the City of Houston contracts. And when I reviewed those, it seemed like they didn't have too much of an issue meeting those goals. I think one of the goals is that I stand in the City of Houston. And so, I'm struggling to understand why that is not, you know, of the contract. I understand the enforcement part of it, but, you know, to me, that's a non-negotiable. In that regard, I would recommend that the Office of Economic Equity and Opportunity kind of take a look at this contract and see where the opportunities are. In addition to MWBE goal, maybe you look at breaking this contract out and to force up the contracts by quadrants of the city, or signing it by zip codes, something other than having this one contractor, the nationwide contract that I've been told of this contract, and have, you know, input on how the contract is written. Because I think that's what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Carano with the Carano Law Firm, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, members, Commissioners-
Good afternoon, uh, members, commissioners and Judge Adago. My name is Jake Karana. I'm a local attorney in Houston, Texas. I, I think there's a misconception that penalizing people would make them compliant. This isn't a situation where it's a parking ticket or a moving violation where you're trying to deter behavior. Individuals would pay their taxes. They would want to pay their mortgages if they had the money to do so. More importantly, you know, the type of population that's being targeted by this, we all know a predominantly minority base because they are behind on their payments, on their taxes. And adding these penalties, which as we all know, whether it's fifteen percent or twenty percent, ends up with the, all the fees and taxes and everything else and interest that added on to between forty to forty-five percent in a twelve-month period. And homeowners basically have no incentive to pay it off and do anything because they're so behind the eight ball on that. With respect to the fact that there's only one firm handling this, I think as Judge Adago pointed out a couple of minutes ago, when this relationship's been on for thirty years, it seems that it is enshrined into law and change is hard. But that's exactly why the change is necessary. There, there is no case law or statutory law that requires you all to have one relationship with one vendor and continue to renew it for thirty years without ever soliciting it again or getting a new bid or anything else on there. There are plenty of law firms, plenty of other businesses that would want to be involved. And what might work would be instead of having this one vendor, having multiple vendors and giving out contracts or, you know, work to all these vendors to see who brings out the best results. Currently with the current vendor, it's about six months before they'll even negotiate with the homeowners on a payment plan. How is that in the benefit of anybody other than the vendor and the fact that the taxes and the interest and the penalties continue to accrue during that period? And in fact, there's only one vendor doing it. They have no incentive to work anything out either because it's in their benefit to allow for those penalties and those taxes and interest to continue accruing. Yeah, I think this goes even beyond the commissioner's court. We have a situation here where it really does need to be solicited again. And new thoughts and new ideas, including N W E participation, needs to be looked at, needs to be examined and needs to be considered. So we do break this thirty-year, you know, enshrined law, which is not even a law in itself, that it appears to be because of the fact that change never happens. Appreciate it, thank you.
Judge.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Carl, you, you make a valid point. I just want to stress the first one that you made, the notion that by increasing penalties on somebody will make them comply. Uh, that is not the case and it, it really is an awful state law. Uh, back when I got started in politics and found out about it, I think my comment was it was the sleaziest form of port barrel legislation I'd ever seen. Uh, the county decided in twenty nineteen to move toll road violation fees, collection of them in-house, instead of using a private firm, the same firm. And that change has led to a twelve percent increase in the resolution of violations. And the city attorney's office in-house collections reduced toll road violation fees by forty-five percent, increased transparency, modified payment plans and improved customer service for toll road violations. So it can be done. Now, we were told the sky would fall, but the court voted to do that and moved it in-house. And it, it made me sort of look at this part a bit closer, uh, when it came up. Now, I know you and some of the speakers obviously take the position, well, if you are going to have it outhouse, we'd like to get in on the game too. I get that. And competition probably is a good thing. Maybe, maybe we could have various firms competing for fees. Whoever signed this contract twenty, thirty years ago, whenever it was, with some kind of proprietary agreement on the software ought to be investigated because you essentially created a monopoly there. And at some point, we got to break it and it's going to cost money to do that. But, uh, I appreciate you, you chiming in. I want to make sure it's clear. My preference would be to bring it in-house. But I get it. If it is going to be done by a private firm, I wanted to comply with our M W B E guidelines for a long time. This commission's court claimed to have a better record for minority and women's participation than the city of Houston. But I haven't heard a word about that since we did a disparity study and the numbers are transparent now. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Hemphill with C K H Legal. Go ahead, please.
Hi, to the members and commissioners and Judge Adago, thank you for your time. Uh, and speaking on, uh, item number one eighty-five, I don't want to kind of be legal with a point. What I want to say is, you know, economics just teaches us that, I mean, competition, you know, as Commissioner Ellis just mentioned, that's probably going to be the most efficient way to get things done. And so, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I think what most people are missing on this point is I'm not here to, to down, you know, the current vendor. Look, you know, they've got, they're in place and they've got the ability and they've made, you know, a, a contract, be it that it's thirty years, but they're in place. But, you know, I do believe that, I mean, there needs to be some competition because that's going to help the county. It's going to help, you know, the residents. It's going to help everyone else to where we're going to be able to see something that's more efficient. And so, you know, I would think being able to have, you know, diverse law firms and M W B E goals in place, while it's not just all about having minorities, it is about having competition and qualified firms to be able to do the work. So, you know, I do think that that's something that you all should look at. I think you just got to look at it. And if it's going to go in out, then there's still probably room, you know, where others may be able to even assist the county. But if it's going to stay in private hands, now, I just think that from an economic standpoint and efficiency, which is fairly straightforward, that the commissioners should, you know, get in my executive session and think about how we can do this better and how everyone can be serviced better in this process. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Boyd, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, my name is Allison Boyd. Uh, yes, I just wanted to stress the fact that, okay, if you're paying your taxes like I was, I was paying them a certain amount every month and then all of a sudden they jumped up to almost five hundred dollars a month. I tried to negotiate with them to get them down because I couldn't afford that. And then Harvey hit down the pandemic and I, you know, I don't think we should be punished because I just feel like we're being punished because all of a sudden, if you can't pay them, they want to take your property. So I, I'm just, just flabbergasted because now it's like, what are people to do? If, if, if you cannot afford it, they just foreclose on your property. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair. I think they should come up with some type of way, you know, to at least people that are trying to pay theirs like I am, who are really, really trying to get their paid, but every time it's something different and like now, it's like they are making it unaffordable for you to even try to pay it. And I just want to thank you guys for letting me come on and stress that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Judge, those were all the speakers on agenda-related items.
Thank you. Yeah, this is, it's just such a fascinating, um, not fascinating, but cha-challenging topic. And I really appreciate everybody, uh, everybody speaking. And I just want to make sure folks know we're, we're working hard at, at, uh, getting a better situation for, for the community. So we'll keep, particularly during a pandemic, you know, is this compounding to forty percent is, is just untenable. So we're doing everything we can. We're going to keep doing that. Um, let's take the non-agenda related speakers.
Yes, ma'am. Just a moment. Uh, we're trying to get them on the line right now. Thank you. Darlene King, go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, thank you for giving me a call this afternoon. I am, uh, not compensated for the remainder of my property after the reduction, uh, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet. It's fourteen thousand some odd square feet that I have not been compensated for. I've been in communication with Mr. Strickland and Miss Shannon, Shannon Watson, I believe, and this matter is not resolved. I'm thinking maybe, uh, a meeting would be in order with Mr., um, McAfee, Maniffee? Is that possible? Hello?
Ma'am, we'll make sure and follow up from our legal department and make sure and put you in touch with the right, with the right office.
Okay, will I get that follow-up today or tomorrow or this week? Hello?
Yes, y-you should be able to hear back from us soon. If I, can I have the county attorney commit to reach out to Ms. King?
Uh, yes, Judge, we'll, we'll do that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Bye-bye.
Our Michael Lee, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Dear Commissioners, County Judge, I am a senior citizen. Two weeks ago, I presented Curse Cosmasi Inc. invoices for twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars to Commissioner's Court for reimbursement. This was for engineering services to correct defects in flood controls drainage on Ardmore Street. Flood Control used Curse Cosmasi design to correct errors in their design and provide a more efficient design that provided for a construction change order that embellished the county fifty-four thousand dollars. Flood Control never sought the permission from Curse Cosmasi to use their design, which is a violation of state licensing ethics. I, this issue has been going on for two years. I requested a meeting with our representative from Commissioner's Court, Flood Control and the county attorney to resolve this issue timely. I made another open records request and find Flood Control still doesn't have a policy on a citizen to appeal a design decision made by Flood Control. I addressed this issue over six months ago in Commissioner's Court. Still no policy to protect citizens from Flood Control's arbitrary decision. This policy should include an independent review board. This policy will protect others for Flood Control's abuse where they can extort thirty thousand dollars from a citizen to correct defects in their engineering design.
Thank you.
I wait your feedback.
Alan De Leon with Move Texas. I'm sorry, Judge.
Oh, no, I was just telling Mr. Lee we'll make sure someone circles back with him. Thank you so much.
Sorry. Alan De Leon with Move Texas. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Alan De Leon. I'm the Houston Avex, the organizer of Move Texas. Um, testifying today over a very important issue that has long been neglected in Harris County and it is the voting rights of our jailed population. With the Biden administration's nomination of Sheriff Ed Gonzalez to become the next head of ICE, we understand that it will be this court's responsibility to appoint a successor. Majority of those in our carceral system maintain a right to vote but are disenfranchised. The Supreme Court of the United States has ruled that pre-trial detainees have a right to vote. And in Texas, you do not lose your right to vote if you're convicted of a misdemeanor. This constitutes well over seventy-five percent of our Harris County inmates, as you know. Yet their ability to cast a ballot is severely limited due to a lack of access, effectively disenfranchising them. We need a sheriff who will champion not just pending criminal legal reforms, but also expand voting rights. A sheriff who will open the doors to the county's carceral facilities to officers like the election administrators to establish jail-based polling locations, execute voter registration plans and provide civic educational opportunities, all of which would allow justice-involved residents to fully participate in our elections. This is a matter that I wanted to bring to your attention and hopefully we can move forward with this and, uh, once and for all in Harris County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, I'm going to unmute the interpreter first.
Okay.
Interpreter, you're unmuted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy Osorio with Texas Organizing Project. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Bueno, señora Osorio, entonces seguiré adelante. Dígame. Adelante, señora. Quiere que vuelva a redactar lo que le dije? Por favor. Un momento que tengo mi hoja en mi. This is a little bit confusing. She's, she's getting her things ready. Un momento, un momento, ya. One moment, please. Uh. Estoy lista. Okay, estoy lista. Hola, mi nombre es Daisy Osorio y soy miembro de TOP. Hello, my name is Daisy Osorio and I am a member of TOP. La semana pasada escuchamos de la noticia que el alguacil es Gonzales tomará un cargo a nivel federal y por lo tanto el cargo del alguacil del condado Harris quedará completamente vacante. Last week, we found out through the news that Sheriff Ed Gonzalez will now be taking a federal role, meaning that the Harris County role for sheriff will be completely vacant. El día de hoy, el día de hoy yo estoy aquí para pedirles que nos permitan a nosotros, a los miembros de la comunidad, tomar la decisión de quién debe presentarnos. Today, we are here to ask that you allow the members of the community to select who we would choose to represent us. Como una madre afectada por el sistema criminal que abusa y hace profitó de las familias latinas, les digo que es hora de reimaginar la seguridad pública. As the mother who has been affected by the criminal system, a system of youth impoverishing from, impoverishing from Latino families, we think it is time to reimagine the public safety. Necesitamos un alguacil que trabaje con nosotros y apoye políticas que puedan proteger a las personas más vulnerables que son los, eh, que son criminalizadas injustamente. We ask to have a sheriff who will work with us and support us and protect us. Someone who will fight for those who are most vulnerable and unjustly being victimized. La violencia policial es una de las principales causas de muerte de los jóvenes de color en Estados Unidos. Police violence is the leading cause of death for young adults of colored families. Especialmente los no, los hombres negros. Especially black men. El tiempo de, de duelo continuo y las promesas vagas de forma han terminado. It is time for a change. It's time for empty promises to stop. Necesitamos redención de cuentas y acción inmediata. We need them to show accountability and immediate action. Los líderes encargados de hacer cumplir la ley deben estar comprometidos con una visión integral de la seguridad de la comunidad. Our law officials who are in their role must have a contribution of the community. Donde el tamaño, en el alcance y el papel de sus departamentos se reducen en el apoyo a las inversiones en áreas como vivienda, educación, salud mental y atención médica. Where their size, the reach and their role should be used to support the community, education and mental health in our mental system. They should make it a priority. Especialmente en la comunidad negra y latina. Especially our black and brown communities. Aumenta significativamente. It increases significantly. Necesitamos que nuestra comunidad tenga los recursos necesarios para salir adelante y necesitamos a un alguacil que sea transparente y solidario con nuestra gente. We need our commitment to have the resources in order to move forward. We need a sheriff who is transparent and committed to our people. Nuestra voz cuenta con nosotros. Debemos decidir quién debe ser nuestro alguacil. Our voice should be heard. We have to choose where our voice should be. Es todo. Gracias por darme la oportunidad y compartir esto con ustedes. Gracias. That's everything. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all. Gracias. Gracias.
Interpreter, please stay on the line.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Miriam Guerra with Texas Organizing Project. Go ahead, please.
Adelante, señora Miriam. Sí, pues yo estoy también representando a la organización TOP. Y estoy aquí queriendo también que nuestro presente alguacil que se presenta por la, la situación de de los inmigrantes.
Permítame, ya sabemos. Permítame, señora. Yes, I'm also here to represent the organization TOP and to speak about the representative for the sheriff. Adelante.
Adelante. Y es más que nada eso porque sí, este, es muy importante que tener una, una seguridad para nosotros aquí en Texas. And more than anything because it's very important to have some type of security here in Texas? Y eso es todo. And that's all. Gracias. Gracias. Thank you.
Interpreter, please stay on the line.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Berenice Hernández with Texas Organizing Project, go ahead please.
Okay. Yo soy Berenice Hernández, soy del miembro de la organización TOP. El día de hoy quiero hablar de la importancia en que la comunidad somos, nosotros tenemos voz y voto en tocar en un...
Permítame, señora Hernández. Yes, my name is Berenice Hernández, and I'm with organization TOP. Today, we are here to speak about the importance of our community and our voices being heard. Adelante.
Y que pues, yo también puedo, pues apoyar a todo porque como ahorita mucha gente que está trabajando y sin, sin tener un buen, una buena importancia en la familia, tenemos que estar todos juntos.
Permítame. Yes, well, I'm also here to support, like, uh, everything because there are people who are working without any good, um, without any good importance uh, in the family staying together. Adelante.
Eso es todo. Muchas gracias y pues gracias por apoyar y por estar siempre aquí con nosotros. Les agradecemos mucho.
That's all. Well, thank you very much. I'd just like to thank you for your support. Thank you for your support being here with us. Um, and thank you very much. Gracias, señora.
Interpreter, please stay on the line.
Yes ma'am.
Josefina Zúñiga with Texas Organizing Project, go ahead please.
Adelante, señora Josefina.
¿Se escucha?
Si, se escucha. Adelante.
Ah, ¿quiere que le repita lo que le repetí hace ratito?
Por favor.
Hola, mi nombre es Josefina Zúñiga. Soy miembro de la organización TOP.
Hello, my name is Josefina Zúñiga. I'm a member of the organization TOP.
Yo estoy aquí, aquí el día de hoy para apoyar todo lo que mis compañeros han compartido.
I am here to today supporting everything that my colleagues have shared.
El día de hoy todos estamos preocupados porque ahora que el alguacil González deja su puesto.
Today, we are very worried, uh, due to the position, um, due to the reason that Sheriff Gonzalez will be leaving his position. Adelante.
No sabemos quién ocupará su lugar, y para mí y mi comunidad inmigrante esto es causa de temor.
We don't know who will be taking his new position. For me and my community, my migrant community, this is a cause of fear.
Ya que en años pasados hemos visto mucha participación de la policía local con la, con la migra, muchos de los arrestos por violaciones de tráfico terminan en detención.
Due to the past years, we have seen a lot of participation by our local police cooperating with immigration, causing for a lot of, like, traffic violations to end up in detention or arrest.
Y deportación. Por eso nosotros, el condado de Harris, tenemos el número más alto en separación de familias.
Including deportation. That is why us in Harris County have the number one highest, we have the highest rate in separations from families.
Nosotros queremos que el nuevo alguacil sea elegido por nuestra comunidad.
We would like the new sheriff to be elected by our community.
Porque necesitamos que sea una persona que nos apoye y ayude a proteger a nuestras familias.
Because we need to be somebody who will support us and help our families.
No queremos que nuestras familias corran peligro y que nuestra gente siga siendo atacada.
We don't want people to run risk and our people to continue being attacked.
Por leyes anti-immigrantes que nos crim- criminalizan y hacen profitó por detenernos encerrados en las cárceles.
By anti-immigration laws that criminalize us and profit from holding us in jail.
Necesitamos un líder que nos ayude a crear programas comunitarios para que todas las personas tengan la oportunidad.
We need a leader who will help us build the community programs so that everyone has the opportunity.
De salir adelante y, eh, enderezar sus caminos. Todos tenemos derecho de segunda oportunidad.
To move forward, have a good life, and everyone has the opportunity to have a second chance.
No queremos a un alguacil que se goce de sufrimiento de los demás y que lidere con odio y racismo.
We don't want a sheriff who enjoys the suffering of others and leads with hate or racism.
Queremos líderes que sirvan con amor y compasión para todos, sin importar nacionalidad, raza, color, o estatus migratorio.
We want a leader who leads with love and compassion, no matter the race, nationality, color, or immigration status.
Todos somos seres humanos, humanos, y merecemos ser tratados con respeto y dignidad.
We are all human beings. We deserve to be treated with respect and dignity.
Y sería todo. Muchas gracias por darme la oportunidad de poder hacer llegar mi voz a ustedes.
Thank you very much. That should be all. I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak my voice. Gracias.
The next speaker, Judge, has requested an interpreter as well. Carmen Ivone, Texas Organizing Project.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carmen Ivone y pertenezco a la organización Texas Organizing Project, y estoy de la Mesa Directiva.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Carmen Ivone. I am part of the Texas Organization Project, and I am part of the Board of Directors.
Estoy aquí para apoyar a todos mis compañeros.
I'm here to support all of my colleagues.
Para pedir una asignación especial que se elija a un, a un sheriff que vaya de acuerdo a los valores de nuestra comunidad.
To request a special assignment for a sheriff who goes in accordance to the values of our community.
Queremos una persona que sea digna de representarnos y tenga los valores para no discriminizar a las personas especialmente latinas y de color.
Want someone who is, someone who is dignified to represent us, someone whose values represent us, who is not against people of color.
No soy feminista, pero me gustaría mirar igual que nuestros campeones que hemos puesto por parte de la organización TOP en el poder para que nos ayuden a mejorar nuestras comunidades, y quisiera que apuntaran, si es que se llega a apuntar por medio de la comunidad, a una persona del sexo femenino.
I am not a feminist, but just like our champions that we've, uh, previously assigned to positions of power by the organization of TOP, we would like somebody in our community who is, uh, if possible, to be, uh, of the feminine race. I'm sorry, of the feminine sex.
Ah, es, sería una persona que ayudaría a nuestra comunidad como mujer, sabe los valores que realmente tenemos dentro de la comunidad, y si es de color, mucho que mejor.
Uh, it should be a person who is a woman of the community, who has our same values. Um, if possible, it would even better if it was a woman of color.
Y queremos que la gente también, que pueda votar dentro de la cárcel, que lo haga, como lo ha hecho el alguacil Ed González, que desafortunadamente se va. Queremos que sigan trabajando con nosotros, como lo ha hecho hasta ahorita el alguacil Ed González.
Uh, we want, we would like the people to vote, the people who are in jail who are able to vote. We would appreciate if they were able to vote, just like they did with Sheriff Ed Gonzalez. Uh, we would really appreciate who, unfortunately, he's leaving. We would like somebody who is with his same values.
Muchísimas gracias por, ah, escucharme. Es todo por el día de hoy. Seguiré en contacto con ustedes, y viva la comunidad inmigrante.
Thank you very much for hearing me out today. I appreciate your time, and, uh, long live the migrant community.
Interpreter, please stay on the line. Marina Sanchez with Texas Organizing Project.
Sí.
Adelante, señora Marina.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marina Sanchez. Y soy miembro de la organización TOP.
Permítame. Hello, my name is, uh, Marina Sanchez, and I am a member of the organization TOP.
El día de hoy quería destacar la preocupación que existe en nuestra comunidad inmigrante.
Today, I would like to share with you the worrisome or, or worry that we have in the migrant community.
Debido que el alguacil Ed González deja su puesto vacante y hay mucho miedo por no saber quién ocupará su lugar.
Due to the fact that we fear that our sheriff, Ed Gonzalez, will be leaving his position, leaving it vacant, and we do not know who will be taking his place.
El condado Harris es el condado número uno en deportaciones debido a la colaboración que existe entre la policía local y la migra.
Sheriff's County is ranked number one in deportation due to its collaboration from local police to immigration.
Por eso nosotros, la comunidad, debemos tener el derecho a elegir quién debe ser el siguiente alguacil de nuestro condado porque necesitamos a un líder que proteja a nuestras familias.
That is why our community would like to have the right to be able to elect who is our next sheriff, someone who is inbound with our, with our community, because we need a leader who will be able to protect our families.
Y que esté de nuestro lado y no en contra de nosotros.
Someone who's not against us.
La oficina del sheriff del condado de Harris debe priorizar las necesidades locales y esforzarse por limitar su participación en los programas y prácticas de emigración federales.
The Harris County Sheriff's Office should prioritize, prioritize local needs and limited participation with programs or practices by federal immigration laws.
En la mayor medida permitida por las leyes estatales y federales, aunque cumplir con solicitud válida de, de detención federales es un, es un mandato de la SB 4 en Texas.
As most is allowed because completing even federal detention applications, I get the mandate of the law of SB 4, which is a mandate from, it's a Texas mandate, my apologies.
El próximo alguacil del condado de Harris puede tomar una postura vocal contra la colaboración de las autoridades federales de inmigración y optar por no participar más en los programas que faciliten la aplicación de ley de inmigración y la representación de la migra dentro de instalaciones de las cárceles.
Permítame. The next sheriff could take a vo- could take a vocal position against collaborating with immigration laws, with the immigration programs, and opt out of participating with laws that allow presence of the immigration programs to be imprisoned.
El alguacil también debe terminar todos los contratos y acuerdos existentes formales o informales con la migra.
The sheriff should end all contracts and agreements existing and non-existing, formal or informal, with the immigration.
El próximo alguacil debe comprometerse a priorizar la seguridad de la comunidad y generar confianza con las comunidades inmigrantes y sus defensores, y ayudar a curar con las deportaciones y separaciones de familias por dando los lazos con las agencias federales de inmigración.
Permítame. The next sheriff should commit to prioritizing safety of the community and generate trust in the migrant community instead, and their defense to stop with the deportation and separation of families, cutting ties with federal immigration department.
A mi esposo casi lo deportan, pero gracias a Dios pudo regresar a casa con nosotros, pero aún hay muchas personas en la cárcel que están injustamente detenidas.
My husband was almost deported. Thank God he was able to come back home to us. However, there are still a lot of people who are in jail being unjustly detained.
Porque tienen detenciones migratorias y eso les impide regresar con sus familias, por eso es de suma importancia que nosotros, la comunidad, debamos ser parte del proceso en escoger el nuevo alguacil del condado de Harris.
Permítame. Simply because they have a migrant hold, that prevents them from coming back home to their families. This is, this is why it is imperative that we, as a community, are taking part of electing the next sheriff of the Harris County.
Muchas gracias por darme la oportunidad de compartir esto el día de hoy. Que tengan muy buenas tardes y que escojan un buen alguacil.
Thank you very much for allowing me to share my, my thoughts with you today. Have a good afternoon, and hopefully you will elect a good sheriff for Harris County. Gracias.
Are there all the Spanish speakers?
Thank you to the interpreter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristin Caballero with Texas Appleseed, go ahead please.
Hi, this is Kristin Caballero with Texas Appleseed, also a member of the Right to Justice Coalition in Houston. Uh, we echo the sentiments of other social justice advocates in urging you all to appoint a new sheriff that is committed to policies and principles that make Harris County healthier, fair, and more equitable, especially including but not limited to more transparency, community engagement, diversion programs, and racial justice. This is a critical moment to move Harris County towards more transformative change, so we ask that you all set an example for the future of Harris County. For more detailed recommendations, um, please refer to the letter that the Right to Justice Coalition sent you all last week on May 3rd. And of course, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me directly at Texas Appleseed. Um, appreciate your time, and we definitely look forward to more transparent, inclusive process for selecting the new sheriff. And once again, we urge you to appoint someone that will fairly represent and be committed to, um, improving, improving Harris County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jacob Clementek with Pro-Life, go ahead please.
Well, as you know, I am pro-life because, uh, this, uh, Saturday, May 19th, they had the Holy Road Church on, uh, precinct one, Commissioner Ronnie Alziz. This took, uh, precinct, the respect, life recital with this man, he playing the violin, and Christian, uh, from U of H, uh, playing the, uh, piano, and then then it raised funds for the Dominican fires and the Holy Road Church and the parory, and also the Loving Choice Pregnancy Health Center, which is located, I believe, well, it's on Kirkendall, but I believe that's in precinct four, Commissioner Jack Haggles precinct, and then it, uh, I have a, um, a, uh, a, a, a thing that tells about the pride and a little spiel on the talk about Massimo Madonia, who also is the Houston Independent School District Buddy, uh, Orchestra Programs, and, um, well, um, Chris Bingu, and how she, uh, was studied at U of H, and, uh, also a little bit of talk about the Loving Choice Pregnancy Health Center. What I also wanted to get into is that, um... What I also wanted to get into is that, um, Bishop, I mean, Cardinal Donato on the letters issue of the Texas Castle Health gave a little talk about, uh, that a statewide night of Columbus meeting and how they are, uh, one of the things he said they did was charity and being useful to the community, being for the disabled and for pro-life activities and also helping out by constructing workshops for those people in need, uh, to get ease, uh, them going out, um, from the street level into their home. Um, you know, that needs to be done. And also, well, I am a Knight of Columbus, uh, and so I'm a third degree and that believes, we believe in patriotism and while I am going to have the honor of, uh, being in this same, uh, River Oaks Country Club, uh, party gala get-together, uh, at, um, uh, this Thursday evening where, uh, Sheriff, I mean, Commissioner Andrew Garcia is going to be there and, uh, I'm sure he will represent Harris County quite well. And, um, I'm going there because I, well, I have some, this book called T-Tomb, which was outwrought by the writer of the book and it's a story of how the St. Peter's, uh, um, tune was fun. Well, Tom from Aggie joke and the Aggie joke is this, um, Tom Ramsey.
I'm afraid you're out of time, but thank you.
Okay, I wish I could tell an Aggie joke.
Next time.
Judge, those are all the speakers for today.
Okay, great. So, um, let's go through the, what, what will be the discussion agenda and then we can take a break for lunch, uh, if folks would like. Let me go over the, the items that need minor changes. Item 10 on page two is no action. That's about the county transportation plan. Item 20 on page four, no action, intersection improvements. Same with item 36 on page six, conveying an easement for Woodridge Village, no action this time on the, on those three items. On page 18, item 144, we need to change eight to seven. So it should be seven tracks instead of eight tracks of eminent domain. Item 162 on page 20, I know folks are putting the finishing touches on this, so no action for this time on the juror participation plan. Expect we'll have something next time. Item 167 on page 20 is, there's a correction there. So the amount needs to be $1,992,801. That would be the correct amount. So it's, it's a little bit less than what it said, uh, on the agenda.
And your honor?
Yes.
On that item, I had previously wanted to discuss it, but my questions have been answered now and so that could go back to the consent agenda.
Got it. Thank you. Make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, page 34, item 277, there's a correction there where we need to add at the end the following sentence. "The goal of the additional effort associated with the Buffalo Bayou and Trivitary's resiliency study is to identify flood risk reduction alternatives that the community will support, which will also provide ancillary positive impacts on local and regional mobility." Those are the, the changes. I don't have anything flagged for executive session except for I did, I did hear Jay mention we ought to go to executive session on item 185, the, uh, the tax collection fees. So let's plan on going to executive session. Yes, Commissioner Ellis.
And Judge, can we, can I move the consent agenda before we take a break? Just so some of the department heads will be freed up.
Yes, let me, uh, go over what the discussion items are real quick. And then, yeah, we should move it before we take a break. So the, as far as executive session, only for item 185 to discussion, uh, contract negotiations with our attorneys. And I, I went over the correction, James. Now, as far as the, the discussion items are as follow. As follows, uh, item two, the transmittal by the Commissioners' Court Analyst Office of a memo, the monthly memo on the distribution of COVID vaccinations. Item six is the broad COVID item. Item 124, discussion on the, the new, uh, the recommendations for the rollover requests. And let me know if folks don't actually need to discuss these. Um, item 125, approval of recommendations regarding the vehicle fleet. Item 144, um, it says here, Dr. Holloway reports that this item needs to be pulled for discussion. So James, I had flagged that for you, but it seems we need to, we need to spell it out during the voting. So let's flag item 144 for discussion.
Yes.
Item 147, Commissioner Garcia, you need the, for discussion, Atascasita Branch Library. Item 161 is funding, uh, for agreement with Universal Services for IT. Item 167, we already discussed that will not be, Commissioner Cagle had flagged it, but he's unflagging it, so that will not be, that will be part of the consent agenda. Item 185 is the one we're taking to executive session. Uh, item 232, an agreement for reconstruction of residential homes. Does that still need to go to exec, uh, excuse me, to discussion, Commissioner Ramsey?
Yes.
Item 273 is litigation, approval for litigation on the voting laws. Item 276 is additional funds toward Buffalo Bayou and Trivitary's resiliency study. I'm guessing still, we're just still discussing that, Commissioner Ramsey. And item 278 is authorization system and application to the Department of Treasury for emergency rental assistance. We also need to hold, uh, for discussion, items 268 and 269. Both of them are public hearings, so we need, we're going to have to open and hold those two public hearings. And that should be it. Did I miss anything?
Judge, you had, uh, added the correct language on 276.
Yes.
So with that added language, we don't need to, it can remain on consent.
Okay, so we'll put 276 on the consent agenda. Did you get that, James?
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, just.
Judge, can I?
276 and the companion one for precinct four, um, which is either 275 or 277.
77.
That's the study for the tunnels.
Right.
Yes.
Which, which Commissioner Ramsey and I talked about it, but those tunnels are going to benefit all five of us. Uh, but we're going to move forward and out of our budgets, go ahead and start that so we can get that next phase done. Uh, but that's, that's water that's not going to go into precinct one and precinct two by being bypassed through the tunnels on the reverse siphon.
Right. That's really exciting, really, really.
Judge, I would, I would just say, if, if you don't mind, Judge. Uh, at some point, if tunnels are done, we also need to look through that lens of equity, because those tunnels could be done on other bayous as well. I just want to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves when we get to that, but that'll be ample.
Totally agree. That's right.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. I, I wasn't going to comment on this, but since, uh, it was brought up. I, um, I, I'm not going to get in the way of this, but I will want to see, um, the engineering studies to confirm that there is no adverse impact to precinct two, because those tunnels, from what I can tell, stopped, uh, at a very interesting point. And, uh, and I want to make sure that my cities don't flood away and that my neighborhoods, uh, don't become subjected more to buyouts. So I'll be watching this very carefully, so I just want to make my colleagues aware.
Good, good point, Commissioner.
So although we should certainly vote on them, colleagues, I hope Mr. Poppy, even after they pass, when we come back, let them pass. But I'd like to talk about them a little bit, because I want to make sure that, uh, under, as, as example, under the Brighton Infrastructure Plan, because these are shovel-ready in some way, we don't lose our focus on equity, because the same argument could be made for Halls and Greens, uh, other areas. And I just want to make sure we don't run into that same cost benefit issue again, that I know all of us have talked about. But so Mr. Poppy, just talk about that later, but I'm certainly content to let the items pass. Judge?
Yes, Jay.
Um, I, I just wanted, as a point of clarification for, for, for James and the court, the added language for, applies to both 276 and 277. I just wanted to make sure that James is aware that it's for both items.
Thank you.
That was my next question, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, is there a motion for all the items one through 282 with exception of the items already voted on and the discussion and executive session, public hearing items just listed?
Some.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In your post, motion carries unanimously.
Judge?
Yes, James.
This is James. Um, just to get a clarification, did you want to add in the revote for item 247 when you changed, made the change of the, uh, resolution to?
Yes, so in sentencing prosecuted, it says protector, yes, yes.
Protecting, yes, ma'am. So that item has been ruled on with it.
Yeah.
And I have a question regarding item 127. Is there any action on that item? That's, uh, for discussion and possible action regarding the Harris County Legislative Agenda Platform.
No, do folks have any action on the legislative agenda? No, James. Thank you for checking.
Thank you.
Okay, so that puts us at almost 2:00. Um, I propose we break until 2:30 and then we can, uh, continue with our discussion. All right.
That's enough time for me, Judge. I had a great lunch. You want to make it 2:15, I'm all right. I'm trying to win that pot from Cagle and Reddick. Cagle and Ramsey, when we get out of here.
It's 1:58, we'll be back at 2:30. And we might still win. Thank you, all right. I thought I beat everybody back. So it's 2:32, Commissioners' Court is back in session. The first item is item two, transmittal of the demographic breakdown of vaccinations in Harris County.
Judge?
Yes.
Uh, I pulled that item and, uh, I, I just, uh, want to, uh, look at the possibility. Um, you know, priest, I mean precincts, zip codes 60 and 13 are stubborn. Uh, we're not making any headway in those particular, uh, zip codes. Uh, and 60, that is, um, I, I share that with precinct, uh, one. Uh, 13, I think, is mostly in precinct two. But these are two very stubborn precincts. And I'd like, uh, to propose that we look at a, you know, a very, very targeted approach for that, for those two zip codes. To see if we can, uh, you know, move those, those zip codes along. And so I'd like to ask for your consideration of that in that regard, Judge. I'd like to visit with the Health Department and see if we can do just something really massive to get people's attention and, uh, and get those, uh, those zip codes at, at the right place. Uh, but they're just two very stubborn areas that, uh, is concerning me that we just, uh, need to do something, uh, that we haven't thus far done yet and, uh, in hopes of moving, uh, moving those areas along. And so like to get your, your consideration of that, Judge.
Yeah, I'm writing my team right now to make sure for, for, uh, Public Health to reach out and so that we can do, maybe we can all work together, our offices, on a couple of, you know, whatever it is, if there's two particular zip codes. So, yeah, it's a good idea. I don't know the kind of, um, bandwidth. I know they're trying to do a lot of schools and that kind of thing, but I'm sure we can figure something out, Commissioner. So it's two zip codes, you said?
Yep, 7, uh, 77060 and 77013.
And they're in the priority list, I would imagine.
Yes. Yes.
Um, okay. Yes, Commissioner, um, Ellis.
Judge, I was just going to say that obviously I'll, I'll, I'll help as well, my team will. And when I look at the numbers, I guess, uh, precinct one, we, we had about 31.6% received at least one dose. That is 101% increase over the prior month. And Commissioner Garcia, you 27.7. And you, uh, you had four precincts, you had a 107% increase for the precinct over the prior month. And, uh, all of us are hovering around there, you know, so, uh, you know, I guess that's, uh, three is 35.7 and four is 33.9. I am glad NRG is remaining open and the numbers are up. I guess everybody knows about it, it's advertised, you know. I, I got, I think you're telling me 1,000, is that right? About 1,000.
You were averaging about 1,000 last week and I, or the week prior. Anyway, I'm being told that recent days were upwards of 2,000. We'll see how long that lasts, but Ryan is in the process of, you know, the Travis Scott, uh, partnership. It was great. We got him to give us some tickets and he also promoted in his social media challenge channels or agreed to, perhaps he hadn't done it yet. Um, and there was also partnerships with, uh, Disney on Ice and whatnot. Um, we've had other, just other donations. So my, it's gotten a lot of play. Uh, they're running ads in the, in the, um, the social media channels that the young, that the young kids use, um, to promote that.
Kind of, kind of feels funny saying that, right, Judge?
Right.
You, you and I are the two youngest of this crew now.
Yeah, clearly we're, they should ask us where to run it, Commissioner Cagle. So, uh, yeah, I mean, it sounds, it's, it's certainly the, the uptick is correlated with our promotional efforts. Now, you know, we'll see whether it keeps up, but, but I have asked Ryan and he's working very hard and I know working with your offices too on, you know, just go and do whatever you can come up with that is creative.
Your team has been very open and, and look, I, I went to the wine, you know, I don't drink. I went to the wine tasting at the road the other night to, to sit with 50 Cent. But it was so late when I got there, he was gone. Nobody had a mask on, might I add, other than the, the help. But I was, I was going to ask him, could he give 50 Cent to those who go take it? Yeah, but so anything that I've thought of, your team has responded to it, but I guess we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, let me know if there's anything else. Commissioner Cagle, you had a question?
I read one of the articles about how our bobbleheads were causing the stir. Did we actually get bobbleheads or were they just talking about it?
You know, I don't know. I need to, I need to get with Ryan, because I did tell him, I said, let me make sure we find the bobblehead. So I don't, I don't know, but I did, I did say, if they're, you know, to your point, if they're that popular at the game, you know, it must be popular for the vaccine. The one thing where we couldn't pull it off was the music, because the, um, our military, uh, partner said that it wasn't going to let them listen to if people have an issue and they have to honk. So I said, okay, fine, you know, so. But, but if you guys have driven on the toll road, also we switched the toll road sign. So now it says, um, it says that vaccines available noon to nine, wait time. And then for the most part, it's zero. So, you know, we're, we're just trying our absolute best.
Judge, we're partnering with, uh, HEB next week. We're using our buses, uh, to get people from point A to point B. There does appear to be a brick wall you referred to. Uh, we're trying to get through that, I think, once, uh, maybe when we move, uh, out of the current, current alert. I know you're working on that. But I think, uh, there's still some hesitancy, I think, from people getting out, getting the vaccine. And so anything we can do, uh, in a reward way, you know, you and I talked about that, um, uh, the other day. Anything that, that we can say, you know, you get your vaccine, you can take that mask off. And I don't know what, I don't know why we wouldn't say that. I think the CDC is saying that, so if there is a acknowledgement that, you know what, you go down there and get your vaccine and you can lose that mask. So there may be some things incentivize them at this point to try to get through that brick wall and get some people out there vaccinated.
Yeah, I'll give that feedback to the media campaign folks, the, the, it's still ongoing, the, the B sort do your part. And it may be that the message, you know, they could change the message to something like that. And I know they, they've been doing like message testing, so I bet you they're testing that one already, but I, I'll pass it on, Commissioner Ramsey. I think it's a great point and it's true, you know, just having sort of the positive reinforcement is really important. Yeah, Commissioner Garcia.
And Judge, I just want to acknowledge, um, Public Health and our respective, um, vendors and my, and my staff in particular. Um, I, uh, got a, um, a vaccine site set up with, uh, St. Patrick's Church. with uh, Saint Patrick's Church and uh, they started on Mother's Day. And so, so grateful to see them out there. So we got, I think it's three consecutive Sundays that we're going to be targeting. And um, so this is a new area of vaccinations that we had not yet done, uh, was to do them on, on Sundays. And I just appreciate them um, uh, working on, on that day, that day in particular, Mother's Day. But also uh, we collaborated with uh, a neighboring, neighboring church. Uh, you may be familiar with uh, Father Thomas over at Holy Name. And so Saint Patrick's and Holy Name uh, combined their, their efforts to encourage people to come by. And it wasn't a bad number. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but it wasn't a bad number for a Mother's Day that people would want to leave church and, you know, get to somewhere to eat or get home to celebrate. But I was very, very uh, grateful and proud to see our teams working on Sunday number one. And then most especially because it was Mother's Day. So I do want to acknowledge Public Health, our vendors and uh, my staff in particular, Charbu specifically for, for her phenomenal work. She was there with a huge smile and just really appreciate uh, their willingness to be creative and unfortunately at a price. Uh, it was Mother's Day Sunday that they were working, so grateful.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis.
Just, just one more quick point, uh, question, either for you and the legal department. I know the legal department put out a memo on whether or not we could require employees to have been vaccinated. And, and I think it just be given to the public to know, as I understand it, based on Governor Abbott's order, we are not able to do that. I know I have underlying conditions, my age, overweight, you know, I'm in a class that is high risk, obviously. Uh, but what, what is the, what is the law? Well, Judge, it's for you or Mr. Iyer in Texas as it relates to people.
Yeah, yeah, I left office, the, there's an initial impression, but they're still sort of running it down. But Jay, do you guys have anything?
Sure. Um, you know, we, we, we had done some initial analysis. So initially the federal, uh, we, 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 prior to GA thirty-five, there's a, there was a federal op, uh, there was a protection to allow us to do that as an employer. Unfortunately, GA thirty-five is significantly restricted. And I know that we had sent out a memo uh, from our, uh, from the Chief Privacy Officer uh, for the county uh, to all of the um, offices and departments, um, and, and with the um, uh, and to, and to various departments. But I, we're, we're still looking to see if there are other opportunities. We're getting some clear, trying to get some clarification from the governor's office as well. But right now, unfortunately, it doesn't look like we can require it, in large part because we can't ask for proof of it. Um, so it's really a power of persuasion along the lines of what the judge has been, been trying to advocate for, which is just getting folks to be vaccinated and creating opportunities uh, for our employees.
And it's the governor's decision.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Right now, right now it is. As, as we all know, the, the authority, a lot of the authority that the judge was given has been um, clawed back unfortunately. And so that's limited her ability to, to, to do that. And so it's really at the hands of the governor right now.
And, and have we, is it possible, Judge, to just specifically write a letter and ask? And the reason is, I'd hate for, I'd hate to lose some employee because they wanted to keep their job and not be able to have a policy where if you're going to come back into the office, uh, you, you need to have been vaccinated.
Yeah, and I, I have the communication we had with the county attorney just last week to say if we can do that at least, like when people say, well, how would we come back in, right? It would be unfair to say, for example, wherever there are cubicles, to have everybody come in and the people who are not vaccinated and the people who are vaccinated, and then everybody still has to wear masks just because these guys didn't get vaccinated, you know. So even if we can't require anything, could there be some way that there can be a return to normalcy, at least for the folks that have the vaccine? So the question is just, I don't know what the parameters are. Um, and, and the county attorney's office is running it down for us, but I have, I have your same questions, Commissioner Ellis.
And some of your peers, the, the other chief executive offices of the counties, some of them may have the same concerns and, and the mayor. So at least if somebody does get it because someone came in, I, I want them to know that at least we uh, wanted to have the ability to tell people, get, get the, get the, get the shot.
Well, and I more want to just be able to have normalcy, you know, and I know that those of us have been vaccinated, you know, as the time goes by. Um, it's a lot safer. Commissioner Kegel.
Judge, my, my question may relate a little bit more to the general COVID item of six, but the comment that was just made with regard to the clawback of some of the emergency powers um, relates to our libraries, our schools now are starting to let out. And I know that we haven't hit orange yet, but I was hoping that maybe if you still had those, um, I don't know what emergency powers you still have remaining, but maybe your office can come up with a plan to where we can let some of the kids go to the libraries if they have their spacing or their fifty percent, or whatever those rules that were in place previously for restaurants and other places, that we could create something in between until we get to our orange, so that our kids can utilize our libraries. Uh, and I, and I know that we've been waiting for orange, but we don't know how long that's going to be on that five-part metric system. Uh, and so I was, I guess that would be a question for Jay. Uh, does the judge still have the authority underneath her emergency powers to create a, a interim up to orange plan for allowing folks to come in uh, to our libraries for our kids with appropriate spacing, et cetera?
Um, Commissioner, uh, our office has been working with the judge's office and um, her team to develop a, I, I guess, a set of rules and policies that she can, uh, that she can implement as it relates to um, uh, sort of all county facilities as a whole, in, in particularly libraries and others. And so that's something that um, we're going to be, we're working with them on and we will get that to her, to, to her and, and her team. And, and I, I, you know, that is a, that's a question for, I, I think by the next, next meeting or so, the judge will be in a position to, to make a set of recommendations. But that's, we, we believe that she, she, we can, um, that there are opportunities still very much uh, within her control and of her, her powers right now uh, to do those things.
And, and Judge, to the extent that we can be helpful in precinct four, let us know, but I don't want to violate our Open Meetings Act um, by, by contacting you directly if you're contacting with others. But I can't go anywhere without someone asking me, when can my kids go to the library?
Mm-hmm.
And, and especially now that, that uh, school is, is out in many places, there's that, that added need uh, right now. And um, so.
Yeah, and I'm happy to touch on that. I don't want to skip over, Commissioner Garcia, was there anything else about the demographics or should we move on to this?
No, Judge, just that. I, I want, I just want to make sure that uh, these two zip codes get uh, some unprecedented attention so that we could get them off of the stubborn list.
Yeah, and we're all, you know, we all have the list of key zip codes and if folks have any others that need to be, you know, ideally within that list, but obviously if you find a great, you know, church or whatever it is somewhere else, just let me know, Public Health know.
Thank you.
On the, on the, Commissioner Kegel, your, your note and more broadly that the conversation we were having, so, so skipping over to item six.
Judge?
Yes, James?
Sorry to interrupt. So for item number two, is there going to be any change to the item or is it going to be approved as presented?
Approved as presented.
Thank you.
So there's, there's sort of three important updates uh, to do with COVID. The first one is we have some, some pretty significant downward trends. The, the indicators, most of them are looking better. The, the one that is very stubborn is the positivity rate. It needs to get to five. It's still around nine. The, at some point next week on Friday, at some point last week on Friday, three out of our four indicators were orange. Um, now the, or four out of the five indicators were orange. The fourth one has turned to red again this week, but it's minimal. So the, it's the one that, that looks at whether the cases are trending up or down. Right now it's trending up by two cases. Uh, so it's, and that's the average increase. So every day we still have upwards of four hundred new cases, but generally the change uh, from, from week to week is, is that, that two, two case increase uh, above and beyond what the, the rate of change, so to speak. Um, now, I've had many conversations with uh, Public Health and the Texas Policy Lab and our UT Health Expert that you guys heard from. The, the, the thing that we want to be very cautious of is where's the base that we're hitting? So you know, the cases went back up and now they've gone down, but the, the base that we're hitting is still slightly above the previous base that we'd hit before, you know, the other peak that we had in December. So that's what everybody's watching around the country, really around the world is, is are we beginning to, to go get better? Or are we, are we just continuing to have this return to base or, or return to above base and then we start back up? And all of that will depend on the vaccines. As you guys know, the FDA gave that preliminary approval for uh, kids twelve to fifteen to receive the Pfizer vaccine. We are expecting a CDC panel to give us an update on that. Could be as soon as this week. But the, the point is, as far as Harris County is concerned, we are committed and we are ready to distribute those vaccines to the, the twelve to fifteen year olds at that point. Any child, you know, twelve and up would be able to have the vaccine with parental consent. So we are ready as soon as it happens to make sure that NRG is equipped. And we've actually been uh, figuring out ways to partner with school districts for the sixteen, seventeen and eighteen year olds. So we already have that mechanism and once we are able to get down to twelve, we'll be able to do that even more. So really all we're waiting on is the, the final sign off from the federal government. But you know, I know you guys have heard from a lot of parents and, and even, you know, children and so have I. So I want you guys to know we're ready to go as soon as that happens. The final point is on, on these discussions, you know, it's, it is a very, it is beginning to be a bit of a different moment in the pandemic in the sense that now everybody pretty much qualifies for the vaccine. We're still quite far from herd immunity, but the question then becomes, you know, are we going to get there? And uh, and, and what are we learning from other parts of the world as to what happens when a certain percentage of the community gets vaccinated? So I've had those conversations. We're working to look at our threat level system in that light. Um, and I'll keep you guys posted. I'm expecting to look at and make possible updates within the next, you know, week or two. And that ties back to the libraries, which is, you know, they're tied to orange. Um, I, I've been in touch with other jurisdiction commissioners, Commissioner Kegel. Um, you know, the Houston ones are still closed, San Antonio, Dallas, et cetera. They plan on opening them for pickup only here in the next month or so. Um, and I would think we're in a similar timeline, looking at how things are and when we might get to orange. So just give me, uh, I think Jay was correct in, in, let us see, you know, how this, this base, whether it comes down lower or anything suddenly happens, I don't think it will. Um, and finish these conversations I'm having and, and, and then I'll keep you guys posted. But I suspect that, you know, certainly before the next court, we'll be able to say, okay, we did one of our periodic revisions and here's what came out of it. And I do think that for the first time in a while, there are some very interesting factors that are changing and we're just running them down. So that's what I have as far as my update. Did you guys have other questions?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Judge, is there any action on that item?
No action, James.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item one twenty-four, the rollover request.
Judge?
Yes.
I think I'm one of the people that might have held that one. I, I want to congratulate the uh, Budget Management Department for uh, the thorough job that they did. I, I know it was difficult. I think they looked at every department's request with a focus on the overall mission and vision and goals of the county, focusing on equity and transparency. And they recommended about fifty-three point two million in spending that includes capital improvement, capital improvement projects, some of the upgrades to uh, technology, equipment, vehicles to our CIP. Uh, and uh, no department received everything that it asked for, but uh, I, I think it was a good reasonable plan. Uh, they focus on mental health beds, eviction studies, neighborhood revitalization, and a library ID card that will help many residents. Uh, I do think that we are at a critical juncture in terms of uh, us making our best shot at trying to get federal funds. And uh, in the middle of a, a session, I think IGA has done a good job. Congressman Al Green asked me to speak at a committee, uh, I think last, I guess he called last Thursday, I think it was. When it, maybe it was the week before, week, the week we had court, he called me on Thursday and said, can you speak before committee on that Tuesday? Uh, and it was pretty stressful. Uh, Ender Shop had a lot going on. Uh, we got a lot of help from flood control, budget management from the city, trying to make the case uh, uh, to uh, have Congress look at, at uh, the money that went to the GLO to see if we could get some support to get that extra nine hundred million we've been looking for. Uh, but it was stressful. You know, I thought our egos were big. But when you get ready to go speak before one of those committees, even virtually, by the way, and even if a few of them I know, uh, but it, it made the case to me, we need some help in terms of our, our federal relations. The money Commissioner Garcia spent out of his budget, by the way, was helpful to me because I called your person, Commissioner, over the weekend because I was just stressed out thinking, I don't want to make an idiot out of myself and somebody asked me something. And each time they ask me a question, I gotta say, I'll get back with you. Uh, but look, we, we need some help up there. Uh, the Flood Control Office did have a contract for about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with someone uh, who did a decent job, but I think it was probably time to review that, Commissioner Garcia. You, you were the one who held it. So I sent around an amendment. I don't know who we ought to hire, but I think that out of the rollover funds, a half a million dollars in rollover funds from uh, in a, in a governmental global affairs, uh, we need additional federal government relations assistance as a coordinated effort between IGA, budget management in particular, and flood control. I must say that Dave Barry and his shop were most helpful to me on taking the very good, but somewhat engineering-like comments that I got from flood control. So I could talk to members of, of Congress on that committee about it in, in terms that I could understand, hoping that they would understand. Uh, and it, it helped me a lot, but I think we need some, I've talked to Matt Chase uh, with NACO and he suggested a few firms. Uh, I, I plan, Commissioner Garcia, if you'd like to, to, to go with me, only two of us could go, anybody to go up uh, next week or maybe later on, later on this week. Uh, Matt Chase did send over the comments that were in Roll Call on Capitol Hill, one of those publications that they read on Capitol Hill from the testimony at the hearing I went to. And somebody at the White House in there, uh, I guess whoever handles that Equity Committee. It's uh, Chavez Rodriguez, Julie Chavez Rodriguez, uh, did respond to Matt Chase and said they didn't like to have a meeting to see just what are we talking about on this cost benefit ratio business? And why did we have a shortfall with our equity, with our flood money? And we passed equity guidelines. So if they say, go up there to do a meeting or do a virtual meeting, I don't think in person or not. Uh, Commissioner Garcia, if they say they're going to do it Thursday, Friday, I'm going. And if not next week, uh, but I would like for us to earmark a half million rollover funds to let uh, IGA and Budget Management Flood Control find somebody or bodies. As an example, LA, I think I was told has uh, Brandon's in here. Uh, but I think he, they told me they have ten entities that compete with one another. They pay each one about ten a month uh, who work for their hospital district or that, the comparable entity to our hospital district. Somebody does the infrastructure stuff. Somebody's looking for social services stuff. Somebody's looking for more money in housing. I, I think it's an opportunity for us to have an impact and I, I'd make that motion, which I sent around at the appropriate time to request we use a half million rollover funds to get some help uh, in terms of federal representation.
Commissioner Ramsey, Commissioner Garcia, and then Commissioner Kegel.
Thank you, Judge. I uh, just so you'll know, Commissioner Ellis, I have uh, had some lengthy conversations with our friends in Austin. Uh, I was pretty clear in terms of disappointment we have on our end. Uh, I'm working frankly with the judge's office on trying to get some things done uh, between the GLO and HUD. I think there may be a little, little opportunity there. Uh, the door and windows cracked open. So just so you'll know, uh, I'm working through the judge's office and trying to get some, some things done. Uh, I will be the proverbial squeaky wheel when it comes to the GLO and what they're doing. Uh, because this is what I was told in twenty seventeen, there were three point five billion. There were three point five billion dollars coming to Harris County. And the fact that we only are looking for eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars out of three point five billion is not an unreasonable ask. And they just need to go back and do their math. I think they're uh off target, off base. So we're working through their criteria, uh working through HUD's criteria. I think we uh may make some, some progress on that. So that's, that side of it. I, I found a council member, I mean, uh Congresswoman Fletcher uh to be very helpful as we sat down and went over uh these types of things shovel ready. I'm sure all of our congressional folks uh are coming back and having conversations with each one of us. So those are individual conversations we can have with folks to be sure that Harris County is lined up for uh its appropriate share in terms of those, those dollars. With regard to the item that we're on, rollover, uh I do want to acknowledge David Berry's work. Uh, I appreciate uh uh him calling me frequently and asking and giving me insight. So he didn't, we didn't do this in the dark. I appreciate his particular response to law enforcement. Uh, but I'll have to, I'll have to say that, that even with addressing requests made, there's still probably ten million or so uh of monies that uh was taken out of law enforcement, defunded from law enforcement with this rollover. So we wanna be sure we pay attention as going forward. That's, I consider that's money in the bank that we can use certainly to address law enforcement going forward. But if there's anything else we're gonna do with the money, as you've suggested in your motion, related to uh going to Washington or Austin or anything else, I don't want that to be at the expense of law enforcement.
Commissioner, uh, you know, I, I, I mentioned to you, I did call J I here before, calling you and Commissioner Cagle about um approaching the GLO and it was not a, a open meetings issue because we talked about it in, in court. And uh, uh, you know, it was about four point something billion initially in housing money. And we did get about a billion each.
You gotta, you gotta bid on housing. That's right.
Yeah, and the city gotta be. And so where the, the Washington representation, we just, I looked up at this little hearing, but one of my staffers said, okay, how do you justify another nine hundred million, which we were rounding off to a billion, by the way, to the city and the county uh out of three point five. And I was just at a loss with all, with you and engineer, with all of the engineering stuff. They sent me these big reams of paper and I'm trying to figure out like, okay, in a, in a one minute, they had the little clock on, by the way, which I hadn't time. They told me I had five minutes and then somebody asked you a question. And uh the best we came up with was if we got a billion for the city and a billion for the county, I had a four point two. Cause our argument was I really got it from Costello over to city. You would think somebody would wanna protect with flood mitigation money, the very housing that they invested in. You got me? So that's where this DC help comes in. You know, it was tossing and turning all weekend, trying to figure out when it was really branded on my staff, saying, well, what chance it gonna be Rodney? And I'm thinking, you know, so that's why we need help.
That was the question I had for GLO. So you set aside whatever word you wanna use, a billion for housing for the county, a billion for housing for the city. So why, explain to me again, why you couldn't set aside on infrastructure? A billion for the county and a billion for the city and then go spread the rest of it out amongst the fifty counties that honestly won't know what to do with the money anyway. So there, but I think there might be.
Cap it, and when you cap it at a hundred thousand, a hundred million, right? A hundred million per project in a place as big as we are, that's a big, you know.
Uh Garcia and then Commissioner Cagle.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Judge. And I, I'll just uh say that it is important that we figure this out, but uh Commissioner Ellis, I'm, I'm down to, to make that trip with you because um uh you're absolutely right that there is a lot of opportunity. We just gotta make our presence known and stake our flag and let people know that uh we're open for business here in Harris County and we wanna partner with the federal government. I, you know, uh LA County, uh when I was uh going up there quite a bit previously as sheriff, uh I was told uh how, I, I was often told how LA County had the singular biggest presence in DC and actively pursued every um every department for funding and partnership opportunities and collaborations. And um, and this is something that, you know, the third largest county ought to be doing as well. Uh, because I think we, we can provide them with good, especially in an area like Harris County, uh that's more urban these days than, than anything else. I think we can provide uh them a lot of uh education in terms of exactly what Commissioner Ramsey was just alluding to, that that cookie cutter approach just doesn't work and that you really have to uh bracket out uh communities like ours with very key uh infrastructure like the port, like the uh, the refineries. And uh, and make sure that the, that the funding formulas are, are comparable to the, to the territory and the local economies. But uh, uh unless you're, you know, up there working it and I don't see, I don't see how one person can work that kind of agenda for us. I think it's, I think it's very important that we be much more contemporary in our approach to uh lobbying and partner with our federal uh agencies.
Commissioner Cagle.
Thank you, Judge. There's, there's two sets of issues that are before us right now. One of which is the rollover in the general context. Uh, and I've got a couple of points I wanna make on that. The other one is Commissioner Ellis's motion uh with regard to assisting intergalactic services. And um with regard to that, I understand that the five hundred million is the rollover that intergovernmental affairs.
Thousand, not me.
Five hundred thousand, pardon me, five hundred thousand. That is their rollover that we're wanting to put into this use for their department. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, putting aside my general issues about the rollover, I am supportive of using their rollover for this purpose. And so um I don't know if it's gonna be seconded or voted on. I'd like to deal with it separately from the overall rollover issue. But I think that this is a good way to use their funds in their department and I'm supportive of that.
If I can, I'll take your second and I'll meet my mic. Do you go to the other issue? So Judge, I'll make that motion. I sent it around.
So this is the motion to use up to five hundred thousand dollars of rollover from IGA for additional federal government relations assistance as a coordinated effort between IGA, budget management and flood control districts. A motion by Commissioner Ellis. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Now there's still the, the item itself, um which is.
Global rollover.
Yeah.
Which, which I'm, I'd like to address a couple of, of points on that. I'm still against it, Judge. I think that it's not good policy um for us to take away the rollover, especially as, as we've done. Now, it's a done deal. We've already done it. I commend um, uh Mr. Barry for working with the differing departments and trying to work with him. He's come up with a recommendation. I called a few folks to ask if I needed to scream and shout and stomp my feet and they were okay with uh, with what's going on. But I agree with my colleague that we're taking basically ten million dollars out of law enforcement, that we need to be very, very careful of how we address that. Because there's, there's some bills that are in Austin that could impact us as we do this. And so we need to make sure that we don't uh, we don't spend elsewhere. Um, the rollover dollars that were taken away from these departments uh in the law enforcement arena. And, and I would just respectfully without, without saying that, within the context of the rollover discussion, I think Mr. Barry has done a fabulous job of trying to work it all out. I'm still against the overall rollover discussion. And so if I could just do a very polite no on the discussion, but I wanna make sure that by doing so, that I wanna commend the hard work that Mr. Barry has done and the other folks are trying to work with him and trying to come up with a workable solution within that framework. I just disagree with the framework. Did that make sense, Judge?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, Mr. Barry, can I get some clarification?
Dave, you may be.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll do my best.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Barry. On the two points that uh both Commissioner Ramsey and Cagle have touched on, um that Commissioner Ramsey used the term defund um and Commissioner Cagle indicated that uh, that money dedicated to law enforcement. Did we defund anything? That uh was in the contract or uh being spent for any law enforcement function or purpose? Did we stop anything from moving forward? Have we canceled anything? Have we uh accurately defunded anything?
I, I don't, I don't believe that we have to, Commissioner Garcia. Uh, and in fact, um they're small, but in a couple of cases, we made recommendations for current budget increases for a couple of law enforcement agencies because they were in a position where the staff that was relying on rollover and women, the staff of saying.
Okay, I, I.
If those folks are, if those folks are needed, let's get it in the regular.
Good deal. I, I just, I, I wanted to get clarity because we had defunded something. I, I, I don't remember voting on that and uh I wanted to recall that item if I had, uh, but uh thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, Commissioner Ramsey.
Just a point of clarification, I don't wanna get into semantics. But when a law enforcement agency had in their rollover account, and that's what Commissioner uh Cagle was referring, when these agencies had ten million dollars and it's rolled over to be used for other purposes, some people might call that defunding.
Well, apparently you are, but it's not accurate. So call it whatever you want. Okay, well, we just agree to disagree.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's the question of un, unbudgeted, does unbudgeted, do unbudgeted dollars belong to something? Um, so uh we, do we have a motion to approve the recommendations on the departmental rollover request?
Oh, yeah. Uh, Judge, before, before we take a vote on this, I did want to um applaud uh Mr. Barry uh for his help with the uh district attorney's office and um, and pre-trial services and making sure that we're putting resources that will help address um violent uh crime and violent individuals. And uh, and I wanna commend uh, uh the district attorney for her continued and unrelentless commitment uh to doing everything we can to support uh the victims of crime. And so I'm very excited about uh these items that are included in this particular item. And uh for that reason, I will move on this, on this item. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also want to commend Dave for the, and the team. It, it has been very, very, very thoughtful and I'm still, you know, working through, through the um, you know, how you're able to put all those pieces together, but it's, it's well done. Um, is there a second?
What, what, one more thing. And I know that uh the, the sheriff was trying to leave us. Uh, and we, we're happy for him uh in, in, in his name being touted by the most powerful person uh in the world. I, I want to also just uh thank him for his commitment and his department's commitment and um, in making sure that we're partnering because some of these resources are also in that overtime package that we're putting together. And uh, and I'll never forget when I was a Houston cop and Mayor Lanier put together that six fifty-five program. It ended up resulting in Houston being uh the largest city in America with the most significant crime reduction. And uh those overtime dollars will go a long way. Uh, it will, it's gonna be in partnership with the constables offices. So I'm very, very excited about that partnership and making sure that we're getting dangerous people off the streets uh to keep our community safe. And uh, but again, you know, that's where, you know, uh instead of uh, you know, being uh cosmetic about the efforts, we're putting real resources to a real problem to get real results and I'm very excited about that.
Commissioner, thank you for bringing up uh that effort. And I know, you know, we're still cooking up some others, which I'm very excited about. And also the sheriff who I, I really, I meant what I said, which is they're lucky to have him. We're unfortunate to lose him, but um, so you'd made a motion, Commissioner Garcia, I see Commissioner Ellis is here.
A second.
So a second on the motion um to approve the, the departmental rollover request recommendations. All in favor?
No.
No.
I'm in favor. The motion carries through too. Thank you, everyone.
And Judge, I would add, I wanna thank Mr. Barry for working hard with everybody within that, within the context of the, of the new removal of the rollover.
Agreed. Item one twenty-five, recommendations regarding the vehicle fleet. Commissioner Garcia, I think you flagged this one.
Yes, Judge. Uh, thank you. And um, on this uh item, I, I wanted to see if I could get the general Noriega on the line um and talk through a couple of these uh particular items in terms of the phenomenal work that he's doing uh to bring again transparency and accountability uh to our county resources and uh, and how we're approaching things. Uh, General Noriega, you on, you online?
Yes, sir. I'm unmuting him now. General.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. I'm here.
Wonderful. General, General, thank you for uh your incredible work and uh I'd, I'd like for you to kinda give us a, a synopsis of, of how this um, this uh uh fleet corrective action, I guess for lack of better words, that you're taking. How that's, uh, well, first of all, I, having been the sheriff and having had a big fleet, um and having been told that the sheriff's office uh would have their fleet consolidated because they would save money and do all kinds of great things. Uh, what's, can you tell us how this has evolved and what you're finding?
Uh, well, as you're aware, Commissioner, we've had uh several audits of fleet um by the, by the budget office and uh uh different other reports that have, uh, impact fleet. And so it's, it's a, a very big portion of the operation uh for universal services. And um, and so we, we just realized that there are some efficiencies uh that could be realized, number one. And number two is we also recognize in terms of resilience, in terms of of uh the way things are moving across the country uh for the purposes of of uh air quality, of fuel usage, a whole lot of other uh, a lot of other moving pieces. Uh, we're looking forward to uh working with uh what's recommended in the short-term recommendation of Vehicle Management Working Group uh to get a better grasp uh for the purposes of record-keeping, purchasing uh and so forth uh throughout the county and hopefully uh bring uh some uh plans and recommendations uh for what's been recommended uh by budget management and, and working with the working group. And, and see if we can't uh realize some greater efficiencies and cost savings to the county.
Well, General, thank, thank you for your work and, and I think one of the uh, one of the disturbing findings of the auditor's report was that uh it is estimated, estimated. We really don't know uh whether or not we've got uh five thousand vehicles uh that the county owns. Is that, was that accurate?
Uh, that, that's my understanding. That, that's my understanding. I, I think that once, one of the recommendations that's, that's laid out is, is with the, with the VCN numbers throughout the county and all of the registration and vehicles that we, that we oversee is, is just a basic fundamental inventory of each of those vehicles to the VCNs as, as a start place. And that's kind of like ground zero. And then working from there, I think we'll be able to, be able to come back to the court with some recommendations, working through the committee to see how we can do things better and more efficiently.
It, it still shocks me, but Mr. Berry, I want to thank you for drafting these recommendations. And, you know, they're all, all these recommendations are going towards these findings that the general was touching on regarding the auditor's reports. I appreciate that. You know, that's, and look, why it was ever a good idea to try to put a fleet operation jointly into an IT operation is, is still to, you know, a thought to be understood. But the reality of it is, is that, you know, again, I, I went through this almost literally my first week as sheriff when I was told that this would save money and do all kinds of fantastic things and come to find out that we should have done an audit a long time ago. I, I just don't know how much money we may have wasted that could have gone to law enforcement. But the, the other side of it too is that we have too many deputies driving vehicles that are potentially dangerous. That was one of my pet peeves when I was sheriff. And so I think this work, Mr. Berry and, and the general, will go a long way in, in making sure that we're not unnecessarily putting deputies in harm's way by having them drive antiquated vehicles. So, so I'm excited about the work in that regard. And then, Judge, with all that you and I have worked on in regards to addressing our environment concerns, I'm shocked. I didn't realize that these recommendations are also found, rather that the auditor has also found that there are seven underground fuel tanks in precinct two that have, that are over, rather, the recommended lifespan. And six or more that have passed that age, that will pass that age in the next five years. And of those seven over the recommended age, six of them are single-wall tanks, which means that they're incredibly likely and very, very delicate and could start leaking into our neighborhoods. And so why we've never looked at this and, and, and it took an audit to help identify this, I'm glad we've done it. And, and I applaud both the general and Mr. Berry for their leadership and trying to put this in a better, much, much better place. So thank you.
Commissioner Ellis. Thank you.
I, I don't want to hold this up long, but, General, my office has been looking at, trying to do electric vehicles. And it wouldn't make sense for us to get buses that are electric unless it was a county policy. You have any thoughts? Will we get there at some point?
I, I believe so. The, the recommendation calls for a midterm plan that allow us to, with an additional study that yourself and the court approved, I want to say back in, in December timeframe or so for a report with a nonprofit that will give us some specific recommendations on electric, hybrid, fossil fuel vehicles, what, what that makeup for the county might be the best overlay for, for county usage. I, you know, I will speak to, I mean, what, what the, what the, what Commissioner Garcia did say was clearly of concern, I'm sure to everybody, the number of miles on sheriff vehicles, the percentage at around the, you know, some percentage of about 150,000 miles on vehicles that I think Commissioner Cagle's office has done a, a great job the way he's able to cycle through his inventory and, and stay on top of that, that have a, a more predictable impact on, on budget. But to your point, Commissioner, both with, on the fuel usage, what that makeup's going to look like, these recommendations will allow us to really snap the chalk line in terms of overall county usage and what's going to be the best formula for number of miles traveled or uses the kinds of, of vehicles that you're, you're proposing. The short answer is yes, Commissioner, I believe we can get there.
Well, I know I have the least number of buses and I've been waiting, you know, so I, I think we have 17, so we have by far the least number of buses in one, four precincts. So let us know soon or, or we'll abandon it, you know?
Yes, sir. I think with the charge that we have through these recommendations, the short term of getting our, our arms wrapped around our current disposition overall, helping budget management learn more about actual spend and then being able to come back to the court with a more definitive plan on, on what courses of action may be considered moving forward.
Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, General, thank you for your work. Appreciate your frequent updates. That gives me real insight what we're doing. A couple of comments, when we get our vehicle inventory up to where it should be, when we recycle out vehicles as we should and we sell vehicles, we need to be sure that, that dollars on the vehicle go back into wherever they came from, not to the general fund, but specifically into, that would encourage, I think, those people, whether it's in a precinct, whether it's in the sheriff's office or some other location, be sure that the dollars related to the reimbursement when we sell a vehicle goes back into, into that vehicle maintenance fund. Is that your plan right now?
I, I would share with you, Commissioner, we, we take off the parts, we've done a, had a really nice uptick the particular metrics demonstrating our, our increased sellback of vehicles and auction, et cetera, et cetera. That particular topic rolls a little bit out of my lane of where the money goes to. We're just, our, our, our function here is to, is to get them out of, out of the parking lots as quickly as possible so that the money does come back to the county. How it spends is a little bit out of our lane.
Well, and, and I'm sure David Berry's listening and we can have a separate conversation there. The other, the other point, as we look at different options on our, on our underground storage tanks, people have been cleaning up underground storage tanks for 30 years. And that's a pretty well-defined process in terms of mitigation, in terms of getting the right tanks in there. So whatever we need to do to Commissioner Garcia's point, let's do it. Let's get out there, get those cleaned up and. But I don't think eliminating all of our underground storage tank is a good plan because we need to think about disasters. And I could tell you during the disaster, we didn't, we need to know where we can get fuel and, and that, that whole level of response is going to be driven by our ability many times to get fuel. And also remember, if we go electric vehicles, what that means in a disaster as well. So I'm sure you'll think through all of that as we do try to be more green, try to do better in terms of managing our fleet. But we need to keep a clear eye. I had our kickoff on our hurricane season this week with a lot of our folks, being sure we had our assets and resources properly placed. Well, everything we're talking about here impacts that response to a natural disaster. So keep that in mind as we go, as we go into this, General.
Yes, sir. Acknowledged. And, and I concur with your, your observation in terms of redundancy of our fuel sources in the event of, of emergencies and, and, and where they're situated and located. Where currently, we have been working with Engineering Department on, on the particular valuation of each of those, of each of those tanks, to be able to decide what we're going to do with each one, if, if they're too far gone or if they're repairable, or what's going to be the right, the right recommendation for each of those assets. But we are going, we're, within this next month, we will have a, a rehearsal of concept of our own emergency management. I'd like to invite each of the court members to a rock drill at the NRG Stadium to help us vet through some of these scenarios that you're speaking to, Commissioner, so that we can be prepared going into this next hurricane season.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. A couple of things before I forget. Mr. Berry, make sure that you're checking the bubble gum and Scotch tape line item. Because I know that this is going to save a ton of money in that regard. When I replaced a significant amount of my fleet for my shop, because my poor guys were driving with holes in their floorboards. They were using quite a bit of duct tape and bubble gum to keep those vehicles moving forward along with our back trucks and, and other vehicles. So I know we'll, I know there'll be a line item there. It's called bubble gum and Scotch tape. Because I know.
Those country boys call it baling wire.
There you go. There you go. Those city boys call it Scotch tape and bubble gum. And, but also, Judge, on my motion to adopt this, the recommendations by the Budget Office, I would like to ask for a report by June 29th so that we can keep these recommendations on track. They're important.
Okay, so the motion is approval of recommendations regarding the county vehicle fleet and that we receive an update by June 29?
Correct.
And, and thank you, General Noriega, for your work and Dave, of course.
Absolutely.
I'm so glad we're doing this, have some consistency, you know, and.
Take the general.
Yes, sir.
Good government. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Ramsey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimous. The next item is item 144, Authorization of Certain Projects. We, we needed to change eminent domain for seven V simple tracks as opposed to eight. And Dr. Holloway, was there something you needed us to do here? Besides the, the edit?
No, that would be all that we needed to make.
Okay, all right. Well, so that, so that's just it. It's, it's a correction. So it should say seven as opposed to eight. You've got that straight?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item 147, renaming a meeting room. Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. And I would just want to take the opportunity to recognize that, look, government doesn't happen all by itself. And if it's, if it's not Ms. Hoogler, it was, it's someone else. And in this case, it's a beautiful young lady by the name of Becky Berry. And I just want to recognize her for her support of the Atascocita Library since 1991. And, and she began to work back then to organize and create a public library for the Atascocita community. Led many fundraising efforts over the years for programming, computers, modernizing, street signage and ongoing book sales, fundraising for children's programs, literacy initiatives. Began at 1700 and in 2004, she's reached over 16,000 by 2020. And during COVID, she led an effort to continue most programs online and in curbside. And since 2007, she's worked consistently to promote the expansion of the facility. And in 2019, we approved a capital improvement project for additional, for an additional large, large meeting space at the library. And, and she was also the previous president of the Harris County Friends of the Library and also volunteers at the Memorial Herman Northeast Hospital. And I'll just, again, want to say that we're so grateful to have engaged, committed neighbors like Ms. Berry and so, so proud of her giving of herself and her passion specifically for our library system. And it's, it's education, it opens the world for our children, it's, it's a place of community and engagement. It's where elected officials go sometimes to give updates on things going on with our government. But she has literally been a, a force of nature all by herself, working to get her neighbors engaged and focused on these very important issues related to the library in Atascocita. So for that reason, this item is to rename the, the, the room, the new meeting room that she advocated for in her honor. And so Ms. Berry, congratulations. I don't know if you're with us today, but I just wanted to say thank you and to the neighbors who know and love Ms. Berry, please tip your hat to her and thank her and congratulate her. We couldn't have done this without her advocacy. Thank you, Judge.
And Judge, I proudly second that. And in fact, that library for a very brief period of time was in precinct four. And I got to address some folks in there, talked about Alexander the Great in there one time. And so I'm, I'm delighted to be able to join you, Commissioner Garcia, on, on this resolution.
You, Commissioner, congratulations to Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
Item 161, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. And this, this item is to, is to make a motion to authorize budget management to make budget transfers necessary to move election-related IT operations to the Election Administrator's Office. As I understand, there, this item has a, I think it's a, over a, yeah, over 2 million in cost, but my question is, where does that money, where's that money coming from? So if I could get Mr. Berry to confirm that that money exists, we just need to make sure to and now move the, move the line item, I guess if you will, over to the right department.
Hi, Commissioner Garcia. So I think to respond to your question, I need to go back in time a little bit, which is when the elections administrator was set up, there were a number of budget transfers, including personnel transfers from the county clerk and from the tax assessor's office where elections had previously sat. As I understand it, and I've confirmed with a couple of folks who are involved, there weren't any transfers for information technology people or budget. So I think that is some unfinished work. So happy to dive into that. And of course, we'll do it, you know, with the tax office and the county clerk. It may be that there's either people or funds that should be transferred over. But regardless, I think the, the, our recommended course of action would be to go ahead and approve this MOU because the work is in the budget because the work is needed. And we can, you know, over the next couple of months and in advance of mid-year, come back and say, hey, can we pay for at least part of this through budget transfers from this overall?
Good deal. Thank you. So, so then it is accurate that we would need a, a motion to transfer the necessary election-related IT operations over to the Election Administrator's Office.
My recommendation, Commissioner Garcia, if it's okay with you, is, I, I think the motion you read is just authorizing us to go do the work.
Okay.
I think that's fine, but I, I want to go do the work before we say, hey, it's, it's 2 million, right? I mean, maybe it's 1.6 million, maybe it's 2.4. Like, we want to sit down and really, really do the work before we start moving money around.
Very good. So be it. Thank you.
Do you need clarification, James?
Yes, ma'am. So if the motion can be read, but is the initial request of the E A? Of the E A still on the table or is the updated motion going to be what's approved for this item?
So let me read the motion of the of the previous motion still works for Mr. Berry. It is to authorize budget management to make budget transfers necessary. To move election-related IT operations to the Election Administrator Office.
And Commissioner Garcia, my suggestion would be to approve the item as presented, which is to go ahead with the MOU. And I guess you could treat that as a separate motion, which is for us to come back and do the best we can to 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 pay for this MOU through other transfers. If appropriate.
Very good. I'll I'll move on that as well.
I'll second.
Question. Yes, Commissioner Cagle.
Judge, I'm all right with Universal Services rendering these services. I think that that got the technology and the capacity to do it as written. I'm are we voting on the way that 161 is now or are we changing it to where we're shifting it out of Universal Services and over to? The Election Administrator?
We're voting on it as presented. Yeah, right. It's Dave and Commissioner Garcia. We said us presented, correct? Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is I think we could, if it works, Commissioner Garcia, it sounds like it does treat as two separate motions. One is the item as presented. Let's get Universal Services engaged to do the work for the Elections Administrator. And then separately, I think my office needs to go back and sit down with the county clerk and tax office. And see if there are any people or costs that are no longer needed because they were previously covering the technology associated with elections.
Do you need a motion for that second piece or no?
I I think it'd be helpful and and the one Commissioner Garcia read works works for us.
Okay, so let's first vote on the item as presented. Commissioner Garcia made the motion. Is there a second? Second.
Second.
That's item 161 as presented. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. And Commissioner, I'm sorry to do this again, but could you read your your the second motion? So I didn't jot it down.
Gotcha. So the motion reads move to authorize budget management to make budget transfers necessary. To move election-related IT operations to the Elections Administrator's Office.
Second.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Cagle.
Judge, are we voting to authorize them to make the transfers or are we authorizing them to review and make recommendations to us? Because I'm comfortable with letting them review it. I'm not comfortable with just the blanket authorization.
Should we say to make to make recommendations as to budget transfers necessary?
In my view, we we always get budget transfers approved. So that's that's fine.
Yeah, it would have to come back anyway. So essentially, we're saying, I think that you all two will say the same thing, Commissioner Cagle.
I've I've just I don't have the motion in front of me. And so it's hard for me to. I'm trying to catch it on the fly, but it almost sounded like we were pre-authorizing transfers. But I'm fully in favor of budget management reviewing and making recommendations.
So then just put to authorize budget management to make recommendations as to budget transfers necessary to move election-related IT operations to the Elections Administrator Office.
So it's not good to you, Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, that'll that'll work.
That works for me, too, then.
Mr. Berry, that work for you?
That works.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Ellis. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Post motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Item 185 is for executive session. It's on the the fees. Item 232, Commissioner Ramsey, you flagged that one.
Yeah, if Dr. Holloway's on the line, I I don't want to take a lot of time here. Maybe she could simply brief me, brief my office. I was so impressed with my experiences with the garrisons in that home. I would like to know what else are we doing? What's planned? Specifically, we're getting many, many dollars in. Some of that Harvey-related. Some of this may be even CARES Act money. But I'd like to know more specifically what we're doing on the ground with housing. And and how those dollars we're getting through federal or through Harvey recovery money. How that is resulting in new housing in Harris County. So that that's my question there. Doesn't have to be. I don't need full answers today. I would just like an update. Kind of a frequent update in terms of what else are we doing? What else is planned in terms of the dollars? Because as Commissioner Ellis and I discussed earlier, we got a billion dollars in housing dollars in Harris County. How are we spending that money? And and through this group or other groups, I like an accountability on that billion dollars we got on housing is my point.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Ramsey. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. I will definitely be able to provide you with an update report that speaks to what we have done thus far with our Harvey response programs. And just to give you a little context, there are a couple of different programs within disaster recovery or project recovery. There are programs that that benefit directly our residents who've been impacted by Harvey's natural. Harvey natural disasters. So there are people who are being reimbursed for expenses that they paid out of pocket. There are residents and homeowners that are having their homes reconstructed such as the Garrison family that we met a couple of Fridays ago. And then we're also focused on rebuilding lost housing stocks. So there's two programs associated with that. There's our Affordable Multi-Family Rental Program as well as our Single Family New Construction Program. So comprising all of these programs, in addition to infrastructure, really is that dollar amount that we receive from the response to Harvey. In addition to that, some other initiatives that we are looking at and focusing on are Community Land Trust, which is our opportunity to bring. Single-family homes into a trust to maintain affordability of those homes, thereby maintaining homeownership among our low to moderate income individuals. And then we're also looking at different types of housing development that we can engage in using our other dollars that are non-federal. So our rather our non. Disaster recovery dollars such as our home and C V G dollars. And those funds would definitely be able to look at combining federal dollars with private investments. And try to increase different housing options across the county. As far as CARES Act is concerned, most of those funds, not all of those funds. Have been relegated to providing assistance to either a homeless population who have been impacted by COVID. And or residents whose incomes have been impacted by COVID. So that would be our rent relief, our utility relief. And our efforts in our chip program, so bridges to permanent supportive housing. With the new tranche of funds through the American Rescue Plan Act, we're looking at different ways in which we might want to invest those. Those funds to improve the financial status of those who've been impacted by COVID and really looking at it in a much more broader sense. However, this is a short kind of summary of what we've done. I am more than happy to share with you some more specific data across. The Harvey programs and some of the activity that we've we've been engaged in with our other federal dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Holloway. I I I look forward to getting with you on more of the specifics. I think you've kind of provided a general framework of that. We'll be following back up with you on. Those kind of specific details because a billion dollars is a lot of lot of dollars when it comes to housing. And we can sort through that and get get a better understanding of that. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
A chart would be a nice thing, kind of like what we had from some of our other folks, where the money has gone to. And how much has gone. So a little a little chart would be good.
I I have one available. Thank you.
Next is item 273, Request by the County Attorney to Be Authorized to Pursue Litigation. And or File in Front of the Court Briefs on behalf of Harris County Challenging Voting Laws. Mr. Menefee, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
Yeah, Judge, just wanted to to open up and I'll be brief. Thank you, Judge Adago, and to the members of the court for entertaining our agenda today. My office is asking that you all. Give us the authority to drive Harris County's efforts in the court to oppose any and all election bills. If the state passes this legislative session that are harmful to Harris County residents. So the current versions of SB 7, as you all know, and other election bills being considered by our state government changed the rules for voting. One version permits poll watchers to get close and record voters, eliminates late hour voting, places inexplicable restrictions on the number of. Polling machines that can be used at polling sites. And the authors of these laws have been clear that they're aimed at Harris County, which is one of the most diverse counties in our great state. So our county's Office for Elections Administrator, the county's expert on voting matters, has repeatedly stated that these bills are harmful. We've seen initial modeling indicating that removing the extended hours voting options. That Harris County leaders made available in 2020 would disproportionately impact black and brown residents in our county. And early indications are that these bills would decrease the number of polling machines at polling sites in minority neighborhoods. If these provisions are signed into law, Harris County must be involved in the legal battles that will spawn from that. And as you all know, there have been lawsuits filed in Florida and Georgia when the leaders of those states passed similar restrictions. The Voting Rights Act of 1965 protects voters against states changing voting rules in a way that is discriminatory. And our state government has a history of passing those types of discriminatory laws. Several federal courts have determined that previous laws passed by Texas state leaders discriminated on the basis of race. One of the things I've heard defenders of these bills, Judge, argue. Is that the bills are not discriminatory because they don't explicitly target African Americans or Hispanic people. Well, Representative Kane's purity at the ballot box language aside, that's an antiquated way of assessing whether voting laws are discriminatory. Courts across this country, including the United States Supreme Court, have repeatedly ruled. That voting laws that are race neutral on their face can still be discriminatory. That's the view that was taken in 2016 when the Federal Court of Appeals that covers Texas. Determined that Texas proposed voter ID law, which made no mention of race, was still racially discriminatory. That's the view that another appellate court took that same year. When it found that certain race-neutral voting laws in another state targeted African Americans with almost surgical precision. That's a quote. From the court. And that's the view that we as elected officials for Harris County should take. When we scrutinize SB 7 and the other voting bills that are being considered by our state government right now. So my office is asking that we have authorization to file lawsuits in front of the court briefs and any subsequent litigation that comes. As these bills make their way through legislative process, if they are indeed passed. With that, I'll turn it over and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would move on that motion.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, Commissioner Ramsey, you flagged the item if I'm not mistaken.
I did. I just want to be sure, Mr. Menefee, that when we engage on these bills, obviously, there's a lot of things in there. It may not be all bad. It may not be all good. I think having some level of identification. Just to know that you're getting that the that that the voter that's voting is the voter that's voting. I think there's other issues related to mailing out ballots indiscriminately. That there ought to be some appropriate measuring or control of that. So there are certain parts of it that we need to pay attention to, to be sure. That when we get the election and it's over, that we can clearly be be assured. That we have done everything we know to do for a secure election and allow people to vote. I think in the last election we had, there was an attempt to mail out a bunch of ballots to a bunch of people. Which would have been disastrous, in my opinion. And I think when we went through the last election, there were a lot of lot of lot of controls in place. We just need to be sure that that those things that we have in place, that that makes sense, that are practical in terms of people voting. If he takes takes a certain amount of identification to get a vaccine, if it takes a certain amount of. Identification to get on an airplane, it ought to be some kind of identification related to voting. So some practical issues related to that. I know those both of those bills have had numerous amendments. Three o'clock in the morning amendments. And so it'll be. Hopefully, when we see that come out, if if the answer is, I'm not for any kind of election. Election change. Well, that's I guess that's one position. I just think there's probably merit in some level of security.
Commissioner Ellis.
Judge, thank you. And Mr. Menefee, thank you for your leadership on on this. I I think that you follow a rich tradition of lawyers who are. Members of, shall we call it, victims class. I love that quote I saw in the Chronicle. Where they said that Texas has been crying election fraud since it blocked big slaves from from voting. But look, it's the it's the right thing to do. Unlike. Getting a vaccine or getting on an airplane. Oh, we have a constitutional right to vote. And even if in the case of my ancestors and yours. It came a little late. Oh, it is a constitutional right. And I applaud you for being preemptive. You ought to get out there, get out there early in front. It's hard going up against the resources of the state. And it's a tough battle. You know, we in that dreaded Fifth Circuit that Thurgood Marshall always avoided. Only a case that had such a great fat pattern in a state that had just been so racist. Could he have won sweat versus painter case, which obviously was a precursor to Brown versus the Board of Education? But look, I appreciate you for doing it. Judge, I appreciate you and and the mayor of Houston. For making the case that this is also bad for business and pulling out of your speeches before the great Houston partnership. It certainly was a difficult thing to do, but it was the the right thing to do. Look, e- even if we go down fighting, we ought to go down on the on the right side of history. And I I'm more than proud to second that motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Cagle and then Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, we have all, or most of us, have already engaged in this discussion. You and others on social media and other locations. Whereas some are calling for voter integrity to make sure that my vote is is my vote. Others. Call it voter suppression. If I want to make sure that someone doesn't have a chance to dilute my vote by voting who doesn't have a right. Or the opportunity to appropriately vote. Judge, I don't want to get into all the polemics, polemics, the rhetoric, the bombast and the other issues that are there. I don't see a constitutional right to Jack-in-the-Box style voting through drive-through voting. I don't see a constitutional right. To. Unsolicited voting by mail. I don't, you know, everybody's got a mailbox of votes by mail where they receive their ballot. They should be able to use that mailbox and a few other locations to do it. The. The end of the day is, is I'm just going to vote no. There's there's four of y'all that can make a whole lot more speeches than I can over here. And I actually might agree with you on a few discreet points. But I'm not going to vote to authorize indiscriminate. Litigation on the county. And I just, you know, let's just get to the vote after. I don't know that Commissioner Garcia has made his speech yet, but after after we've all had our speech, then let's just vote.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge, and I will make my speech. First of all. Just interesting that when this was filed, when we rather when the 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 bills were filed. That. There was no evidence of election fraud. Absolutely none. And the Secretary of State. Indicated that the election. Had been secured. And then it just makes me think, you know, we I just recognize. A beautiful young lady, Ms. Berry, for all her work at the Atascida Library. One of the things that she worked on was that during the pandemic, that people could get books by curbside. You can go to. Your pharmacy and get prescription medication by curbside. You can go to your bank and get your money by curbside. And if you're so inclined to. There's places where you can go get your margarita or daiquiri by curbside. But this bill, these bills are specifically targeting curbside voting.
But this bill, these bills are specifically targeting curbside voting, which was unheard of until Harris County put it on the map. And so this is further evidence that this is targeted at this county for the leadership, the innovation that we demonstrated, but specifically our interim clerk at the time, Chris Hollins, had the leadership to bring to fruition. And so I applaud Mr. Menifee for recognizing that we're going to have to play defense on this and do what we can to preserve our right to vote in as many ways as we can and in the ways that we demonstrated that we could and that was legal and that there was nothing of fraud associated with. So I move on the item as I did initially.
Second.
So. The item is as presented, correct?
Correct, as presented.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia has made the motion, Commissioner Ellis made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
No.
I'm in favor, so the motion carries three to two. And I also want to thank Mr. Menifee. It's not over, the fight's not over now even. But I do think it's important, and that's why we've continued to call on the business community. I'm so proud of the business leaders that have spoken up and the big companies and the smaller companies. Just got a letter yesterday from the head of the Alley Theater as well. So proud of folks recognizing that there are certain areas where that you can't put them on the table of partisan politics and sort of sacrifice them at that altar because even if it's a watered-down sacrifice, because you're opening terrible, terrible doors, whether it was intentional or unintentional to purity at the ballot box language in the draft of the bill, you're hard-pressed to try and wade into voting and voter access without accidentally bumping into racism and Jim Crow. It's a scary thing, and there's no need for it. The voting was great, popular in Republican, Democratic areas, no documented massive voter fraud. Great turnout, Republicans did better than we thought they would do. Republicans used drive-through voting more than any other area for this past May. And we should innovate, we should be an innovative region. So I'm in for the fight, even if we lose at the legislature, I'm in for the legal fight. And hopefully, we won't because I think a lot of folks are finding that courage to say, number one, there's no voter ID provision, and this is not about voter ID. And number two, we all know this is just, you know, political red meat. But you can't give political red meat on the issue of voting, it's just too sacred. So thank you, Mr. Menifee. Next, this item 278, Commissioner Ramsey. You may be on mute, Commissioner, I can't tell. You just see a little far, so I can't tell if you're speaking or not.
Two seventy-eight.
Can you guys hear?
I show four. I did not have, I think I got my mind answered on the last one.
Okay.
I'll move on.
I'm good.
Oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Ellis, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 260 and 69, we should take separately because they require a separate public hearing. So let me go to item 268. The Department of Economic Equity and Opportunity, a proposed reinvestment zone for the purpose for the purpose of potentially granting two tax abatements for Holder Topsoe Incorporated and Holder Topsoe AS for the owner's proposed new construction of two manufacturing facilities in the Pasadena Industrial District on a 24.325 acre tract located at 10010 Bayport Road, Pasadena, Texas 77507, in Harris County Precinct 2. Are there any public comments? Lucinda?
No ma'am, there's not any speakers.
Since there are no speakers, any discussion?
I move on the item, or move to close the hearing, I think it is.
Yes. This, I note from the department, they do not request any call for a vote because it's meant to be an opportunity to take public comment. Yes, Commissioner Kegel.
I just wanted to ask Commissioner Garcia if he was comfortable with this.
Sure am.
Thank you.
All right, the Economic Opportunity Office staff say they'll bring a request at the next court for us to take action on the creation of the reinvestment zone. The public hearing on the proposed reinvestment zone for item 268, the Department of Economic Equity and Opportunity, is adjourned at 4:06 PM.
So Judge, I'll show this item being no action.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for item 269 in the public hearing section on page 32. I now open the public hearing to consider approval of proposed revisions to the ordinance of Harris County, Texas regarding licensing of junkyards and automotive wrecking and salvage yards in accordance with Section 396.042 of the Texas Transportation Code. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this item?
Judge, there are no speakers on this item.
Since there are no speakers, any discussion? Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, I just want to commend Mr. Menifee's office and all the other departments that have worked on this. These are very, very, very much-needed regulations that we have not had for quite some time. And, you know, these wrecking and salvage yards, you know, obviously, we recognize them that they're important, but without the right regulations, they cause so much harm in neighborhoods, especially throughout Precinct 2. So I'm just very grateful to Mr. Menifee and his team and all the other departments that worked on this to get us some much-improved regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the proposed revisions
Second.
to the ordinance regarding licensing of junkyards? There's a motion and a motion, a second by Commissioner Ellis. All in favor of approving proposed revisions to the ordinance of Harris County regarding licensing of junkyards and automotive wrecking and salvage yards?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I now close this public hearing.
Judge, so for court record, that means the item is approved as presented?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. And this will allow, improve the ability of affected community members?
After public hearing, James.
Yes. So those are all the items except, we only have the executive session item on the.
Judge.
Taxes, yes.
If I might, on the tunnel issue, if Russ Poppy is available, I just wanted, I know we've talked around, but I want to bring up that issue a second. If he's still here, if he's not here, I'll just let it wait and post it for the next court.
I do show him online. Russ, you're unmuted.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, it's the item we voted on where Commissioners Kegel and Grant were voting on the underground tunnel. And Russ, if you're there, I asked you about this the other day, Monday, when you were briefing me. And I just want to get some sense of what.
Two seventy-six for folks watching, two seventy-six. Yeah.
Russ, I want to ask you, what other areas in the county would tunnels be an appropriate remedy for flooding? And with an eye towards our equity guidelines, if we were to go and do them, I just want to make sure that we don't run into the situation we're in now where I have, we have, all of us, certain areas that have been neglected historically, being neglected again. So could you just, broad terms, comment on that? Sorry, I didn't tell you I was going to ask, but it just hit me when the issue came up.
That's okay, Commissioner, I appreciate you keeping me on my toes. Judge, court members, this is Russ Pop, Executive Director of Harris County Flood Control District. And the district is doing our second phase of the tunnel evaluation study. This was a study that was funded by Community Development Block grant funds, and we are very much so nearing the completion of that study. In fact, we should be scheduling some briefings for each of the court members' offices very soon with our findings. But to answer your question, Commissioner, we did look at the need across Harris County for tunnels on multiple watersheds, including Halls and Greens, Hunting, Cypress Creek, and others. And we're going to present that information as we best see it and then interpret it as part of our second phase. And most certainly, our criteria that we use to help us identify, out of all the tunnel opportunities that our team came up with, you know, which ones make the most sense to advance first, knowing we have limited funds here to do so.
And which one, how would they be ranked, if you know now?
There are multiple criteria in our ranking, but that certainly included things like social vulnerability.
Okay, and I just want to make sure we don't end up in a position, again, that we're in now, where we started a lot of projects and because we were waiting for LMI money or some money to fund certain areas that they get left behind, or feel rightfully so, as though we have been left behind. And then on Commissioner Garcia's point, how do we know that if we put tunnels in one area, the argument was made by my colleagues earlier that it would help everyone? How do we know it wouldn't flood some areas as opposed to helping them?
Right, no, and you're right, we do have to look at where we discharge these waters from these tunnels because they are big tunnels, they would hold a lot of water. So it's everything from water quality issues with if you let that water stay in that tunnel for too long, you know, is it appropriate to just let it discharge the next time we get a rain? So we're looking at those types of issues as well as where do you discharge these tunnels to make sure that we don't increase someone's flood risk downstream or cause erosion or additional sedimentation? Because some of the initial feedback we got from the Port of Houston, for example, that's one of their concerns. So there's certainly technical issues that we definitely have to take into consideration.
I just want to make sure we're all sensitive, in particular, to those equity issues, and we treat equity as more than just a six-letter word as we go through this process. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramsey and then Commissioner Garcia.
Mr. Ellis, that's all good questions. We had met with the Corps. And that meeting was Congresswoman Lizzie Fletcher. The questions you're asking are going to be answered with this final, I'll call, Corps-level report. Until you have a Corps-level report, you really don't know every detail. I think with this final report, all those questions we can be answered certainly before we do anything else following. But you can't really do anything until you have a Corps-level report. So at this point, we got a lot of questions. We think there is great potential. This is certainly better than channelizing Buffalo Bayou. This is certainly better than building a third reservoir up on there. They're just, in terms of potential for every watershed in Harris County to get some relief, there's got to be a first tunnel somewhere, obviously coming out of the Corps. Two big reservoirs out there is a place to start. But I'm looking at an exhibit now that shows relief in Hunting that could provide relief in Halls. So there is, I think, a good option, east side, west side, because all the water on the west side ends up on the east side. And if there's a strategic way we can get to the Gulf without flooding neighborhoods, that's what we're after. So I think equity would be a key consideration of that.
Commissioner, if I might, Judge, just to respond. Obviously, if I went to Congressman Al Green, and if I went to Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee, Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, as well as Congresswoman Fletcher, and all of them know, the Corps, not because of rules they favor, with their projects, are all slanted towards cost-benefit ratio. And I just want to make sure, as we try to strive to change that, we don't just keep doing what we have always done.
Well, you and I are on the exact same page on cost-benefit. I'm more about flooded homes rather than the price of the homes that are flooded. So we've got to get it, we've got to get that part right. I think these kinds of projects will help us.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Judge. And again, look, I support all efforts to do in Harris County what should have been done decades ago, and that is to think more globally, more comprehensively, more smartly, how to mitigate flooding. I mean, it's our bane. We're known nationally as the place that can almost be counted on to flood on any given year. And so I support efforts to do this. However, I don't support efforts that will bring any more of a negative impact to East Harris County. We already struggle enough, and as I've made the case, that Precinct 2 has been under-resourced over the years. And I need more resources sooner rather than later to deal with the recent challenges, much less support something that could bring another man-made challenge. So I support the concept, but I will be looking for evidence that this does not bring more water, more runoff to my area that doesn't have a particular answer to. Secondly, I'm glad that we're going to the Corps, but look, if it's any indication of what the Corps has done on the west side of town with the reservoir, you know, we can't, you know, we've got to trust but verify on what their work will look like and make sure that we understand the details associated with it. And then, and then lastly, and I want to make sure that, Russ, I need to be sure that this tunnel doesn't create any complications for other work that we're trying to accomplish in Harris County, either through, I want to make sure that the dollars don't get commingled or repurposed. But if this is something that we're going to pursue, that it is over in its proper lane, that it's not going to create a problem for getting the GLO funding for Harvey, that it's not going to complicate the efforts of creating the coastal spine, that it's not going to create any other challenges by making, by creating the thought that all of a sudden we have reprioritized our needs and priorities here in Harris County. Is there any concern of that to any degree?
No, sir, you bring up all good points, and those are all things that we have to work on with the Corps. And the good news is, the Corps is actually one of the partners with the lead federal agency on the coastal spine concept. So it'll be integrated certainly, and you're not going to get a recommendation, at least from me in my office, that's going to increase anyone's flood risk. We're sensitive to that, and whatever we do produce is going to be looking for a benefit. And I'll give you one example. You know, one of the things we've been talking about is if you design the outlet structure correctly, could it actually help reduce the sediment loading within the ship channel? You know, if outlet structure is designed correctly, if you can increase the velocities and get that sediment moving on further down, then the Corps may not have to dredge as often, for example. So those are the things that we are certainly looking at.
Good deal, I'll be looking to the possibility of an independent consultant to affirm no adverse impacts to Precinct 2.
Understood, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said. I would also add, I'll be asking about environmental impacts as one of the questions that have been raised to me whenever this issue comes up, but I'm sure it's going to be run down, as in making sure we're not doing more harm than good on the whole. But look, it's a creative idea, and I'm glad that, you know, appreciate my colleagues driving this forward. So thank you. So that should be it for the items.
Judge, on that last little comment about the environment?
Yeah.
That's one of the things that I think is exciting potentially about this is that instead of having to increase capacity on the surface and the damage that could be the relative damage to our environmental, you know, what's the old adage, every drop of water on this side of the great divide ends up in the ocean at some point, and it could get there by rolling across the top, or perhaps we can bring it underneath to where it doesn't have that added capacity of needing to rip up our repair and right-of-ways or the other kinds of things. Because the surface level that we would need, and this is one of the things that we did ask the Corps to really look at when they do their. that we would need, and this is one of the things that we did ask the core to really look at when they do their cost benefit analysis, is what is the environmental cost of having to have that same amount of flow running across the surface? And that damage that would incur to our remaining greenways? And they may or not potentially, that's a new way of thinking for them is to look at the environmental damage of the alternative as being a cost savings for being able to route it under our precincts as opposed to flowing it over our precincts.
Right. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad if folks are looking into that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, it looks like we still have a couple of items that still need to be voted on. Item 2, item 147 and 232.
Okay, and well, 185 for sure is the executive session item. And then item 147 is the, yes, the Atascasita Branch Library. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Judge, Garcia motioned it and I seconded it. I thought we already voted on it.
Yeah, we're supposed to, James, we're supposed to vote on all the items we haven't already voted on except for, you know, the executive session one.
Yes, ma'am. That'd be item 2, item 147 and item 232.
232. So Commissioner Garcia is making a motion. Second, Commissioner Kegel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Since we have so few, you know, it's a little odd this time. So the only one left is item 185, that's on the tax collection. We're about at time for a break so we could catch up on the other line at 4:25 for executive session, if that works for folks. So it's 4:22, we'll see on the other line in a few minutes. We're going to executive session to consult with our attorneys. Okay, it's 5:08 and Commissioner's Court is back in session. We're discussing, excuse me, item 185. And we need a motion for approval of orders imposing additional penalty not to exceed, or excuse me, additional penalty of 15% for collection costs for delinquent taxes pursuant to Chapter 33 of the Texas Tax Code for Harris County, the Harris County Flood Control District and the Harris County Hospital District, DVA Harris Health. I think folks are on mute. Can you guys hear me all right? I, I'll make the motion. Does someone want to second the motion?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I know there was something that we wanted to make sure and convey is that there will be an expectation as with any contractor that the firm follow the county's MVB policies that we've adopted for all professional services contracts. Anything I'm missing, folks?
I was about nine minutes late. If we stopped at five, I would have won the fight.
Oh, I think you're on mute, Commissioner Garcia.
I was about to say 5:10. Wow.
Yeah. Commissioner Kegel, I can't see what you're holding, but I wish I could. It looks great.
Judge, my team, because I kept saying stuff when my little tiny red light was on, I wasn't seeing it. That made me this nice little box here that says on air when I'm talking. I'm at, it's on. If you may have noticed that, you know, it's a good thing that I don't use street language too much because otherwise you'd picked up a bunch of it over the time. But this keeps me honest here because it's a bit.
Oh.
I'm gonna get you one made, Commissioner Kegel, with hot air on there. I'll get one made for you.
I'm just curious what Ellis, I'm just curious what all the bad words are about.
All day you have been polite and courteous. You have not insulted me once. You're prone to do. At the end, at 5:11, you fall off the wagon.
The judge didn't give him his nap time.
It's adjourned before this goes downhill.
I'm just curious what all those bad words about that you're doing over there, Jack, that.
I'll share with you later on there.
Thank you all so much.
Good night. Thank you.
James.
Are we adjourned, Judge?
Let me check with the lawyers and the clerk. Are you guys good?
I'm good, Judge.
All right. Thank you all so much. It's.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Judge.
Good night.
Good night.